Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to the planning board this evening. Thank you very much for attending on rather a nasty blustery night out there. We have a few orders of business that we'll need to conduct beforehand before we get into our public hearings. So, and once we get to the public hearings, we'll kind of walk through that process a little bit as well, too. So, without too much further ado at this point, I will tell you that one of the members of the planning board unfortunately is stock off island, no surprise there, that's Judith Wagner. So, in order to start this meeting on its appropriate points, I need to do a roll call at the moment, so. And I know Mr. Lowell said that he'll be here. If you have your cellphones on, I'm going to please ask you to put them on vibrate. Thank you. Because it sometimes trying, especially with the, with using a speakerphone, it's a little difficult to hear what's going on. So, thank you, I really appreciate that. All right, so, roll call. Mr. Rector is present, Mr. Trudell.
Here.
Okay. Fritz, yes?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank, I'm glad, Ms. Wagner?
Here.
Perfect, okay. That board is now duly constituted at this point. Do you have an agenda before you at this time? And I'd appreciate a motion to move the agenda as submitted.
So, a moment.
And second, and if there's no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Judith, I'm sure you're okay, yes?
I'm happy, thank you.
Oh, good, okay, that's, that's good. Happy's also good, too. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes aye unanimously. All right, you have minutes from December 10th, 2018. What's the pleasure of the board, are there any errors or omissions as submitted?
Make a motion to approve, December 10th, minutes, second.
Motion's now made in seconded for discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, ayes aye unanimously. That was beautiful. All right, first thing before us is an A and R, which is 8318, Eight Ardenobeska Way Realty Board members, do you have any questions on this? Okay, and I see nothing from staff, so if you're all good, what's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve 8318, Eight Ardenobeska Way Realty Trust.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, those opposed, ayes aye unanimously. Okay, you have one second dwelling before you, which is Lenberg &amp; Son &amp; Daughter LLC. Ms. Trudell?
I will be recusing.
All right, Mr. Trudell will recuse at this point. So, between the three board members at the moment, is there anything that you feel like you want to discuss with us? No, nothing from staff?
No.
Nope, nothing from staff at this point. What would be the pleasure of the board on this?
Move adoption.
Okay, all right, that motion's made, and do I hear a second? I'll second for discussion, there you go. Hearing nothing, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, ayes aye unanimously, thank you. That's going to bring us to our last time at this point, which is a previous plan, which is a secondary dwelling on 34 Potchick Avenue. You've read what staff has to bring forward at this point, and what, board members, do you have any questions that you'd like to bring up? Anything you want to discuss? No, no. For the record at this point, Mr. Lowell is just, no, this is perfect, Nat, don't worry about it, take a deep breath and relax, and we'll get to you in a sec. All right, so, on the secondary dwelling, hearing no questions from the board, nothing from staff at this point, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'd move approve of the subject, the conditions.
As identified by staff?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, great, and do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's now made in seconded for discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, those opposed, the ayes aye unanimously. So, Mr. Lowell is now president at this point, and that brings the board to full capacity, just in time for our public hearings. So, ladies and gentlemen, when we get to our public hearings at this point, generally how these are going to flow is that we'll hear from staff first, who'll give their comments and anything that they feel is appropriate just to start the subject rolling, we'll turn it over to the board members when the board members are through talking about it, then we'll open it up to the public. Now, tonight, we've got some rather heavy duty and complex issues. There's a fair number of you out here, and I'm probably expecting a few more individuals above and beyond. So, in respect to time and, and making things happen, we certainly do want to hear from you at this point, but one thing I'm going to ask you specifically is if you agree with your neighbor, we don't need to hear the same litany three to four times in a row. Just please, get up and say, "I agree with them," and that just makes life so much easier because I know your time is precious as well as ours, and we all want things to proceed. But if you have anything new to add, we really do want to hear that. And if any procedural questions are coming up or anything, please just let me know. All right. So, these are for the 2019 annual town meeting, the first article before us is a zoning map amendment to place properties at 43 and 47A through C Appleton Road, currently located in the VTAC district and the Village Neighborhood District. This is a citizens petition, so, Andrew Leslie, do you want me to turn to the applicants first? Yeah, all right, so, is there someone here represent, yes. Mr. Reed, good evening, how are you?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board.
Good to see you.
And the public at large. This is, as noted, a zoning map amendment proposal. These two lots were placed a few years ago in the VTAC district. I represent Lee Pali Calman, whose husband, Rick Calman, is here with me tonight, the owner of the northern one of the two lots that are within the map boundary as shown there. We do understand that the other lot, which we assumed would want to be treated in the same way, does not wish to be included in the change, and we would propose that the recommendation be that that article be, that that lot be removed, assuming that the information that I have on that is correct. The point of this is, this was, I think, more or less arbitrarily placed in VTAC, it could have just as easily been placed in a different district, including VM, which is what we're proposing to put it in. In general, the uses that are allowed in VTAC are more heavy duty commercial uses. VM is much lighter, more along the line of retail use and other uses that are not nearly as incompatible with a residential neighborhood as those that are allowed in, in VTAC, where, you know, landscaping yards and all that type of thing are basically permitted uses. The reason that we're proposing to do this is that my client, and we'll hear from him in a minute, Mr. Calman, they have residential dwellings on the lot. The permitting on the thing has been somewhat problematic, as they've attempted to deal with resolving the situation. It would seem that the best way to deal with the, their need to provide, you know, they have a large lot, it's not subdivided because of a covenant that was entered into with the planning board at the time that the property was subdivided by Mrs. Calman's mother, Phyllis Birchall, at the time that she conveyed surrounding property to the land bank. We, therefore, even though the lot is oversized, can't subdivide it in order, there was a limitation actually to, but the original lot being subdivided into three parcels, and that has taken place long ago, this is one of the three. In any event, we would like to be able to take advantage of the so-called apartment building exception, which is, or provision, which is contained in the use chart for VM and not for VTAC. And there's no proposal to build a large apartment building, the point on that as defined is that it would allow us to have in separate buildings, as many as four dwelling units, where I think it's a limitation to a total of eight bedrooms. And that's what we intend to do, we would have to go before the planning board in order to get that confirmed by, by the issuance of a special permit with any conditions that would be deemed to be appropriate. Again, this relates to family needs and the need to provide dwelling units on the lot that, that family members can use. I think that's basically it, there are, there are a number of uses that we would have absolutely no intention of, of doing on, on the lot, and we can provide a full list of those to the board, but there's no intention, for example, of having a retail shop, a bakery, a cemetery, or any various other uses that are permitted as a matter of right in, in this district, and we would enter into a covenant that we would not enter, do any of those things as part of the process on this, if this is able to be allowed by the board, and allowed by town meeting after, after action by the board.
Okay, great, thank you.
Calman, would you like to explain a little bit about town search plans?
Well, first of all, I want to wish you all a happy new year, even though it's a little late and belated. My neighbors are going to tell you all the sins that I, that I did. The fact of the matter is, you never know how bad things really are until it falls in your lap, and that's what happened with me. When my son showed up with my grandkids and they had no place to live, and the second one's coming, I reacted with my heart instead of my head. I'm paying for that now, all right? I'm pretty sure I'll pay more than what it's worth. I still want to bring my son back, I'd like to bring my grandkids back. One of them lives in Baltimore now. I love these kids. These were great apartments, by the way, they weren't crap. My father wouldn't allow me to build crap if I wanted to, all right? They had all the bells and whistles, all the alarms, everything was in there, all right? And they were reasonable, you know, I tried to make it reasonable for the people that were living there. I don't think we're asking for much, they're going to discuss about the traffic coming up and down the road, I don't see the problem, you know? I don't see where they actually get to dictate who goes, comes up and down the road anyways, to tell you the truth. This is up to you. My brother Kevin and I were talking about this the other day, he lives in South Carolina now, and he said, "Rick, look, there's three things we know for a fact. One is, the building's not going to get any smaller. Number two, the building's not moving, all right? And number three, whatever you guys decide that I can use it for is what I'll use it for. So if I can't use it for apartments, then I'll use it and rent it as shops. It's okay, all right? We can live with it, but I'd like to think that maybe you guys could take a look at it and understand where I'm coming from." Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, board members? Yeah, go ahead.
Arthur, before you get comfortable in your seat, I thought you wouldn't let me. We, the board is, in case of map changes.
Fritz, can you speak to the mic? I can't hardly hear you back here. Can you speak to the mic?
Okay, you're off.
I'm off, I'm sorry. The board has adopted a set of guidelines for map changes, and so I'd appreciate it if you, for the sake of the board, would go through those guidelines and tell us.
Sure. I actually just heard about that this afternoon, I didn't realize that that had been adopted and was in place, and I actually have a preliminary, and I obviously want to supplement it later on, draft of my responses to the items on that list. First question, is the proposed amendment consistent with the land use and zoning district designation of the surrounding area? Well, as the map shows, if that can be put back up there again, this property is sort of an island in this district, it's surrounded by lug three land that is owned by the, by the land bank, it's right across from R20 land, it's in a, it's not within the town overlay district, so it needs to be in a, in a country overlay district zone, which the V districts are, there can't be R20 like those. You also have some remaining RC2 land that's nearby, it's kind of a mixed bag, so the point is, there really is no consistent zoning district designation, and there isn't any, as I said, adjoining land in the district that it's now in, except obviously that if the parcel, the southerly half of a parcel that's outlined there stays in, in VTAC, that would, that would, that would remain there. Are the uses allowed within the proposed zoning district complimentary to account to the parcels included in the zoning map amendment for surrounding area? The commercial uses generally, as I said earlier, in the VM district are much less intense than those that are allowed in the VTAC district, and are, I, we think, a lot more appropriate in the middle of a residential area, which is what this is, right across the street, than, than the VTAC zoning, which we could see could certainly present if there were intensive use with landscapers' yards and other uses that some people consider to be objectionable, would be allowed as a matter of right. Get rid of this. I don't know, throw it, throw it in the ocean, I don't care. So, in any event, we think that this is a much more compatible commercial district than the commercial district that it's already in. Does the proposed amendment create non-conformities that do not currently exist? No. Is the proposed amendment consistent with the land use and zoning district designation of the surrounding area? As I said before, it's, the surrounding area is, is a complete mixed bag. Does it create additional potential for new building lots beyond what is allowed in the current district? No, even though it's an oversized lot, the lot is restricted against subdivision, not on a deed restriction that would expire at any particular point in time, but as part of the process of planning board approval of the subdivision of which it's part, and that's permanently enforceable by the town, the right of enforcement of the restriction was also granted to the land bank, so, in any event, it does not, under any circumstances, create any potential for subdivision, even though VM has a smaller required lot size than VTAC. Does it result in a change to the allowed ground cover ratio? Yes, the maximum ground cover ratio in VTAC is 25%, and in VM it's 30%. Again, we, it would be hard to imagine that we would ever come anywhere close to that. Does the proposed amendment implement a specific goal or policy of the master plan? No, I don't believe so, not to my knowledge, but Mr. Force or Mrs. Bell could comment on that, but I don't believe there's anything that's right in line on that one way or the other. If the proposal is within an area where there's been an area plan, is it within the area plan? No, there is no area plan that's applicable. Has this or a similar proposed amendment been included in the town meeting warrant within the past two years? I, I'm not aware of any, but I heard some suggestion that there might have been something, but I'm not aware of it. I don't know, the staff knows?
Yeah, there was, there was a proposal at last annual.
To do what?
Change this to.
Same as the Hassett Street?
R20 and alter the country overlay district, so, yes.
All right. But it's, it's a different proposal in any event. So that, I think, answers those questions. Now, I can submit this, and as I say, I may want to supplement it if I get additional information, I was somehow the fact that this had been done slipped by me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, board members?
Just, I've got a couple more, but do you want?
No, go ahead first.
And, just from, from staff, how did, how did it come about that this particular lot's in VTAC?
VTAC, yeah.
So, the area in question was formerly in the RC2 zoning district, and when this area in general was changed, the owners wanted to retain some commercial ability, because they had an existing commercial business at the time, so, it's, that's a consistent designation with a country area and the kind of business that was there.
Is it the current owner? The same as the prior?
Same owner, yeah. Same owner, they've been there.
Okay. Okay, and, just, just so I understand it, so, there is an apartment, there is a building which is being used as an apartment building, which is not a permitted use in that zone.
Can you describe, Chris?
Is that correct?
He's kind of, hold on.
Right now, there's a building that's sitting there and it's empty, okay? It's been removed of everything in it that made it an apartment, all right, per law. All right, so right now, the building is sitting in limbo, you might say, been sitting for limbo for about a year, maybe more, all right? That's why I wanted to find out what we can do, can't let it be limbo forever.
There was enforcement, yeah, there was enforcement action taken.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's correct.
That's all I have for the moment.
Nat, go ahead, did you have?
Yeah, I mean, this is, you know, one of the most confusing, unfortunate situations with a little of everything. This whole area used to be RC2, Miz and Mast was RC2, left in it. And this little anomaly, VTAC, is essentially one acre commercial, theoretically, that's, that's what this is, it's 25% ground cover, allows a lot of heavy use by right, and that's why I'm sort of talking, I see the neighbors there, how are you, how's it going? I just want you to understand what could happen here that's way worse than R20 that everybody else has. There's no allowable for subdivision with the VN, that's what I'm trying to, I mean, just explain that again, just so that.
For the subdivision?
Because it's 10%, it's 10,000.
The reason it can't be subdivided is not zoning.
Okay.
It's because of the covenant that was entered into.
And that's permanent?
And that's permanent.
It's not a 30-year?
It's not a 30-year restriction.
Okay.
Because it was connected to the planning board's.
From the original.
Approval, and when it relates to a condition of municipal action, the 30-year limitation doesn't apply.
It doesn't work. Okay, so that's huge protection for the neighbors.
Right.
So essentially, what you're doing is you're taking VN, you're finding the, the right zoning district that we currently have, and kind of fixing the use issue with that, not to subdivide more, but to fix the usage.
That's right. And by the way, one point I'd like to make is that, and I think I touched on this, which is make, make it absolutely clear, the definition of apartment building doesn't mean necessarily one monolithic structure.
Yeah.
It can be any number of structures, with a limitation to a, a total of four apartments.
I think the most important thing, Arthur, I don't mean to interrupt you, is the what can happen with this versus what can happen, so the neighbors understand what can happen under each scenario, that's the most important thing, without getting into all the, you know, if they can't subdivide this under VN, that's huge, because it's a 10,000 square foot lot zoning district, okay? The R20 is half acre, all right? What, what, the, the amount of ground cover, and that's why I asked you that for Andrew, under R10 is, what was it again? 20, 25%?
Well, yeah, if you look at the map, so, Miz and Mast is in R10, and that's a.
R10, yeah.
25% ground cover. R20, which is, you know, directly across Appleton, is 12 and a half, and then LUG3, as you know, I think is 3%, so.
So if this went into VN, and that allows 30%, is it 30% of 10,000, or is it 30% of the lot size? Because that's the key.
It's always 30% of the lot size.
That's what I was making sure, because it can't be subdivided.
Right, well, one point, one point on that would be, that as I mentioned before, this doesn't give the apartment building use as a matter of right, it's a matter of special permit.
Yep. So there's conditions.
And it would obviously, it would be outrageous, frankly, to, to cover 30% of this lot with structures, no, in that area, nobody has any intention to do any of that thing.
But I'm saying, this is important for the neighbors to understand this.
The planning board could impose conditions as part of the special permit that would limit it to, again, the four buildings and the amount of, of footprint that would be proposed, so that, you know, that would not be anything, anywhere close to the, to the 30%, or even the 25% that we're right now allowed to have as a matter of right.
Yeah, and with a lot of use.
With a lot of use.
Heavy use.
Some of the things that we could, that are permitted as a matter of right.
It's bought roads with one acre, essentially.
Yeah. VTAC allows, as an accessory use, a contractor shop by special permit, lumberyard, bulk merchandise, retail, landscape contractor, light manufacturing, food processing, commercial, well, a couple of things that are permitted in both, in both districts. Point is that these are heavier uses, they're not industrial uses, but at the, the high end of commercial, if you will. And we would be giving those up as part of the process of, of this change being made. And as I said, since we really intend to use this for primarily residential purposes, not, not entirely, I mean, Lee Pali, as you know, is, is an artist, but the purpose of this is to enable the residential use to be perfected on the site, which is vastly more consistent with, with everything in that neighborhood right now than what we could do if we were set upon, which we're not, maximizing what we could do under, under VTAC.
And what's the issue with the access of Miz and Mast, the land bank? Just, can you refresh everyone for that? Isn't there a restriction on that, or something?
Yeah, yeah, there is, Miz and Mast.
Or whatever we'll call on that road now.
Yeah, Miz and Mast Extension is actually part of a lot, it's not a separate road at all, it's part of a lot that belongs to the land bank.
Right, so they, so that is, they're not allowed.
There's an existing driveway from there, that's fine, but we're not, we're not proposing to do any more than that.
So, Appleton is the access for everything that's, whatever happens, or doesn't happen, it's going to happen from Appleton.
Trying to think, there was.
I'm just, just wanting to just be.
Yeah, there's a limitation on access from Appleton, as, as part of the, I think it's one driveway is permitted from Appleton, and I believe one driveway is permitted from, from Miz and Mast.
Okay.
All that obviously will come out in more detail in the, if, if this is passed, when we come into a special permit.
I mean, this is, I mean, this is a, this is not your typical zoning change, you know, lug two, lug one, or R10, or R20 to R10, or some, this is a, a use change, more than it is a zoning change, in the sense of what, they can't do more than they can now, it's just different, what they can do under this change.
Yeah.
I mean, the neighbors need to, in my opinion, need to really look at the use chart, and what do they want on this property, and think about it being sold in today's Nantucket, let me tell you something, it ain't going to just sit there. So that's the other thing, maybe the devil that you know is better than the devil that you don't. This has been going on for three years now, that's why I'm talking about it so much, because I just want to see something get fixed, you know what I mean? I mean, I do, something's got to happen here that's right for everybody. It's, they don't want R20, which they already have themselves, so, I mean, this seems like it, it's a lot better than what's there, but the fact that they can't subdivide, I didn't know that, that's a huge thing, huge, and it's only the ground cover of the size of the lot, so that's huge, too.
Right.
So, that's it, what are we doing? Oh, Judith is on the phone.
Yeah.
I was like, we, oh, beautiful, we haven't done that.
Yeah, yeah, there are voices, there are voices that come out of.
Hi, Judah, sorry.
That's grand, go ahead, Judith. I'd like to add, just to read a question, if that's okay, to start with, I was at the SIMCOM meeting, where two of the neighbors came in and explained that they opposed this article because they had not been informed about it or asked about it when their property was being potentially subjected to it, and I wondered why you took that approach and whether you think that's appropriate, to be rezoning somebody else's property. to be rezoning somebody else's property.
Well, good point, and let me respond to that. We included both lots because they were together in the VTEC district. And rather than have one be VN and the next one be VTEC, we thought it would be more appropriate for there to be consistency between the two lots, that lot having been created by a subdivision of our client's land. We understand now that those owners do not desire their land to be rezoned. And as I... I don't know whether... Judith, you were on the line at the time that I mentioned at the beginning, but we are going to ask and suggest that, assuming that that continues to be the case, that the southerly lot be excluded from the proposal.
I have been on the phone the whole time, but what I'm trying to ask you is, doesn't that seem to be unusual practice? And if you're... You've been around and doing land use for quite some time, and you regarded this very effective lawyer, and I would have thought that would have been the kind of thing that before you went forward and tried to rezone somebody else's property, you would, in the courtesy, have been in touch with them. So, that makes me think there must be some advantage to your client in trying to move in that direction without having done the common sense thing. And I'd just like to understand what's going on with that. It's a simple question. I just feel like I must be missing something if I don't understand that more fully.
Well, as I said, we simply assumed that the logical thing would be to have both lots rezoned. It didn't occur to us that there would be an issue about it. I mean, you have zoning proposals all the time come in which would do zoning changes that would affect property other than the... Than that of the proponent. And, you know, if it's a problem for those owners, we're more than happy to, as I say, suggest that the board's recommendation, and we would make an amendment.
Well, doesn't it, in effect, result in more anomalies there? If you... If your client's area is put in a different district and the other folks are left as it stands, it seems to me it's sort of anomalous that it's other than residential at the moment. I just would like to understand your thinking on that.
Yeah. It... My thought is simply that it's kind of a crazy quilt out there in terms of the way that the zoning districts all come together. And, yeah, it would be neater on a map to have both lots remain in the same district. It would be even neater if the districts all around it were, you know, had nice, clean boundaries surrounding them. But the way it's evolved, that's really not the way it is. And, you know, as I mentioned, you even still have an area of RC2 out there that's, you know, obviously being removed in most places. We don't know what's going to happen with that. That's farther down on Appleton Road and is at the bottom of the map as we have it here.
Thank you.
But I think that's about all I can say on it.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah. Can you hang on one sec? Can you... John or...
Mr. Chairman, if I could just... I just have one observation, and I guess one question for the applicant. The... By using the apartment building section of the bylaw, there is a limit... There would be a limit for this entire property to no more than six units, no more than eight bedrooms.
Correct.
And no other commercial use is allowed with that. So, only home-type occupations would be the only type of commercial. I just wondered if they understood that. And number two, there are ways that the board has considered in the past, zoning changes that might allow all kinds of things that have been restricted through deed restrictions, so it's not riding on a zoning change, which, you know, a special permit for apartments can go away, and then that leaves other uses. And I was wondering if the applicant is... I mean, the town of Nantucket through the Board of Selectmen, or the land bank, or someone else would have to hold that deed restriction. But I'm wondering, for example, 30% ground cover, is that... That's... 30% is what's allowed, correct?
30% is what's allowed, yeah.
And which is...
No, 30% now in VTEC. It goes down... I'm sorry. 30% now... 25% in VTEC goes to 30%. That's right.
So, for a ground cover, that's much less than that. For example, that's more consistent with the LUG3 or a transition between 3% and 12 and 1/2%. Have... I'm just wondering if they had given any thought to a deed restriction as opposed to just the zoning change, which isn't as strong.
Well, we're thinking about deed restrictions that would involve taking away a number of the uses that would be permitted. And as I said, we... I can't imagine a circumstance in which we would have any interest in coming close to 25, let alone 30% ground cover. So, I think we would have no problem. I don't have a figure in mind right now, but we certainly could do a restriction. It would be a deed restriction. And if we go before the planning board for a special permit, as we would be required to do, that can become a condition of the granting of a special permit, which takes away permanently any question of its enforceability.
Thank you. John?
Well, actually, this... The first question that I wanted to ask, Judith had asked, and that was in reference to the two owners, 47A and 47C. They had sent letters as early as a week ago. That being said, I note a letter from the zoning enforce... Enforcement Officer Marcus Silverstein. One concern that I have is he says that regardless of the separate parcel numbers assigned to 47A, B, and C, Appleton Road, they are currently all a part of the same parcel and are not separate part properties. That raises a concern if you have other neighbors and lot owners that are opposed to it, and yet you want to make a change for either piecemealing it out or having it all changed in the zoning. I'm wondering how that would all affect each other? Would it have to be unanimous through the property owners, one or the other?
It would be a single... It is, right now, a single owner. This... In order to split it up, it would be necessary to subdivide it. We can't subdivide it, so we'll all be in single ownership. There might be multiple owners as tenants in common, but there would not be different owners of different parts of the property. It's a single parcel. We can't subdivide it. We don't want to subdivide it. Well, we might want to subdivide it if we could, but we can't. And therefore, it's going to continue to be a single parcel.
All right. And I guess that's why I'm bringing it up, because I think maybe conversations with the neighbors would be more in order. I understand this is a citizen article. Whether we give it a positive recommendation, negative, or no action, it's still going to go before the town meeting.
Of course.
And I'm just hoping that maybe, as we pointed out, some of the benefits of having the residential as opposed to a commercial, like commercial, maybe something would be made aware to the new... To the present owners that this might be a benefit. And, you know, I just find it right now that we have two opposing views as far as the land use, and we're asked to support one or the other at this, you know, late juncture where the neighbors only were informed of this a week ago or two weeks ago.
By the neighbors, you're referring to the owner of the other lot as opposed to the neighbors in the neighborhood?
Yes. 47A, 47C balken the letters that we received. And also Susie Kraft Bowen and Bradford Bowen. Those were the letters in opposition. And also, one of them is not necessarily opposed to it. He just said he's against it presently until he's explained the benefit, which seems to me that he's open to hearing what the benefit would be.
Sure. We're more than willing to discuss all of this with anybody at any time.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
All right. Because I'm kind of getting to a stage where I really want to turn to the public, so I'm going to ask you just to be brief, but go ahead.
I just have a quick question, Andrew, or through the chair. How many... From what you said, my understanding is that that property can only have eight bedrooms. So, my question is, how many bedrooms are currently on the property?
Five, I believe.
Five. So, you could add three more bedrooms. Is that correct?
Under that provision, which would allow for the multiple houses. Of course, we could do...
Just a second. I just wanted...
Right.
That clarified something for me. The other thing is, I was under the impression that currently there is a landscape business that takes place on the 47 Appleton Road. And my understanding is that Mr. Kalman currently has a painting and maintenance commercial business that he has on that property. Is his plan to not have that business any longer in order to have an apartment building? I'm just trying to...
Any commercial activity that he or Mrs. Kalman would have on there would be limited to being a customary home occupation.
I'm not sure that really enters my question. But... And so, it would just... I mean, if I were on 47 or in that area and I had a landscape business and the new designation would not allow for that business, I probably wouldn't be too keen on it, because that would be... Right? That would... I'm just saying.
All right. Yeah, let's kind of focus to planning, and it's getting a little personal. Go ahead.
VTEC allows, yeah.
I'm only asking because I had gone through the zoning map and had compared what can go and what can't go. And so, that was what was driving that question.
Incidentally...
Just I clearly understand the zoning.
Incidentally, as a matter of bedrooms, the purpose of this is to be able to have multiple houses that multiple family members can live in to the total of eight bedrooms. If this were kept as a single lot, it's already got residential structure on it, that structure could be modified to a enormous house. It would be practical purposes. No limitation on the number of bedrooms, because it's a large lot.
No, I understand that, and I'm just going to interrupt you because I really...
Through the chair.
Excuse me. Through the chair. I just... I'm not interested in being fear-mongered about what could possibly happen to the property. I was just asking about the property. I think once the property is sold in any circumstance, you don't know it. You know, it opens up a whole new opportunity for whatever might happen on the property. So, we're just sort of looking at it as it is at this time. And so, that's the way I'm looking at it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask one just brief question? The issue of spot zoning. So, this essentially comes down to a change of one lot. What's your opinion, or how would you... I'm just wondering.
Spot zoning gets cited in many cases, and it's not... If there's a good reason for something to be done, spot zoning doesn't necessarily prohibit it from being done. I could say that what you're looking at there right now is, for practical purposes, spot zoning. You've got two lots that were originally parts of a single lot that are out there with no other parcels anywhere in the immediate vicinity that are in the same zone. So, yeah, it's an issue, but the number of circumstances in which in Massachusetts zoning change has been shot down is spot zoning, and not very many.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I'm going to reserve my comments, because I'd really like to turn to the audience at this point. You've been more than patient at the moment. So, just do me a favor. Raise your hand. When you come on up to the microphone, please identify yourself, and if you're in a butter, that's great. Also, let me know your parcel. So, I know there's a few of you. Come on down. Hi.
Think about it. We need to talk about this.
Hi.
My name is Julie Wood, and I live at 47B Appleton Road. My husband, Sonny Wood, is here. I spoke at the FinCom meeting last month, and I did actually send a letter in for the packet. I'm not sure why it wasn't included. But I'm just going to repeat basically what I said at the FinCom meeting, which is that we were not consulted, nor do we condone the zoning change from VTEC to Village Neighborhood. We bought our property from the Kalman's son, the Kalman Papali's son, and it was VTEC at the time, which is part of the reason that it was attractive to us. We would like our property to be removed from this warrant, and we asked the planning board to give this a negative recommendation. We're concerned about increased density and that Village Neighborhood zoning allowance. And that's it.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Anyone else? Come on down.
It's going to be a late dinner. Bradford Bowen, my wife, Susie Kraft Bowen, 47A. I'd like to just start by saying, yes, we were very disappointed that we were not involved with the original Village docket that could put out with 47A and our neighbors, 47B, put on it. Also, I'd like to say to your point, which was great, we're nervous. We don't know what things could be done, not only by the owner of the property now, which is Rick, which we've talked to back and forth, but if he goes and sells the property, even though his intentions are well and good, if the zoning changes to what Julie said, what will it do to our neighborhood? We really have a nice neighborhood. There's a really good group of neighbors. We're a little nervous with Rick because of what happened the last few years. We get that. He's paying his dues now. But going forward, we're kind of nervous. So, going on record, we're against going from VTEC to VN at this point. It seems to me that if Rick really does want to get a few people of his family into his homes and off the streets, maybe we can negotiate. I don't know how that would be done. But to allow that to happen, but not let Appleton turn into a really busy road in five and 10 years down the road. It is a private road. We have some great neighbors that take care of it. We have about 12 or 15 or 18 cars that go up and down a day. If that doubles and the great person that takes care of it retires, how are we going to take care of that road? So, I guess we're just...
We also... We share the driveway with 43 Appleton, so if there's another 25 cars coming, we all share a driveway.
So, I guess we're just nervous about what the changes will make. And even if Rick says what he's going to do, which I hope he says he's going to do, what happens if he sells it and it's zoned the way it is? What can the next person do that goes in there?
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? That's what the deed restriction is about. That's why I brought up deed restriction.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Cormac Collier from the Nantucket Land Council. I have a question, if I could, through you to staff, in terms of the applicant's ability to bring this back to town meeting. It was... The board... It was not looked upon favorably by the board last year for an R20 request. VN is even more, I think, intense than R20. So, it seems that maybe they could come back if they were proposing lug 1, lug 2, or something less intense. If... It just... It seems confusing why they would be able to come back. Don't they have to wait a certain period of time?
Mr. Chairman...
Excuse me?
Yeah, go ahead. They have to bring back a materially different. I don't know where you're... I don't think that it has to be less intense. It has to be materially different than the article that was brought before. And this is different than that.
Okay. I guess I'll look into that one. Thank you. And then, secondly, we were here quite intensely for many public hearings. We're actually in the electric building in the back there for that hearing. And all five of you were pretty... At the time, were pretty adamant opposed to it. So, this is even more. Just want to remind you of that. Thank you.
Anyone else, please? Howdy.
Hi, Chairman. Hi, Board. I'm Karen Barrett. I'm at 50 Appleton Road. And I would just like to voice that I am not for switching from VTEC to VN. I am not opposed to lug two. And I also don't feel that a zoning change is the way to go about backdooring illegal buildings and making them legal. So currently, the reason this has come about is because an entire triplex was built illegally and has been condemned. And now in order to get it to be a legal property again, he's going to try and change the zoning to allow that building to become the apartment building that he originally built it for. So I don't believe that the zoning board or zoning changes should be allowed to backdoor illegal dwellings that were built without any inspections or any permits. I just feel that it's not inconsistent with the neighborhood. My husband is the person who grades and takes care of the road. And when, two thousand and four, when Don Visco was the chair and he allowed the curb cut onto Appleton, all seven neighbors on Appleton were against that curb cut, but it went through anyway, with the understanding at the time and the agreement from the Birch Hills that they would also help to maintain this road. And that has never, in the fourteen years or fifteen years since then, ever happened. And so, um, so that's the other concern that we have. And there is a, quite a bit of activity with, with the shop that's currently run there. There's sanding all summer long. You can hear Sanders going through the shop. So if he's going to continue to have a business there, even though you'll grant VN, I think that that is not appropriate either for the area. So those are my concerns. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Bert, go ahead. Please.
Hello, I'm Bert Balkin. Some of you might know me as Spruce. Uh, I live at forty-seven, well, I don't live there, but I have own property at forty-seven C. I think for the board to understand, um, forty-seven is actually broke up into condos. So we're actually, um, two acres, but we're, um, broken up into, um, three parcels in that, on condos. And, uh, like Karen said, I would be for like a designation on a lug, one of the lugs or something a little less intense. Also, I don't know if there's an option for him, Mr. Kalman, to do a subdivision or a condo subdivision like we did and divide it into three parcels. And maybe that will be a solution to one of his problems, too. And I do take not what you were saying about the use could expand or, you know, become a lot more heavy. I, I actually have the same situation on forty-seven C where I'm not allowed a residential unit there. I can only have a commercial unit. And I have this, the, um, use chart and I can have a fish farm and I can have a bakery and I can have, you know, all these uses, but-
Pot.
Yeah, probably, you know, with the, but the, but the, but the problem is it's such a residential neighborhood, I don't think any of those uses would really be appropriate in that area. I'm hoping to build a, a shop with an office above it someday and that's what I'm, realize when I bought it, that's what I'm going to get. That, you know, I'm not going to get a house, I'm not going to get an apartment building. And so I just wanted you guys to understand a little bit from the forty-seven perspective. I don't know if you have any questions?
Just, can I just ask him something?
Go ahead.
Yeah.
I appreciate your comments. It's good. Um, because it's a lot better than last year. Last year was the Hatfields and the McCoys. We're kind of trying to fix it a little. If there was, with the deed restriction issue that Andrew brought up, plus what's, I think that all the restrictions, that, we didn't talk about that last year. In fairness to what Cormac said, he's right about VN is a little more than R-20. But we didn't talk about this, all this deed restriction stuff that we can put in, they can agree to, certain restrictions. If all of that stuff could get hashed out professionally with the neighbors, we have other meetings and we have to move, you know, we can't stay on this all night right now. But we have other meetings-
Sure.
-for this, this is, can be continued.
Mm-hmm.
Is to understand fully everything, because I mean, these other two people that just talked, they are, have commercial ideas, too. It's very important that we don't go back to residential only, which was last year's proposal. Now you're, and the other people can't do what they thought they could when they bought it either. It's a really odd situation.
Sure.
Having this island, that's a good way to put it, an island of this commercial in the middle of nowhere, kind of, what used to be the middle of nowhere, not so much now. But that, we need to massage this thing and fix it somehow. We have to.
I'm only to work.
At some point, we have to fix it.
Sure.
You can't just say it's okay in VTEC either. So we have to figure out what the right thing is for everybody. And I think this deed restriction thing is the answer. If it runs with the land or it goes permanent, that's pretty good. They're giving up a lot by, by deed restricting more ground cover, in my opinion. So if everybody could learn all the little bits and pieces, I think that there can be an agreement. And this doesn't have to be Pelosi and Trump. This doesn't need to be that.
Okay.
It can work, I think. It's just getting it right and understanding the what can happen, what can't, it goes forever, all that. Access from one side, all these different things.
Sure. I mean, it's a complicated-
It is complicated.
...little parcel and it's got a lot, like, a lot of things going on. One of, one of the houses on our condo is in the covenant program, you know? And so it's another layer that's on, you know, so this is multi-layered and I would, personally, I can't speak for the other members of forty-seven, but I, I would be willing to explore what are the possibilities so everyone can be happy. Because I want also, like Karen and Danny to be happy and then Perkins to be happy. I want it to be not just, you know, it's good for one person.
Just saying no and that's it.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I want everyone to be happy. So anyways, okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to comment on this? All right. I don't think we're done tonight, but one, I've been, I wanted to hear some comments first. One thing that Mr. Reed said that I, I think we can acknowledge on the planning board, it is kind of a crazy quilt area out there in terms of the zoning and what can take place. I know in the past, when we have looked at it from a planning board perspective, one of the things that has worked really well for us in the past is to actually start developing an area plan for it. Because an area plan draws in, and an area plan draws in an entire neighborhood. And what it does is you all get to sit at the table and determine what does your neighborhood look like in the future. And I think for us on the board, we've seen some very powerful things come out of that. So it, it, it is, it is an inclusive process. It takes a while to get there. It's not something that's just going to happen in a day or three. It's a series of meetings that begin to take place. But in the end, I feel like when we've done these before, there's, there's a high degree of confidence that emerges it, from it, that gets a neighborhood to say, this is, this is what we envisioned for our area. And this is how we see all these parcels coming together. So in my mind's eye, I, I, I don't know what the board would like to do. I personally, if I, if I have my druthers here, I'd love to refer this to committee with the understanding that that is what would take place. Because an area plan would be developed over the course of the next year's worth of time.
Yeah, but-
And then, I know, it's here and now, but I, I think that, that investment of time would, would yield a much higher success rate here and, you know, again, at least have people feeling comfortable about what's going to happen. That's my sole opinion.
Question?
Yes.
Just to staff, how much time do we have?
Well, yeah. I don't know that this is, I mean, I, we're not going to be able to complete an area plan for this, you know, so it would have to be either tabled or, you know-
Exactly.
I don't think, you know, it can happen right now. I think there is a special town meeting in the fall. If this group got together and, you know, the, the area plan process would talk about a lot of things. I mean, the sewer issue still, I think, uh, this is not in the sewer district and that's, um, that's another issue that isn't settled here. You know, that, we've heard about the ongoing road maintenance. That's one of the topics that comes up in an area plan discussion. So again, I don't know, um, you know, obviously, it, it would include at the start, people who, you know, didn't get included in the beginning, so, but it's not going to be ready for this town meeting.
Yeah, and if I may, neither did I suggest it would be. I, I'm not sure what the appropriate way to craft it is. I, I just don't want to table it and let it hang into the universe. But if we're going to table it, I want some, some sense that there's definitive actions that will fall in place behind it. At least personally. Here we go again.
I guess one-
Go ahead.
This is Judith. Could I speak when, in order?
Yeah. Go ahead. I, I don't see anyone in the audience right now, so go ahead.
I just, this is a question to you, as Chair, since, uh, we're supposed to make a recommendation in connection with the town meeting coming up in April. I don't know how table and fits into that. I, I thought that our framework was either approve, uh, disapprove, or take no action or express no opinion. Isn't that right? I, I don't understand how table fits within that framework. I, I can understand taking action one of those three ways and then you're suggesting that there be set up the working group independently of that, but-
Yeah.
I just think I'm not understanding how that would work and I hope you can enlighten me.
Let me, let me turn to staff. Go ahead, Andrew.
Tableting is an option that, that the board can do, but it doesn't, you, you can do the other motions as well.
Right.
So, you know, that, whatever you want to do to make it clearer is fine. But, um, so-
So, go ahead.
Again, just a follow-up question to staff.
Sorry.
If something's going, I mean, what is the deadline for, in other words, I think this, the select board is certifying the warrant at a meeting thirty-first? I'm not sure. This is just what I heard. So the, the question is, what is the deadline where we would have to actually decide what we're doing?
So the, the timeline that we established early in this process is to hold public hearings at our last meeting, the fourteenth, tonight, the twenty-fourth. And we have a placeholder date of the thirtieth, if it looks like a lot on this list isn't going to go through tonight. We have a public hearing on January, um, we have a public hearing scheduled for February eleventh. We were hoping to wrap things up then. If not, you know, we could schedule a special meeting after February eleventh. The FINCOM is scheduled to hear all the planning board motions on the twenty-first. And then the selectmen would adopt the warrant with FINCOM and planning board motions the following week. Now, the, the board of selectmen's a little off schedule right now, so I don't know that that's still the timeline. But I know that, you know, we have to send the warrant to the printer and get it mailed out and all of that stuff. So, you know, that timeline's not going to change too much because the date of town meeting's been set.
So can I just summarize? So it seems like we have three options. We can either vote tonight.
Uh-huh.
You know, up, down, neutral.
Continue.
We could continue it with the hope the parties would get together to come to some agreement by a future meeting. Or three, they could withdraw the article, try to have, they can't withdraw it?
No.
No, it's already, it has to go on the line.
Citizen's article once filed can't be withdrawn.
Okay. Yeah. I thought maybe we could go back another day.
No, and, and, and it has to go in as it was submitted. Obviously then the recommendation of the planning board-
Yeah, okay.
Gets into the motion that's presented and then other motions can be presented on the floor. It sounds as if clearly we're going to be continuing this and I would request if you're having a meeting on the thirtieth, as I understand, that, that it be put on the agenda then so that we can discuss it further at that time.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to continue this to the thirtieth with the hope that- No.
Just, just real quick, before you all do that, can the four of you with Judith on the phone confirm that at least three of you will be able to be here on the thirtieth?
Yeah.
Yep.
Could I, could I ask a clarification?
Yes, ma'am.
What meeting on the thirtieth? What meeting on the thirtieth?
This, special meeting for the warrant, Judith.
Planning board.
It's the select board.
No.
No.
Now, if the select-
We'd have our own, forget the select board at the moment.
We'd have our own-
We'd have time.
Independent meeting on the thirtieth to continue to hear these-
Does this matter?
Or for any other warrant articles that we need to still be working with.
Well, just, not that it matters, but that's news to me and I'm out of the state, so I won't be there.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, for what it's worth, I'm going to, if there's a vote to continue, I'm going to vote against it on grounds, I think we should just vote for now.
Okay.
I, I just want to vote, but I can't see you to, to better in trying to express things, so.
All right. So are you still with your original motion to continue? And did you second that, sir, or did I misunderstand that?
Hopefully we get together.
You may not. Okay. So the motion stands on the floor to continue till the thirtieth. Do I hear a second to that?
I'll second.
All right. Motion's made in second and for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 I'd love to have the full board. I really would. Um, I'm sorry, I'm in a quandary at the second and you'll forgive me at this point.
If I may, just-
Just-
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, if I may, there's no magic to the thirtieth. It's just my understanding that was your next meeting.
I know, Judith.
And I'm asking it to be, you know, put on. Obviously, we want to move forward and have all this happen, but we're also not trying to inconvenience the board of-
No, I know.
-in a bad position.
All right. So I think in deference to try to help people to work this out, I'm going to vote in the affirmative at the moment to continue till the thirtieth as well. All those opposed?
Aye.
No.
No.
All right. So the vote stands three to two at this point. Okay. So we'll continue this meeting till the thirty. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
One thing I will say to you as you're getting ready to file out of here, I really do hope you'll work together because that wasn't, I really am hoping this will be the final, how this should proceed. You heard me a lot of, I know, that's all I can ask. I get it. I get it. But I, I am saying that with that caveat. Please.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I really appreciate your time. Next thing before us at this point is a zoning map amendment to place properties at one and three Daffodil Lane.
Who don't sound beat?
Excuse me? We all good? Sorry. Background noise. Zoning, this is a zoning map amendment to place properties at one and three Daffodil Lane currently in the LUG two district into the R forty district. Mr. Brecher, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the, uh, for the applicants, Paul Chanis's, attorney John Bresher. Paul Chanis's own one Daffodil Lane and they submitted a warrant article to put, uh, properties one and three Daffodil, Daffodil Lane from the lug two district into the R forty district. And as you can see on the map behind you, uh, they are the only ones left over on that side of Evergreen in the R, uh, in the lug two district. Everyone else is R forty. So the purpose for this zoning change is twofold. Uh, one, it would bring the properties more in line with the other R forty properties abutting them. Arguably curing any type of spot zoning here. Uh, the other is that, uh, the, Mr. Paul Chanis is, um, not doing very well with his health. I believe he has Alzheimer's and Parkinson's. And this, the truth of the matter is they want to have it downzoned so that if need be, they could subdivide or use the, use the funds for that to ensure that they stay on island. Uh, the Paul Chanises are not here right now. They're actually in Florida because that's better for Mr. Paul Chanis's health. So that's, that's the gist of the article. Um, it is just two properties, lug two to R forty. I am in receipt of Mr. McClure's, uh, memorandum regarding, um, the questions for the zoning map changes and I believe I can provide some answers for those. The question, first one was, is the proposed amendment consistent with the land use and zoning district designation in the surrounding areas? As you can see from the map, yes, everything surrounding it is R forty, so this would bring the whole north side of Evergreen into R forty. the whole north side of Evergreen into R40. Um, are the uses allowed within the proposed zoning district complementary with the character of the parcels, including the zoning map and the surrounding areas? Uh, yes, everything's going from residential to residential. Um, let's see, does it create any non-conformities? It does not. Uh, would there, uh, would it create any potential new building loss beyond what is allowed? Yes, um, there would be one, uh, for the Paul Chanis's at 1 Daffodil Lane. I'm not sure if 3 Daffodil Lane can necessarily be subdivided via an A and R. It might be a rear lot subdivision that I, I'm not, I'm not positive of. Um, for the proposed amendment, uh, will there be a change to ground cover ratio? Yes, it will be, it will go from 4%, which is the Lug 2 ground cover ratio, to 10%. Um, and kudos to the zoning enforcement officer who also provided, uh, the relevant intensity regulations as they relate to ground, as they relate to lot size and setbacks, which I believe was included in your package as well. Um, let's see, does the proposed amendment implement a specific goal or policy in the master plan? If so, I'm not sure if it does or not. I would, I suppose we could argue that it's, um, getting rid of potential spot zoning because everything else around it is R40. Now, um, that would, that would be my comment on that. Uh, let's see, is there, is proposed within an area where the plan has, area plan has been approved by the Antigone NP and EDC? Uh, yes, this is part of the Surfside North area plan, um, which has been in favor of downzoning to R40. Um, let's see, has this or other similar, um, or proposed similar amendment been included in the town mark, town meeting warrant within the past two years? Um, I believe that the area has been rezoned within the past two years, or at least past, say, four years to, for the Evergreen properties. Um, I don't believe that these two properties have ever been included in those rezoning, rezonings, um, for, for whatever reason those may be. Uh, but this is the first time these two are being proposed to be rezoned from Lug 2 to R40. And it is on Town Water and Town Store, that, just for what it's worth.
Thank you. Anything else, sir?
I think that's it for now.
All right. Board members, any questions, comments?
Nope, 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 nope. Anything from staff?
Uh, Ms. Chairman, I think this is pretty obvious. There's, there's these two leftover lots. I mean, this area has been a, a number of citizen petitions which, you know, have, have brought this about, and I believe this area is in the sewer district. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, for consistency, I mean, to, I, I think this is, um, pretty obvious that you should give this a positive recommendation.
Okay. All right, ladies and gentlemen, public hearings open. If anyone would like to comment on this. Seeing no comments, what's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's made in second and discussion. Hearing none. Yes?
Make a motion to give.
Hold on.
Oops, sorry.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closing public hearing. Those opposed, ayes have you unanimously and the pleasure of the board.
Make a motion to give this a positive recommendation.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have you unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Mr. Brescher. Next thing is a planning board article. It's a zoning map amendment to reduce the ground cover allowance within the ROH zoning district from 50 to 40%. So, Andrew, Leslie, Holly, I don't know if you want to tee this one off.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, this article comes to you from your 2009 master plan. This is a specific, uh, policy under goal 2.3 to better manage the design and location of new residential commercial development. Uh, the specific policy was to preserve the character and integrity of the traditional town center, especially the old historic district. There were a number of items that have already been basically implemented, like eliminate the limited commercial and RC districts downtown. Uh, that was accomplished. And there's a specific goal, number B, which was to decrease, decrease the ground cover of the ROH district. So, it doesn't say what it should be decreased to, but 50% from what we found in the adoption of the original zoning district is not the subject of a special study or a special analysis. In fact, 50% ground cover exists rarely in the town, basically in the commercial downtown district and in a section of the Wisconsin Old Historic District. Um, that's actually located in the R1 zoning area, not ROH. Um, currently, there's, so there's roughly 193 acres in the ROH district, and the current net, or the current average ground cover is 25.34%. Um, we've been getting concerns about, you know, um, while the downtown, the ROH is full of, you know, large buildings and everything else, it's also full of trees and open space areas, and there's been concern about, you know, overall crowding in that particular area. So, um, it's something that, again, comes from your plan, something to consider. Um, you certainly can discuss the number. We think that 40% will create a very small number of non-conformities or non-conforming properties, and again, the average at 25.3 puts it roughly at half, uh, built out when you consider the entire area.
Okay. Board members, discussion.
I just have one question for Andrew.
Yep.
The non-conformities that you mentioned are not the pre-55 lots, right? They would just be the ones that don't meet that, that may be developed now.
So, are you talking to like a 41, 81?
Yeah.
Yep. So, that, that can be divided, and then you would just apply the 40% to that.
Okay, okay, I got it.
Or 1,500 square feet.
Whichever, right, right.
That was greater.
Right.
Okay. And that's, that's the key to this understanding that pre-55 law is very clear and gets upheld, and we just did one the other day on Union Street. So, it's important that, it's not like it's a massive change to too many places.
No, and could I just add too that the ROH district has, we've been very careful with that, so we don't allow, for example.
The tertiary's are not, right, correct?
No, tertiary's, no rear lot subdivisions. So, again, you know, the, the consistent, even though that is the town district, um, it's a small percentage of the overall island, and it's an area that we want to be very careful with in terms of what we have programmed in for future growth.
I just have a quick question.
Yep, go ahead.
Um, so I'm wondering if this, uh, change would have affected the, um, situation that occurred on Silver and Pine, and that is, um, I believe the house was finished last year.
Talking about that modular that it couldn't fit?
I don't know. The thing is massive. I mean, they're sun blocking to their neighbors, which I guess doesn't matter to anyone, but, um, I, what I'm noticing is the size of these, not just in, uh, ground cover, but in height ratio as well. Um, they seem oversized for the community that they're going into, and there's another one, um, on, well, the Lions, and then Eagle, and the one in between there. I'm forgetting which one that is. Um, but it's right.
Jefferson.
It's a Fair Street.
The other Jefferson.
The other Jefferson, okay. Um, where there's a almost two and a half story house and a garage going in, where there had sort of been just a single story cottage kind of thing. So, I'm just wondering if this change would affect any of that in terms of creating more green space on these properties?
I, you know, I'm not sure without having the specific plans in front of us, but I can tell you that, you know, there are many examples where you're at 35, you know, our bylaw gives, uh, exceptions to ground cover as well for covered porches, for decks, for things like that. And, um, properties that are even at, you know, 35% with decks and porches on the smaller lots take up quite a substantial amount of room. So, the massing is controlled through the, through the HTC process, and I know they look carefully at the surrounding buildings and things like that. There certainly is pressure for buildings to add stories, you know, which are allowed. There's not a height, this is, you know, this is not a height change or not an FAR, uh, change, but it is a change in terms of the overall ground cover.
Okay, so, it wouldn't, it wouldn't change very much, then, in other words. You'd still sort of end up with the same type of structure, just maybe a little taller, a little narrower.
I, I don't know that you can.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I think it is a significant change, and 50% ground cover has been reduced, you know, in, in, in other areas to a much greater degree. Miz and Mast, Gulfview, um, moved from 50% to 25%. Um, changes in RC2 areas to R5 went from 50 to 40%.
Right.
So, um, and again, there's two areas where they're at 50%, and emerge, there's some emerging areas that are at 50%. Um, Perry Lane with some, you know, big warehouses and other things, and, you know, you can say, well, we'll never get to that. Well, if it's, if it's programmed and it's allowed, it, it might.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Anyone else on the board? All right. Um, I'd really like to hear from the public. I've got a few comments I want to throw in at the end, but is there anyone who'd like to comment on this? Ms. Williams, good evening.
Hey. Linda Williams, I'm going to put on a couple of my former hats. One is the HTC and one is a ZBA administrator, as well as a member of the ZBA. Over the years, when we changed the, um, bylaw, I don't know how long ago, Andrew, 15 years ago, when we allowed the subminimum lots, which is a majority of the lots in certain areas of the island, especially south of Maine, to allow the subminimum 5,000 lots, you know, less than 5,000 lots to go to 50%, like, oh, some other neighbors, by special permit, the ZBA saw quite a few. I was asked by an attorney who's not here this evening to put up a list of everything that had happened up to my time in 2007 when I left the ZBA, and it was quite a lengthy list of people that are on subminimum lots that wanted to go from 38 to 45, or 39 to 42. It was a varying degree. Nobody went to 50. I think the highest amount we got at that point by special permit was 48%. But they also had to do a little survey of their neighbors to see what kind of ground cover their neighbors had, and I'm talking about a lot of them along Fair Street, Pine Street, and those small streets. I'm not in favor of this. I told Andrew that earlier. I'm not going to die if it passes, but I'm not in favor of it because another, I'll put the HTC hat on, additive massing in Lancaster and all of the other, um, historic publications on Nantucket have specifically referenced additive massing. So, they don't go up, they don't start throwing dormers all over everywhere or taking one-story things and going up, which they can do. They would go out. They would go out the back. If you look at any current map even, you'll see that almost every single structure in the ROH has additive massing, usually one out the side for a bathroom or stairway to go to the second floor, or several telescoping out the back. I'm afraid that this might prevent houses that want to add a bathroom or a bedroom on a first floor or whatever will go up and out instead of along the ground cover. So, it does, in my mind, limit your architectural ability to create something that's more in line with the Nantucket architecture and telescope out the back or one out the side. That's what worries me. And the fact that we have an awful lot that are over 40 now, are we driving them into non-conformity? When we change the zoning bylaw again to allow going to 50% on these lots by right, I don't remember when that happened, Andrew, um, that concerns me. Are we now throwing people that were conforming as much as they could to non-conformity? And I'm never in favor of any bylaw that puts more people into non-conformity than necessary. So, I, I appreciate that you're probably going to vote for this, but I'm opposed to it, and I will be speaking against it on town meeting floor. But that's just my personal opinion, having been through zoning for 36 years now and been at the HTC almost 20. So, those are my concerns.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else?
Hi, Lisa Botticelli. I just have a question, why this is, um, only being done in the ROH and not the SOH?
Go ahead. I'm sorry. The answer to that is that the, the Wisconsin Old Historic District has 50% ground cover. And.
But a lot of the ROH does as well.
Okay. And again, Ms. Chairman, I've asked for, uh, when Ms. Williams brought this up, I asked for a list, how many? And according to our information, that's not true. The average of, the average ground cover is 25% in the old historic district, and there's a small number, an increasing number, that may be going over 40.
Okay, I live on Pine Street. I, I am not close to 40% on my lot. I happen to have a big lot at 6,000 square feet or close to it. Um, so I'm probably at 30%. And so, I don't really necessarily care, but I know that a lot of the houses on Pine Street have to be very close to 50%. There are a lot, I mean, my neighbor literally has five feet between me and his house. He's on Darling, he's on, um, Farmer, five feet away. He has 10 feet in the back. He's way over. I mean, so I think there are a lot more people in the ROH that are non-conforming or close to 50%. I, I, you know, but I, I think it's, it's hard to say that because they're obviously in pods, and the ROH may be, I don't, that doesn't include downtown anymore though, does it?
Right, no.
No, because that's the CN district now.
Right, and, 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 Mr. Chairman, that, so, when you include the CDT district, commercial downtown.
CDT, that's what I meant, yeah.
You're, that, those buildings are, you know, 70, 80% ground cover.
Right.
And that, the CDT was changed to reflect that.
Right.
Based on the fact that, yes, that area already has significant ground cover. So, the area in Wisconsin is, you know, really small lots, no setbacks, virtually no yards at all.
Right.
And, and that's what gets you over 50.
I guess the, my thought is, I mean, to Camel's question is, I think the issue with a lot of the development that happens in town is, is the height that is happening, and maybe the setbacks, um, in terms of it, the impact on the neighbors, and maybe less of the ground coverage. But, you know, again, that's my personal opinion. It seems like people are more concerned with taller buildings being built five feet off the property line as opposed to lower buildings that are more spread out and allowing for natural light to come in and things like that. So, it, and then my other question was, would there be ability like there was before to get, uh, well, I guess it was only via special permit on undersized lots to go to 50%? Would there still be the ability to go for 50% ground coverage on lots given context of the neighborhood, if you happen to be like, like me, in an area where most people are over or appear to be?
Right. So, anyone who's over becomes grandfathered, and so you can apply through, for a special permit through that.
No, that wasn't my question. I'm sorry. For instance, if I wanted to then go to 50% and I could show that my neighborhood is already at 50%,
Right.
Would there be the ability to go for a special permit?
It wouldn't be a special permit. It would be a variance.
Right. Okay.
Which would, which you know would come to you at this.
Well, I know that.
And, and.
Which is, which is fine, but, but again, there used to be the ability to go to 50% via special permit, so I was asking if you were going to include that as part of this bylaw.
It's not part of the bylaw now. If the board wants to entertain something like that, it's something that could be reported out.
I think it's worth discussing. I also would love to see more data on, uh, how you came up with 25% average ground coverage downtown. So, maybe when Linda gets that information, she can share it.
Well, yep, and, and, Mr. Chairman, we are going to get the data. I do, I do think, though, that people that, you know, bring that forward ought to bring some data of their own.
Agreed.
Not, and I'm not being, I'm not trying to say, but.
No, I mean, again, I'm not necessarily against this. I'm just curious.
Yeah.
I mean, I wasn't even here to, to, I didn't even know it was on, and I was like, oh, well, that's interesting. I live in the OH. I never even knew this was coming in front of you, and I just really want, I don't understand why, actually. I, I don't, I don't see the point in doing it, but, um, so I just want to ask those, those questions.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Hold on, Linda, please.
I will.
She's going to hang.
Yeah, thank you, because I've got other people who have, haven't even been recognized first. So, sir?
You live in Haraway.
Could you sit, Linda? Thank you, yeah, thanks.
Hi, Doug Mills.
Appreciate it. Hi.
Market to an architecture. Um, I've been practicing out here for about 25 years now, and, um, we literally have a project before us, um, or in our office today that has HTC approval for additions to the house and a small carriage house that will be affected by this. Um, I think you're going to find when you do your research, or when Linda does hers, that there's more properties, um, that'll be non-compliant than you think. Um, I, I've worked on several projects in the ROH that we had to go for ZBA for any number of reasons, whether it's setbacks or ground cover. Um, so, you know, I, I think the, um, you know, it doesn't sound like much going fif, from 50 to 40, but that's actually a 20% change in the number of square feet that you're allowed. So, I think it's a pretty drastic change, and I think it's going to affect a lot more properties than you think. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have something for me?
Like Ken.
Ken, did you have a hand ready? I can't.
Oh.
It's kind of hard to see through you, Linda. Please.
Ken Bogran, Farmer Street. I just had two questions. Uh, I assume that in doing the calculation with respect to the 25% ground cover, what is factoring in that is all of the major lots along Main Street that are in the ROH?
It's averaged, yeah.
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 So, 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 I mean, it would be very interesting to take a look at, at the areas of where the, where the actual amount of available ground cover is left in order to be able to make a determination as to how significant this is going to be in creating non-conforming lots. Uh, the, the second question I have is, is that, um, if the object of the exercise is in fact to limit the size of the building on these small in-town lots, I don't see how you do that when you have 1,500 square feet allowed as, as of right because of the fact that if you deal with a problem. Because of the fact that if you deal with a problem of the property on Jefferson, that's a 2,000 square foot lot. It's got way more than 50% ground cover, but it's got, it's under the 1,500 square feet. So if the object of the exercise is to truly try to keep additional space available, open space in the in-town district, I think that needs to be addressed. What's, what's a question to me is that, it seems to me that as a community, we want to be able to have housing where it's convenient and accessible so that you don't have to have cars and stuff like that and where you have all of the facilities available. So you want to be able to have the density in those areas. And this is what's happened in the ROH and also in Wisconsin Old Historic. And to me, it just seems strange that, that you'd have a 40% ROH in town and a 50% out in Wisconsin. I know you said that, that the lots in Wisconsin are all 50%. So that would be a greater number of nonconforming lots that are created, but it just doesn't make any sense from a logical point of view relative to consistency. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thanks, Ms. Chairman. Cormac Callier from the Nantucket Land Council. I want to throw my support to this. I didn't know this was necessarily coming up until I read some of the proposals, but this has certainly a tangential impact in terms of reducing impervious surface in a fairly critical area of the harbor watershed. One of the last things that the town is and the nonprofit community is trying to address is stormwater. We have a very antiquated stormwater system that takes water from impervious surfaces and really directs it directly out into the harbor through outfalls with no pretreatment whatsoever. So one of the options that we have going forward is to reduce the potential for future ground cover in impervious surfaces. This addresses it. This is one of the tools in the toolbox from an environmental point of view for the stormwater issue and I support it.
Okay, great, thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Go ahead, Linda.
I've got to back up what Ken said. I'll have to find the list. I did it for an attorney a while ago and I'll have to find it. It was my old hard drive. But I'm kind of concerned about averaging anything because if you look at those Main Street lots, like the Hadwin House and the Bricks, and you have no idea how big those backyards really are, I've been in a lot of them. You cannot average the Main Street mansions, the Whaling Captain mansions, or the things, some of the houses up on Pleasant Street and some of the houses on India Street. You cannot average those. Most of the people that came to the ZBA were on those tiny lots off of Pine and Fair Street and all the little streets in between that wanted to go to, into the 40s. You can't, I, I don't understand how we can average.
Ms. Chairman.
So I'm having trouble, can I finish, please?
Yep, please.
We're, I'm having trouble with the average thing because those lots are really big on Main Street. Not subdivisible, but really big and really big on India and I believe Liberty. And the Old Historic, residential Old Historic goes all the way up to North Liberty where the lots are really big, but they don't take into account south of Maine or Gay Street or Quint Street or any of those other ones that have very tightly packed houses and some of the ones along North Water which have no yards, some of them. So I'm having a problem with that because I know the impact on those are going to be far in excess of anything that's on Main Street. So I just, I'm just having trouble with the concept and I don't support this article.
All right. Ms. Chairman, I suggest we can continue this and work with our GIS to, you know, finalize the information for all of the properties.
Right. And I, I think as, as one member of the board, I'd really appreciate it because I think sometimes we look at something and we see one thing, but the reality of what is there is a whole different thing. And so having some concrete numbers, because you're really the only one who's given me anything concrete so far. There's a perceptual concept running out there, which I can appreciate to a certain extent, but I'd like to move beyond perception here because I think, I think there's some very important issues that are going to come out of this, but let's get the data first.
And, and Ms. Chairman.
I'm a big fan of that.
I'd, I'd remind the board too that you don't have to go, in your recommendation, you don't have to go with 40%. Again, if you review this and find a number in between the existing 50 and 40.
Or the other option might be to, if it's above 40%, either have it become a variance or a special permit that'll have to be.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Anything else from the board or anyone else? Do you want to pull this one to the 14th and give you some time for the analysis?
Yes, please.
What is it? I'm sorry, is it the 11th? I'm so sorry.
11th of February.
My apologies.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Do I hear a second to it?
Second.
Motion's made in the second for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. Perfect. Next is a zoning bylaw amendment to reduce the maximum structure height allowed in the SOH from 30 to 25 per se. This is a, 25 feet, this is a planning board initiative. So Andrew, please.
Ms. Chairman, on this particular article, I think there needs to be some further study on this. So I'm going to request that this one either, you know, possibly we eliminate this from our roster or, you know, since the warrant hasn't been adopted by the, by the selectmen yet.
All right.
Or continue, or basically move no action. I'd like to work with the Wisconsin group and, because there's, there's a side issue of where there really should be an extension of the Old Historic District in Wisconsin. Right now, it runs down the middle of Broadway, so one of the most historic sides between Broadway and Front Street is actually an SR1, not ROH.
Great.
So.
We can actually remove this, you said, at this juncture?
Because the board, because the select board has not adopted the warrant and because this is not a citizen article, it's a planning board sponsored article, we could remove it at this point.
All right. So, board members, is there anything you want to say in the affirmative of this? And I think since we posted, I'd just kind of like to open and, go ahead.
And just to be clear, again, like the last article, this comes from the master plan.
Right.
That was voted unanimously in 2009. So it's not like any of this is just being made up here on the fly.
No, I didn't. I wouldn't have even suggested that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, just a point of question.
Yes, sir.
If we, if we move to take no action, then does it, we open it up to the public, but if we choose to eliminate it, does that necessarily need to open up to the public?
Uh, no, I just, I just wanted to, since, since we did kind of post, I just wanted to be a little open about things, but I think the board.
But if we open it up, doesn't it necessarily need to go to the?
I, I just, I really just wanted to find out one thing, whether anyone was in favor of the article.
If there are members of the public here that want it to proceed?
Yeah, I mean, we did, we did post it, John, and that's, that's why I'm feeling a little sorry. I hear what you're saying. I hear what you're saying, but I think the end analysis can be, is, I, I, I would probably just procedurally like, like to make sure we've covered that base, if you're good with that. But I, as, as one member of the board in the end analysis, I think withdrawing it for further, for further study will take a whole lot of sense, but again, I want to be fair here. So is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak in the affirmative of this article saying it's a really good thing, we should move ahead or, if you're all good, we, we really, I think as a board, can't say for everyone, but I get the sense of, we'd like to take this off the table for a bit till next year and do some more analysis. All right. I really don't see anything out there.
So I'll make a motion to withdraw for this year's want.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Discussion on the issue? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have unanimously. Thank you. And thank you for allowing me that little bit of latitude I thought was important. Okay, next thing is a zoning bylaw amendment to adjust the residential development options provision related to the transfer of property between family members and introduce a qualified renter option. This is another planning board initiative. So Andrew?
Love this.
Where would you like to take this? Want to start or?
This is, oh, right, okay, so.
Yeah.
This article, Steve, you want to? This is, this is a concept that our alternate, Stephen Welch, brought forward. It's a great concept. It's something that has come up in light of the fact that some proposed legislation, this is for the intra-family transfer of covenant lots, and that's been meeting with either questions or confusions. It's not been moving forward at the state level. Our reps have said, why don't you see if we could explore a zoning change which would get to this matter and then remove the need for the legislation to go through? So it, it's the same basic principle that it allows for transfer of a covenant unit to a family member without some of the analysis about owning prior property and, and the value of it. So it achieves the same thing, but it just, if it, it just does so through the, through a zoning matter and through a deed restriction. And then I think the additional discussion is about the rental thing, which Stephen can expand on.
Yeah, so Steve, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just to avoid any perception of impropriety, I'm going to stand over here versus sit over there. I do have a secondary lot that is a lot, I currently own a lot that is partitionable under the residential development options. I also have a negotiation ongoing with a buyer and it's my intention that that it gets resolved and successfully with the covenant lot purchased out of, as a result. And that this will not affect me. If it were, it would not affect me any differently than anyone else who's available to get a special permit for the residential development options. But in, in any event, again, so that if this gets legs, I just prefer to stand here. As our director of planning has indicated, the, the initial concept here was to try and codify within the zoning versus a legislative act that qualified family members, which are allowed, the concept approved at annual town meeting was to allow qualified family members to be excluded from the income limitations and to become an owner of a secondary residential lot through the partition of two lots under the residential development options. So to put that in real practical terms, you, you're, you have a family member, you come in here, you get a, you know, you get, you get your special permit approved and you could sell them a lot, a portion of your lot without, I think this is an important concept to include in the discussion, without increasing any density. This, this, the current secondary lot, the residential development option that we're discussing does not increase density. And this does not increase density. This is just, this aspect of what's proposed, which, which is relative to the qualified family member, simply puts into zoning what would otherwise require a legislative act. And how it does it or how it proposes to do it, and again, this is a concept, so, you know, this, the idea was, this is the martini to get the discussion going kind of a thing, is that it would be, the lot would still be subject to a deed restriction so that if were ever sold to a non-qualified family member, that a Nantucket Housing Need Covenant would automatically be triggered as a requirement. So there's no wiggle room for somebody to be getting out of the requirement for the covenant. So that's one aspect. The other aspect, you know, I take in the concept, I've had some discussion with Andrew, I've, you know, kind of taken to heart the, these discussion within the community about affordable housing, which is positive, and unfriendly 40Bs, which is strongly negative. And, and I also wanted to, so I wanted to take those into consideration along with some other mechanisms that might allow qualified, the concept of qualified renters to become involved in these properties. So basically, the concept is, is to, forgive me, I'm just going for my notes here, this isn't my forte, standing up here in front of people. But the concept is to provide options for solutions that the private sector can implement and hopefully leverage funding that may be available through the state or through local initiatives. We've got some money on the, on the warrant coming up here at town meeting that would help to create affordable rentals. So the, the original concept of qualified family members as owners of these lots was broadened out to include the potential to rent to one of three groups. The first would be shy list, so anyone under 80%. And there is funding available through the state and locally for those types of things. That becomes important for a variety of reasons, not least of which is not everyone is financially capable. You may have a aging in place, a property owner or a couple who are interested in aging in place who do not have the liquidity, the capital, inefficient capital to be developing this concept without some type of outside financing. So if you open this up to the shy list, again, without increasing the density, but, but directing development in a distributed form versus an unfriendly 40B, there's a potential solution there. So the shy list seemed important for that, for, for the reason on a community-wide basis that it's a problem. We have a problem with unfriendly 40Bs. The community spends a lot of time on it, a lot of resources, and there's concerns that are legitimate and, and where and how those will be implemented. The other was up to 120% income, which is defined within the zoning bylaw, and affordable housing, which is up to 150%, which is also defined in the bylaw. So those are the three categories of quote-unquote qualified renters that would be options. Just to kind of wrap this up, at least in terms of the concept, the idea there too is that the lot, the partitionable lots, one of, one would still be subject to, as a result of the special permit allowing this, a deed restriction that required that if the lot were sold, if it were not used for one of the three renter, renter qualified renter classifications, that it would automatically go into a Nantucket Housing Needs Covenant. So that was the concept. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, discussion.
I mean, this is, Steve, we appreciate this. This is great. I mean, wish I thought of it. Cormac had the article, right? Yeah. That's what, get some credit here. That originally tried to do this through the state, just for everybody's knowledge. And the state, they don't even understand the covenant, let alone what we're trying to do. So that's, it's just bogged down up there and it's ridiculous. And the fact that you can't be simple, your second dwelling to your own son or daughter is insane. Absolutely ridiculous. I mean, we can do better. This is like the greatest thing ever and the fact that it, and I, and the most important thing that he mentioned is if it gets sold, it goes back into the regular pot of covenants, which I know you're happy about. Because it doesn't take it out of that volume of, what are we up to now? 80?
84.
84, okay. I knew we hit 80 the other day. Great. So, so this is huge. This should be, all in favor, say aye, like the entire audience in April. So, thank you.
So on these family members, is there a restriction on, on either citizenship or residency in the town already? Like if you had?
Holly, could you?
Pulling relatives out of a hat.
No, it has to be a director.
No, but if I had a son in Colorado?
Sure.
And I was in this, able to be in this situation, could it apply to him or do they first need to be a resident of the town? It's just for.
No, just a qualified family member. That's fine. You don't need, thank you for how.
It's just that they're qualified.
It's not as bad as the citizenship excursion.
Yeah, so, so through you, Mr. Chairman, if I may. The definition of qualified family member hasn't changed. It's limited to owner, spouse, their parents, grandparents, children, brothers and sisters, or as would otherwise be defined within the language of the housing needs, the Nantucket Housing Needs Covenant Program, Housing Needs Program language or guidelines.
Could you clarify what that actually is or is that a?
Which?
The, the definition as, from the Nantucket Housing Needs Program.
I don't, you don't, through again, again through you, Mr. Chairman, I don't know, I, I think that that's a little bit of wiggle room for the housing authority and Nantucket Housing if there were some changes that needed to be made for some reason along the line. the lines, perhaps a state or federal mandate, that was allowed to be left in. But again, the language hasn't changed. I haven't proposed any change there. In fact, qualified purchaser household, and qualified renter household, we've just gone on, I've gone on to add a stronger definition of what median is based on, so that there's a national benchmark to go from there.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Steve.
Great. Anyone else on the board? Andrew, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, we do, would ask you to continue this matter until the meet, your meeting on the 30th. Needs final town council review to, before we're completely set here.
Okay, thanks. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, along the lines of procedural through you, may I ask, staff, this was not, so this will need to be post-noticed for the warrant. And then I just wanted to ask if it's possible, I haven't seen language that's the placeholder language for the select board annual town meeting, the warrant, but if it could just be wider than not, for instance, I don't know how technical they get, and I know that it's, there was something that's at a qualified renter option versus qualified renters option. I, I don't know how detailed it is.
Hold on.
So, excuse me, okay. So for the warrant, which is being adopted next week, I took the article as it's currently written and pared it down a little bit, because we don't need to repeat language that's already in the zoning bylaw. So the title of the article just needs to be somewhat reflective of the content of the article. So they haven't adopted it yet, so we could always change sort of what we're titling it.
I totally defer. I just was kind of curious.
Okay, great.
All right, so, not hearing anything else from the board at this point. I will say one thing. Thank you.
Yep.
It's a great idea. It is an absolutely great idea. And I know it's a team effort, but, you know, sometimes it takes someone to think a little bit outside the box. And I just have to commend you for taking that initiative. No problem.
So, looking for a motion?
Nope. I, I need to open it up to the public at this point, so, ladies and gentlemen, if anyone would like to comment on this. All right.
We'll keep the public hearing open.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. We're going to continue to the 30th, if the board is so inclined.
Make a motion to continue to the 30th?
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes.
Thank you. Those opposed? Eyes have unanimously. Thank you. That brings us to a zoning bylaw and map amendment to make technical, to make technical modifications to the definitions of ground cover, yard, secondary dwelling, to align the use chart, and MMD section to clarify that secondary dwelling is not an allowed use within the MMD. To clarify, the planning board is the sole special permit granting authority for uses within the Mid-Island Planned Overlay District. To clarify requirements for a side yard setback reduction in the R5 district, and to correct the zoning map to place a portion of the lot within the LEG 1 district and the R20 district to match the majority of the lot. And this is sponsored by the planning boards, so Andrew, Leslie, Holly.
All right. Well, I'll start off by saying, Mr. Chairman, that we had to re-advertise this for the February 11th meeting. There is a technical amendment to the tertiary dwelling definition that you all had discussed and wanted included, and that was left out of the legal ad and the first draft of the article. So we can certainly talk about what you have in front of you tonight, but I don't think we should spend too much time on it, because I think people are here to talk about other things, and we'll have to talk about it again anyway. So do you want to go through it, or do you want to just go straight to the public?
Board members, is there anything you want to look at this, because you'll have another opportunity to look at it? Otherwise, like, what I'd like to do is just open it up to the public, and then, like I said, we'll be revisiting this.
Just have a question.
Yeah, please, go.
The question is, just in looking at what was included in the package, I just want to understand what I'm looking at. So just as an example, amending Section 2 ground cover, and then it's dot, 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 so, but there's no highlight or anything else. So what is that, what's, what are we doing, I guess, in that section, just so I understand?
I'm also looking at what is in your packet, and the highlighting showing new text apparently didn't show up in the scan, so that's making it kind of difficult for you. The new text there would be exempting exterior insulation applied to the foundation of a structure. So also, we'd had a conversation with Stephen Welch about the energy code and how people are trying to improve the efficiency of their homes and applying...
So the next time around, we'll have it.
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
That's okay. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to comment on this? And like we said, there's going to be a little bit more of a change. It'll be back before us on the 11th of February. Okay, so, someone want to make a motion to continue?
Make a motion to continue February 11th meeting.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Thank you. Those opposed? Eyes have unanimously. Thank you. Next one is a zoning bylaw amendment to create a solar energy overlay district to apply to land-based solar energy facilities within that district. This amendment would create a new overlay district, add requirements for site plan review, and exempt solar energy facilities within the overlay district from the height requirements of the bylaw. This is a citizen's petition. So, Mr. Clinton, I believe this is your...
You're evaluating.
Is it? Not, do you want to come on down and tee off the conversation for us, please? Good evening.
Thank you, Chairman Rector. So this article pertains to two other articles in the warrant. The objective of this article is for Nantucket to become a green community, which is part of a program that the state has operated since 2010. So far, that program, on average, issues about 10 million to $20 million in grants to communities who have met the green community's criteria. They've handed out about $100 million in funding since 2010, and there's a great opportunity for the town of Nantucket to really benefit for becoming a green community. So some of those are other criteria, just very briefly, are to, for the town as a municipality, not the whole community as a large, but just the municipality, to reduce its energy usage by 20% over five years. One of the other criteria is to create a solar overlay district. This article laid out here is just for the dump, so the objective is to meet this criteria as a whole. Another criteria is to do a island-wide energy study to find our baseline as a community, so that we can further reduce. You know, lastly, you know, as a municipality, we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on electricity every year, and further on, fuel, and so this is a, you know, financially prudent decision to, you know, kind of reduce our energy consumption. The article was originally proposed back in 2012, I believe. I know Andrew worked to kind of finalize some of the language back then, and then it kind of laid dormant, mainly because one of the criteria for becoming a green community, community is adopting the stretch code, which is another article later on the warrant. And so far, we have two new hers raiders on the island, and I know there's potentially a third person who's interested in becoming a hers raider, which was one of the requirements or concerns back in 2012. So we've kind of met those requirements, or, and so this is a, a piece of that puzzle to kind of become a green community. So I'd, I appreciate your support. And I'd also like to add, you know, I, I do own a solar company on Nantucket. It's called AxSmart Energy. But this is not, I'm not trying to do this to benefit myself in any way. It's strictly for the dump, and most likely a project way too big for me to, to manage if it were to ever move forward. So that's that. So any other questions? I'm here to answer them, and it's fairly straightforward.
Okay, great. Board members, anything?
No, I just, just want to note that the zoning officer has endorsed this as a positive, with a positive recommendation. My one question to Tobias is, just out of curiosity, why this particular piece of property out there? Does it have certain benefits? And, and besides the benefits, would it affect or hamper any of the operations through the, our dump right now, and the recycling out there?
Yep. No, great, great question. So kind of, a couple points. One, you know, I want to be strategic about getting, you know, Nantucket becoming a green community. So it was like, how can I make the smallest zone possible with the most benefit? And so the dump was kind of the most logical place. There are some other places that could have been included, like the water, Comet Water, or, you know, the wastewater facility or other spaces. But I wanted to keep a narrow focus. I didn't want to change the original article. Furthermore, there's, secondly, another benefit is since, you know, the dump is essentially a hazardous waste site or a brownfield site, there is financial benefits for putting solar on brownfield sites. So economically, it's a little better for the town versus other locations. And then lastly, it's kind of in line with, this year at town meeting, we'll be approving, I believe it's $14 million to close one of the cells, to cap one of the cells. And so this will kind of provide that opportunity for, you know, putting solar on one of those cells, since it won't be, you know, we're not going to be able to build on it, or, you know, hopefully we'll have a ski jump off of it. But, you know, hopefully that'll be part of the discussion with the solar array.
And you, and it will not affect any of the daily operations that they presently...
No, no. So this is, you know, you know, I'm trying to look ahead. I'm trying to plan, you know, as the, as the dump is, certain sections of it are winding down. This wouldn't be impacting the dump's, you know, current use. It would be focused on areas that are already being capped.
Thank you.
Which is very common across the state. You know, this is a common occurrence. You kind of, it's useless land that you can't do anything else with, and it, and usually you have good, a good pitch or good angle to put solar on. So it's very common. There's, there's two landfills on Martha's Vineyard that are capped, that have solar on them. There's numerous on the Cape as well. It's a fairly common practice.
Thank you. Did you have something?
I just, well, I had a couple of questions, but I think also when Rob, the head of the DPW, was in last meeting on the 12th or 14th, something like that, this month, one of my questions had been to the alternative energy and solar, and he had mentioned that they were working on something. So I'm assuming this is sort of coming out of that, and that was one of my questions. This is sort of coming out of that, and is this part of a development that you're working with the DPW to...
Yeah, so I'm, you know, I've mentioned it just casually to Rob, and it definitely just gives Rob another kind of tool in the handbag. I think Rob's main focus is for, Rob McNeil, our DPW director, his main focus is solar for their new building that they're, they're looking to build out there. You know, it would be a kind of an ideal location for it. You know, but as, it basically gives us a, moves us in the direction of, of saying this is an option for the town, and furthermore, kind of meets that criteria to, and then through meeting those criteria, which, you know, adopting a zone is through the green communities, it opens us up for funding opportunities to help fund some of these projects. So that's really where this zoning article, or this overlay district article, whatever you'd like to call it, is, is most effective, is that it then enables the town to receive funding to do projects.
So my, my other question was, are there other towns on the Cape that have qualified or that are trying to qualify for the green communities?
Yeah, so far, there's 351 communities in Massachusetts, and so far, I believe the number is 210 communities in Massachusetts have become, have adopted the green community guidelines and have joined the program essentially. There's a long list of communities. Some of them have gotten, you know, last year, the maximum grant you can get is 250,000. So there's a bunch of communities who are doing solar projects, vehicle charging stations, energy audits for their building, adding more insulation in. So yes.
So just to follow up on that, would you have a site that I would be able to go to, to find out what Cape Town specifically...
Yep. So there is a, there's a map. If anybody's interested, you can go to, you know, just type in green communities, Massachusetts. Under the state, I don't know exactly, you just click around, and there'll be a map that you can find. It shows all the communities, and there's also a further list of all the projects that have been funded through the program since 2010.
Okay, super. Thank you.
Anyone else on the board, or Andrew, Leslie, do you have anything?
Just one thing. If the board is inclined to approve this, as Tobias mentioned, it was written several years ago, and there have been some changes to the bylaw that just need to be reflected in the text, just, you know, not substantive.
Okay. Yeah, please, may I?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Tobias, thank you for bringing this forward. I just wonder if you could illuminate us a little bit, speaking on the necessity to exempt a height restriction. I think a lot of us think of solar as more of like a ground array. So if you could...
So, so part of, yeah, that's a great question. So it's part of the guidelines as to making, trying to streamline the process. You know, all the systems we do on the island are pretty much shorter, you know, I think the maximum one we ever did was like seven feet. So, yeah, I don't know what to tell you. You're, you're not going to, no developer's going to come out there and do anything more, you know, more than, you know, 10 feet or 15 feet, you know, it's, so it's, it's just trying to, to be flexible. I guess another option would be if it did make sense to do trackers out there, those are higher than 15 feet. So that's just another option. But I can't imagine that, you know, happening ultimately.
Thank you. Anyone else?
And, and again, I didn't change anything from the 2012 article, so these are, Charlie Stott wrote these originally, this article originally, and he was kind enough to say, you know, go on and, and run with it, so.
Great. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. If anyone would like to comment on this. Seeing no comments at this point.
Make a motion to close the public.
Got it. And motions now made, seconded to close the public hearing. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Eyes have unanimously, and the pleasure of the board.
I'd like to make a motion for a positive recommendation with the language changes in the text through staff.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Eyes have unanimously. Great.
Thank you very much, Chairman, the board. I really appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you. Next is a zoning bylaw amendment to modify the definition of tent, to provide clarification to existing language, and to add further limitations, excuse me, on the time periods for which tents can be erected on a lot or budding lots in common ownership. This is a citizen's petition. Mr. Cohen, I see you rising to the occasion.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, Stephen Cohen, I'm the sponsor of this article. Do you want to talk about it, or...
No, please, I'm turning the floor to you, sir.
So as you know, tents have been a sort of an ongoing issue within the zoning code over the years, and there was a limitation placed several years ago to limit the number of tents to three times or three events per, nine days or three events per year. And what we have is essentially properties that operate as wedding factories or function halls by having, you know, three events every year, three weddings every year, or three, whatever, and some properties where they have multiple lots within the property. So you might have six, or nine, or 12 events going on. And, and, you know, people who live in those neighborhoods know every word to every Cool in the Gang song that there is, over and over and over and over. But, but more than just being a disturbance to the neighbors, what it is, is it, it causes traffic problems, it caused, because these lots and these neighborhoods are not designed for this use. So you've got all kinds of parking on the street. You've got, you know, essentially, you're skirting the health code and the building code and the fire code, and the liquor rules, and all the kinds of things, where if this was it actually, if operating as a function hall, it would be required to have entirely different set of codes and rules it would operate under. But essentially, we're, these are operating as function halls, but claiming that they're residential uses. And so, without getting into trying to figure out how to regulate the ancillary residential use of residential property, we can just say, you know, if you need more than four tents in three years, perhaps it's not for your cousin's wedding and your, you know, your bat mitzvah and, and your high school graduation and, and those kind of things. And if you do, maybe you can get a special permit for it, because you can do a little planning, since you have so many events coming up. So the ascent, the, the, what I'm, what I'm trying to do through this, on behalf of clients that have hired me to do this, is to limit the number of events to no more than four over three years.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And, and to limit it to, so that you wouldn't have multiple permits, just because you've got multiple lots on essentially what's one property.
Got it. Thank you. Board members, any discussion on this? No, no, no. Anything from staff? Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. I know... Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, I know, Mr. Kyberg, you had submitted something, so you want to go first? I'm like, yeah, then I'll come to you, that's okay.
Mr. Chairman, Peter Kyberg, for Michael Reed, who lives at the end of Tom Nevers Road. I submitted earlier to you a bunch of letters, there are a bunch of interested parties here from the public who will wish to speak. I'll give these letters to you, these are in addition to a lot of other letters that I dropped off last time.
Yeah, thank you.
And each one votes from a different person. We're against further limiting the number of tents. Just historically, there used to be nothing in the bylaw as to the use of tents. It came up for litigation about 20 years ago, I was involved in that Superior Court case. As a principle, the Superior Court took little interest in trying to judicially decide how many tents to use in a year. It came back several times at town meeting, in 2009, finally, something was passed by great majority in the town meeting that we've adopted today and used ever since, which allows three events per year. That's sort of the history of how we got here. Many properties that are residential rent their houses out, it's a Nantucket way. Nantucket is both a tourist destination and an event destination and a wedding destination. There's many, many people involved in these events, as you'll, as you'll hear from. The property, particularly of my client, has been used as a wedding place for more than 20 years. Our clients have been limited to three events per lot, which has satisfactory them, I would hardly characterize three events in a year as a wedding factory. In fact, many of these events are not weddings, they're birthday parties, they're events, they're gatherings of all different kinds. Nantucket has always been a destination for these types of events, it's part of our identity, and as I said, an intricate part of the economy, and without beating that anymore, I'd like you to hear from many of the other people in the community that would be affected by this.
Sure, thank you. Mr. Collier, you have something?
No, I'll let the other people go.
All right, great. Does anyone else want to comment on this? Hi.
Hi, my name's Pat Colan, I'm the manager of Nantucket Tents. Um, oh, I feel cold, I don't want to get anyone else sick.
That's okay.
We, as Steve said, and it's wrong, there's no property on the island that does more than four events in a, in a year, it's not allowed, including Whale's Watch, which is two lots, but it's only allowed four tents per season. And I feel like it's a trickle-down effect to the economy, the Chamber of Commerce brings people here, in their planning book is, you know, destination weddings in Nantucket, most of the islanders can get married here, I mean, what's to say if my mom has four daughters and we all wanted to get married on our property at the same, on the same year, we couldn't do it because of this bylaw, if that's to go into play. There's a lot of people that, you know, come here and have rehearsal dinners or brunches, there's people that do annual clam bakes or things for public events, friends of NHA and, you know, any other properties that, that people end up opening up their homes to these Nantucket community groups that have, that are allowed to have tents on their homes from the homeowner just because of this law, and I feel like it's going to affect the, the economy of Nantucket hugely, if this actually goes into play, we're talking about 10 to 12 weddings a year, if not more, which, you know, on an average basis could bring, you know, millions of dollars in a season, in the off-season of, of, you know, bringing people to the island and restaurants and whatever else that people go out and spend money on when they come here for, for a vacation destination wedding.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Linda Williams, I'm gonna put my former ZBA hat on. When this foolishness first came in 20 years ago, it was targeted at one property, I believe it's Steve Cohen's, representing a neighbor that was maybe involved 20 years ago when this happened. I have always been opposed, and I remain opposed, to using the bylaw and town meeting to go after one property. And that's what this is, and that's what it was back in the day when Elliot owned it, out in Tom Nevers. It was a little chaotic back then, and I can see why the neighbors were objecting to it back then. But they still have the 10 o'clock noise law that they have to meet, police can be called at 10:01, I do it out in the badlands when things get out of control behind me, quite frequently. But to use the planning board and the town meeting and the bylaw to hammer away at one property when there's a massive amount of unintended consequences is completely inappropriate then, and it's completely inappropriate now. It will have an adverse effect on the island's economy, because in the off-season, we get, because I drive for Cranberry, we drive a lot in May, and a lot in June, and a lot of September, and a lot of in October, for weddings. I don't end up at a lot of places where a lot of tents, multiple tents. A lot of them are in inside venues, but when you can't get into an inside venue, or an inside venue is too expensive, then you're going to have a tent. My uncle used to rent our property up on the cliff before they sold it, for weddings, because we had a lot of parking, we had a great front yard, and a tent and a bar and a floor would fit on it beautifully. That was impacted when they enacted it the first time, as well as a lot of other people who just trying to keep the roof and pay the taxes and keep the family home going, will rent it for weddings. There are a lot of wedding parties that rent my uncle's house now, but they don't have any room for a tent, they go someplace else with a tent. So I think this is a disaster, it's going to have a negative economic impact, and again, I do not support anybody who brings a warrant article targeting one property, because there are massive unintended consequences, and we need to be very mindful of that as a planning board or a ZBA back in those days. So I ask you to make a negative recommendation or to table it.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to comment on this? Hi.
Hi, my name is TJ LaCuse, I own Nantucket Party Rentals, and this three-tent rule has seemed to work pretty well for 10 years now, most of the weddings and events at these properties are in the off-season, shoulder season, so it's not like, you know, for the most part, most of these people aren't, and the neighbors aren't even around, and it's a pretty desolate time, early June and October and that kind of thing, so I'm opposed to this article, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to comment on, please, come on down. Hi.
Hi, my name is Maggie Stewart, I'm co-owner of Nantucket Island Events, which is an event planning company on the island. I also wanted to oppose this article. We do a lot of weddings throughout the course of the season to echo Kat's sentiments, there are never more than three per season, we also always ensure that everything is properly insured and licensed, as Kat mentioned, and TJ, it is a 10 o'clock noise ordinance, which we have always been respectful of. I would encourage the board to look at the different industries that are affected by weddings, as TJ mentioned, these are primarily things that happen in the shoulder season. We bring a huge amount of business to the island during those May, June, September, October days when the leisure guests aren't there, you know, I would encourage you to speak with the Lodging Association about what the demographic of their guests on most weekends in September and October are, and I believe that a lot of those are wedding guests, I think that the Restaurant Association benefits greatly from the weddings that we bring out here, in addition to caterers on island, obviously my own business, the tent companies, the rental companies, I think that there's a lot of trickle-down that would, would go on if we allowed one individual homeowner to kind of take his vendetta out on an entire industry.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Hi. Come on down. How are you?
Hi, I'm Edna Yell, and my husband and I have owned a Nantucket catering company for 18 years. This directly affects our business and all the other caterers on the island, and it appears to be a witch hunt versus real thing. I'd like to ask your comments about noise and liquor consumption, we are held to the same licensing and insurance requirements as any club would be or a facility hall. So we close at 10 o'clock per the noise ordinances, and we are licensed and tip-certified to serve alcohol in the correct way. I want to go on record to be completely opposed to this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I don't see any other hands at this point, so board members? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Mr. Cohen, please, I'm so sorry.
If I could, very briefly.
Yes.
Frankly, I think they make my point, this is a commercial business, everybody here is talking about how they are running these things as event centers, okay? The thing is, if you have a, this is about, these are, this bylaw is for residential use tents, not for renting out your house as a wedding factory. And if, if people need more than four permits in three years, or even if we did five or six permits in a year, if you're doing three a year, you know, you're essentially running a commercial enterprise. And if you think about what it's like to live next door to a house where they're having a wedding, you know, every weekend, every year, day in, day out, for 20 years, you know, that is, that is not what you're supposed to get in the lug one, lug two, lug three zoning district. It's not supposed to be commercial, it's not supposed to be a function hall space. Anybody at any time could go buy a three, you know, a one-acre property and start renting it out as a function hall, and that's what happens now. I don't think we, Nantucket would lose a nickel, I don't think anybody in this room, some of these people are my friends, some of them are my clients, none of them are going to lose a nickel. Why? Because there's only a couple of houses, handful of houses, that, that abuse this beyond the level at which I'm proposing it. And those few would still be able to have rental, rent out their houses, they'd still be able to have weddings there, they just have to have less, and those weddings would go somewhere else. They wouldn't just disappear and people would be, you know, without their economic support, they just wouldn't be able to continue to abuse the system that allows residential properties to be used as function halls. And, and that's what I'm suggesting would be appropriate. This is about zoning districts in which commercial uses are not allowed, but people are skirting the rules to use them as function halls.
Anyone else? Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Kyberg.
Just very quickly, Mr. Chairman, again, contrary to what my brother has represented, nobody is using, nobody's putting up a tent every weekend or using their house as an event factory. This, this discussion and took place already as to what constitutes the commercial use of a house. Yes, people on Nantucket rent their houses out, some by the week, some by the event. These uses have been going on for time immemorial here, and they have been characterized by the town and by the courts as not converting a residential use into a commercial use. Three tents a year is not a wedding factory, and moreover, my client represents, and I think you've heard from other people, that these weddings take place almost exclusively outside of July and August, so the criticisms about bringing more traffic and so forth, yes, they bring more traffic, but it's not in July and August, it's in the shoulder seasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have something else?
I have to agree with what Peter just said, this type of use has been going on for decades here, since it became a tourist mecca in the late 1800s. It is a destination if you have a wedding outside in October and the weather is inclement or it's cold, and you have thousands of dollars stuck into this economy, you're not going to have it out in the backyard and just hang out without a tent. I'm just, you know, these are the same arguments I remember 20 years ago, and I think Peter remembers the same arguments 20 years ago, and we've had the same thing, commercial, not commercial, commercial, not commercial. All of this was basically settled 20 years ago. It's just that this particular property out in Winoma, in Tom Nevers, with a lot of the same neighbors that were there 20 years ago. But I just don't see how you can in good conscience do this and affect everybody else.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Board members of...
Just one note.
Yes, Mr. Cohen?
I certainly would be open to conditions or additions that would limit the application if there were areas where it might be more appropriate, mostly concerned with rural areas.
Okay, thank you. Board members, is there anything else?
I have a quick comment, I've heard an awful lot about when this came up 20 years ago, and, you know, I, I think Nat has said fairly succinctly before that change happens, and I think in the last 20 years, there has been a significant amount of change in the numbers of events of any sort and all sorts that have occurred, and it would seem, you know, I can't really speak to the, it's all because of one person kind of a thing, but it does seem to be that there's some conflict, I mean, I think it would matter if it was happening next to you, but there seems to be a conflict that the definition of residential tent use and the, the, I don't know if you can even call it commercial, but some kind of private public use, not by the landowner themselves, but by someone they have rented to for the specific purpose of an event. But, so I just, I'm, that's where I'm seeing the tension in the situation, I don't know about all the personal stuff there.
I do remember attending the meeting when this came up, 20 sub, 20 some odd years ago. I, my personal opinion is, this is an isolated instance, I'm sure there are others that take place, it seems like one neighbor is really trying to change the, the whole scope of the entire island. I think local authorities could be called, and, and this could be addressed on a case, by case basis, and if that didn't help, then maybe the one neighbor would have litigation options for that. But I think the bylaws that were, that are in place, they seem to work, I haven't heard this really for 20 years, so I'm, I would, I'd actually not endorse this, and I'd really give it a negative recommendation, and that's all I have to say as an individual.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I would ask us to remember the discussion and debate about the Westmore Club situation, I think when there's intensification of use and there's neighbors, that this is a problem maybe currently in Tom Nevers particularly, but I do agree with Mr. Cohen that this seems to me to be something that potentially is a shifting characteristic, and I know the arguments about rentals and residential uses and that kind of thing, they all come to mind, but I have to say, in my opinion, it, it really should be something that we change, because it's, I don't believe it's just related to this situation, I think it's a situation that could well be occurring in other parts of the island, and I think we should have a clear rule about it, so that's just why I'm going to vote in favor of the proposal.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll say a couple things. Look, 30 years ago, oh, even longer, I mean, we didn't even have the technology to whip a tent up in a couple of hours, I mean, we didn't do things like this then. You couldn't get here by fast ferry, boat was in wood's hole, here I go again, but it's true. The boat went to Hyannis, and people started finding us, and they found us. And our shoulder season, this is what we're talking about right now, summer is just like guaranteed to happen every year, but the shoulders never happen like I do today, and every year, there's a little bit more weekend stuff. I was just talking to somebody about the weddings today, September is wedding month. We used to wait for stroll, now we just like, well, I guess stroll's coming, because Thanksgiving is the new stroll, before stroll. I don't know what to say, too many people are affected in their livelihoods to make money incrementally, everybody isn't on salary, like me, and a lot of people here that just, just go to work every day, and they just sort of just work every single day, but that's not how it is for a lot of people. They make money at certain times of the year, and they don't make any money. Weather's bad on a, on a September weekend, and that boat cancels on Thursday and Friday, see ya, there's your tent, you put it up, and it either blows away, or there's nobody in it, or both. So, I agree with Judith's point about Westmore, it's funny she brought that up, I was thinking about Westmore, and how we jiggled that whole thing and didn't hear a thing after the summer went by, isn't that funny? Also, it's not completely over yet, but, that whole process, but this is an evolving move, a lot of moving parts. We have the noise bylaw that was brought up last night at the select board meeting. I don't know if you guys were watching it, about power tools. And this is Dawn's idea, but I think it's a great one because there are people building houses in July at 10 o'clock outside in some areas. Just depends on where the house is getting built. It could be anywhere. If there's weddings on Parkamo Road and we, somebody decided that, you know, this lot is like the Elliot's Way one, which is now called Reed Way, by the way, is, all of a sudden gets used continuously. Are we gonna have another article, another complaint, another? I mean, I, I just don't know what to say about this. The Elliot's Way issue might go away and it'll be somewhere else. That I, I agree with John, I mean, I just, maybe there's something that can be done to lessen it a little bit, but this is a pretty heavy change for all these people that are working in this industry and the catering and everything else is a lot of trickle down. On Nantucket, so I'm opposed, obviously.
Okay. Captain, please.
Yeah. I'm in favor of the amendment for the following reasons. And I understand that many people, and I've read the letters, numerous letters, obviously from people who are involved in the wedding industry and who may to some extent be affected if this change were made, particularly as it affects, as I understand, a particular property in Tom Nevers. I have had a call from someone who was a neighbor about the experience that they had over the years. And it isn't an experience that I would want. And I would be very annoyed if I lived next door to that property. So, and I would say, notwithstanding what the court decisions may have made, may have been, to me, this, I'm not opposed to incidental, incidental use of a property for a wedding. Even incidental rented out for a wedding. But if it's a wedding property rental, then to me, whether the courts agree or not, that's a commercial use. And that's gonna guide my decision on the way I vote tonight.
Okay, anyone else? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I've read this, I've sat here and read this, I think, 15 times. And I appreciate, I just wanna speak to the text of the actual article. I appreciate wanting to work within the context of the article, but there's one passage here that was the existing, which is corrected to refer to a calendar. And it says that basically a tent, you can no more than three times per year, no more than nine days per. And then it goes on to say, four times per year, no more than 12 days in a three-year period, per, in a three-year period. And then it, it seems to indicate that both require a variant or a special permit. So I guess my point is simply that, in the larger context of things, in terms of articles and in terms of the zoning bylaw, I think that these things should be easily readable by the, every, you know, a layman should be able to pick this up and read it. And I'm having difficult with it, I'm not an attorney, so I'm having difficult processing. It seems to be saying that basically on average, and I don't know that this is the intent, but it can easily be interpreted this way. And the reason I'm bringing this up is because this has just become more litigation, is that this is open to different types of interpretation. Is that basically you could be renting one point, you know, one and a third, you could be putting up a tent one and a third times per year over a three-year period, but then it's in conflict that you can be doing it three times a year. It, it just, it's confusing to me, and I think that it needs to be clarified. Thank you.
Just for clarification, what, what it says is that you could essentially have up to three events per year, but no more than four in a three-year period, however you wanna break that up. And the special permit is not required, the special permit is for an exception. But you're right, I'm just working within the language that's already there instead of rewriting it. It certainly could be written in a way that's easier to read, but my intent was to do minimal monkeying.
Which, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, which, which I completely understand, this is just a matter of not your abilities, but having it better cleaned up, I think, is an important aspect of this article for discussion if it does make it to town meeting.
Mr. Chair, regardless of our recommendation, positive, negative, or no action, it's still going to town meeting and Mr. Cawver is still going to be able to stand up, represent his client and make his case, and it will be voted for whether it passes or not through the town. So I still keep my negative recommendation.
Anyone else? All right, what's the pleasure of the board at the moment?
I'll make a, we can go either way. I'll make a motion to make a favorable recommendation for the... Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to close.
Yep. That's all right.
Second.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Nice, happy unanimously. What's the pleasure of the board? Go ahead.
Okay, I would make a motion that we issue a favorable recommendation to the article.
All right, so that motion's made in second, a discussion on that issue. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye. All right, do I hear anything else?
I'd like to make a favorable, or excuse me, a negative recommendation.
Second.
That motion is made in second, a discussion on the issue. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those, and I concur, are those opposed?
No.
No.
Yeah, okay, so that's three to two vote by this board. Gives it a negative recommendation. Okay, thank you, everyone.
I have a question, a technical question.
Yeah.
Is there gonna be a motion by the board for, to table it? Or is it gonna, what's the actual motion gonna be?
The, the, you have not a favorable, to recommend not a, not a favorable.
Not to adopt.
Not to adopt. Thank you, I'm so sorry. That, yeah.
Sorry, we gotta get that right.
As Mr. Lowell said earlier, that doesn't preclude...
Yeah, no, I understand, I just was wondering what the motion would be.
Thank you, I'm so sorry.
If clarification helps, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, next thing before us at this point is a zoning bylaw amendment to modify the exemptions within the definition of ground cover to include generators, related enclosures, mechanical, and utility equipment that specify what the height of an exempt shed includes. Did you, Mr. Cawver, believe this is yours? Ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna ask you to take your conversations outside because we really do have more business to conduct inside. Thank you.
So, Stephen Cawver, this article is not on behalf of a client, but it comes out of a zoning case that I had earlier this summer.
We're good. I'm sorry, did you?
No, wait.
No, please go.
Okay, so the, the town meeting and the planning board previously amended to add in a few exemptions like air conditioning units. And then there was a zoning case this summer where someone said, if you have, since you've exempted air conditioning units and stuff like that, then it implies that specifically non-mentioned things like generators or utility equipment should then be counted because they're similar but not mentioned. And the zoning board actually rejected that argument and said, you know, no. But the zoning board doesn't have the ability to issue a, a policy or to change the bylaw like that. So because, because of that case, it prompted me to propose the clarification. The generators and generator enclosure language, I wanna point out to you that currently, if you have a generator and you put a case, a sound enclosure around it, it could be counted as ground cover. So I think it's not a good public policy to discourage sound muffling enclosures. And I would encourage, if the board or staff wants to look at any way to make sure that that's not abused, to really make it, you know, bigger structures, that that would be fine. But, but the, there's currently a, I think, an unintended inability to put sound muffling enclosures over generators, because then they're, that box is counted as ground cover. So, and then unrelated to that entirely, but within the same definition, the zoning board recommended changes to the shed exemption that basically said if it can't have a basement, then it can't be more than 16 feet tall. They, they thought there were abuses to the shed definition, and, and those are fine. But the problem is, if you take a 16-foot shed and put it on a sloping lot, and nearly every lot on Nantucket is sloping, because of the way ground cover, height is calculated, you have to, you can really only have like a 14 or 15-foot shed, with match, which mathematically gives you weird-looking ridge heights. So my intent here is just to say 16 feet from the foundation because, you know, then we don't have to worry about what the topography is around the, the shed. And in some areas, because of flooding and coastal issues, you're not allowed to change the topography, so you can't even fix it that way. So it doesn't really allow for abuse, it's just, you know, from the top of the foundation.
Board members, any questions?
I have one question. About something, but on mechanical and utility equipment, could you give me some examples of that and what you think the structure would be for that?
Pool stuff.
Included with that?
It could be exterior pool equipment, it could be a, what do you call it? A chiller, which is part of a...
Air conditioner.
Air conditioner or, or a...
Geo.
Geothermal system. It could be a utility box with just the, you know, the box on it, generators.
Is it, is it, excuse me, so it doesn't have a roof or it doesn't have a roof over it? These are just walls, like a, it would be like a fence?
Well, in, in most cases, those equip, that equipment is either just freestanding or itself is a box. You know, utility box, like you'd see on the corner. Most of them are non-inside structures, unless the thing itself is a box.
Is a block gonna count as a foundation? Anyone else on the board, have any questions?
No, I, this is, I thought we already fixed the 200, the little building, Leslie. This is great. This is like housekeeping by a citizen. I mean, we should have already fixed this. The generator issue, though, they're getting fancier. They already have nice plastic fiberglass covers that are insulated. They get put on a concrete slab. I mean, I don't know how you could make the interpretation that it's ground cover if it has a cover. They already kinda have a cover, but they're getting, I know what you're talking about, they get put inside. But, I mean, this is, especially out in the big areas that only have 3% ground cover. I mean, imagine having to redo your whole project over something like that. It's kinda ridiculous. They're usually all screened, and keeping the pool stuff and other electrical things inside is a massive mess to leave that stuff outside. And it's been going on for years because of this issue. Building this one little shed offsets a one room in the house or some, or something. So this should have already happened. This will help the, the service people and all the things that go wrong with the stuff that's sitting outside. So I'm definitely in favor of this little cleanup.
Yeah, I, I should say, Nat, the enclosure would only apply to generators. It doesn't apply, apply to enclosures for other mechanical equipment. It could, but I...
But isn't there, is, are we putting the exception for the under 200, under 200 or 200 square foot shed? One that has mechanical stuff, or not? That's what it looks like I'm reading.
You can, you can put mechanical equipment in a shed, you just can't have plumbing or other residential uses in a shed.
Right, but you can have non-podable water, other things in there, and it doesn't count.
Yeah, you can even have a well in a shed, you just can't have plumbing in it.
Okay. All right.
I've seen, seen that a bit. But I, but I, but I've also seen people get rejected on generator enclosures because it's been determined to be a shed.
So from what Nat was saying...
Trying to protect her investors.
Thank you.
Okay, no, go ahead. No, it's fine. No, go ahead. Sorry.
I'm just curious, from what Nat said, is this in like LEG I areas, R10, R5? I didn't see anything specific to a zoning area.
Yeah, it, this, this would apply everywhere, and frankly, except for including the generator enclosures, it's how zoning has traditionally been applied. Zoning has not counted utility equipment as counted towards ground cover, but there was a suggestion this summer that because of the change that was made last year, that it could be implied that stuff that wasn't included in the exception now counts as ground cover. So instead of, you know, so it should just all be included as accepted. So this is really fixing what was left out because of the sort of backwards logic of how zoning works.
Anyone else on the board? Andrew, Leslie, Holly, anything you wanna add?
We just have a small change on the, I mean, I think on the adding that particular information makes sense. It's, you know, it gets to a point where we have to identify every single thing here.
It gets invented.
You know, I mean, the interpretation was made, it went to the ZBA and it was overturned. So I think, you know, at this point, it's, it warrants it going in for clarification. On the height mechanism, I think just to simplify this, it's from the top of the slab pier or crawl space foundation, because you've got the foundation and then you've got another reference there. So I think we just need to get that straightened out a little bit.
Sure, yeah, I see what you're saying. That amendment would be fine. That's a good clarification.
Yeah.
Thanks. Anyone else in the audience wishing to comment on this? Seeing no further comments? Board members, anything else? What's the pleasure of the board on this?
Motion to close.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Those opposed? Nice, happy unanimously. Pleasure of the board.
Make a motion for a positive recommendation.
Yeah? Do I hear?
Second.
Discussion on that issue.
With the cha, with the changes from staff, sorry.
Of course, duly noted. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, but please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Yep. Those opposed?
No.
It's four to one, okay, so you're opposed.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So that's a four to one vote by the board. Okay. So next thing is a zoning bylaw amendment to modify the definition of structure, clarify the language relative to stairs providing access to a structure. Mr. Cawver?
Sure, this came up, I think you know that there was a move to allow four steps within setback, essentially because the new flood rules were requiring that when houses were brought up and then put back down, even on the same foundation, the new three-foot platform and stairs were creating the need to go to the zoning board for variances for all of these stairs that were being, where there used to be a set of stairs and now you're adding a three-foot platform, so the staircase is moving into the setback. The problem is that the drafting creates an anomaly where if you actually have more than two stairs, regardless of how many are in the setback, the zoning officer is, is saying that doesn't apply. So if you have three or four stairs getting to your house, then he would interpret it the way it's written as not being compliant with the exception. As crazy as that sounds, I actually think is right, which is why I'm attempting to, you know, change it to clarify essentially that we're talking about how much of an encroachment you have here. I've talked to the staff about this. They, I think, like the idea, but might have wanted to tweak it a little bit. And I'm fine with that because I'm not wedded to the language so much as the concept of trying to make sure that essentially if you're going one or two steps or two or three feet or something reasonable into the setback, which is essentially created by the new building codes, we shouldn't require people to ever get variances for that. That's where, that's the point of it.
Yep.
Okay. Board members, any discussion on this?
Fact.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, no, I'm good.
Stephen, I just wanna stress the, I do remember this coming up and presenting problems for houses that are being raised and lis, or are lifted and new foundations put in. And obviously, the, the egress with the, the height will count towards in the setbacks, and I agree with this. I just wanna point out, new construction, I don't think we should, we should be made aware that if we have new construction here, we shouldn't just assume that we can set it into the setback and make egress because, you know, something like this would take place. It should really be in reference to something that... It should really be in reference to something that's improved as a result of necessity or even a lift for a new foundation.
So, so that issue came up last time, and the problem is that zoning can't work like that. It can't say only for new construction, and the compromise was that the rule only applies in essentially smaller zoning districts, so if you're in a, you know, lug one, lug two, lug three, you know, get it right, or deal with it. But if you're in a small zoning district where you'd have to move the whole house back three feet to deal with it, you know, we don't want to see that, we don't want, you know, basically in districts where there's only a five or ten-foot setback, you know, but if you've got a thirty-foot setback, push your house back, you know, if you've got a
Well, I guess my point was, and I'm a builder, if I have a lot in the ROH, I don't want to necessarily, I'd love this, but I feel like I'd be abusing it if I designed my steps, you know, to go up in the setback when I have, when I can create, you know, entirely clean slate.
Well, so actually in most communities in the state, you can, stairs don't count, and you could put the house on the setback and the stairs into the setback. And so what we're talking about here is only allowing a couple of stairs to go in the setback. Right now, there are lots of things that can go in the setback, so for example, window wells can go in the setback. So you end up with lots of other things that are there. In town, in historic buildings, the stairs are not only in the setback, they're in the road. They're in the public way. Most of the build-out within the smaller zoning districts is already built out like this. They're just pre-existing, non-conforming at this point. So I appreciate what you're saying, that there is some opportunity to get a little, get the house a little bit closer, but you could also put the stairs someplace else. If you want to push the house all the way up to the lot line, I mean, to the setback line, and put your stairs on the side, or, you know, build a little jog-in, there's lots of ways to get your house all the way up and also not put the stairs into the setback. But at the end of the day, there's other things in there anyway.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
We agree with Mr. Cohen that, you know, this article was amended and amended before it was approved, and it doesn't really capture our intent, but I don't think that his modification does either. So maybe we could continue this until the eleventh and work on some language.
Okay.
And I'm fine with that, when Leslie and I discussed it, I agreed with her that it could do some work.
Board members, anything else? Public hearing is open, ladies and gentlemen, if anyone would like to comment on this. Okay.
Make a motion to continue till the February eleventh?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, eyes have you unanimously. Next thing is a zoning by law amendment to modify the definition of yard front, to allow the issuance of a special permit to reduce the front yard setback where a street away abuts more than one side of a lot. Sir?
Okay, so you all now know what it's like to be married to me where I just keep talking. So
It's alright.
One of the great things we have on Nantucket is that we don't have a bunch of cookie cutter, square subdivision grids. But one of the downsides to that is that you have lots that have two or three or all of the lot abutting a single street. And so what you end up with is the front yard setback on seventy, eighty percent of the lot. And it doesn't really make any sense, but in order to cure that, you have to get a variance now. So I really thought about trying to apply a formula, and then I thought that the formula was, you know, maybe too complicated, and the simple thing to do would just be to create a special permit so that the planning board could use a little common sense and say, okay, because of the way this cul-de-sac is designed, because of the way this U-shaped street is designed, this lot has, you know, three front yards, even though it's a single street, and you could grant a waiver, and you would be able to put controls in place through the special permit process. I've seen this happen, I don't know, a dozen times, dozen times in the fifteen years I've been here, and it continues to happen because every new subdivision, you know, sort of, U-shaped subdivisions are popular, and you end up with multiple front yards on some lots.
So
Go ahead.
So your intent is to not, where you're getting your frontage from isn't necessarily where you're going to establish a setback from the front?
Well, your front yard setback and your frontage don't have to actually be on the same side.
Okay.
But
Okay.
Once you pick a front yard, or whether, you know, or if you're only abut a lot on, if your lot abuts only one street, that street is your front yard, but it could be on three sides of your house, of your lot.
This is interesting.
And it's actually relatively common.
So what about the address? Like, let's say you have
Doesn't matter.
Okay.
Yeah, Nantucket is really funny, I explain this to people a lot. Your frontage, your front yard, and your address can all be different.
Especially if you live on Wee Weeder, it could be anywhere, some of those roads.
Yeah.
Just throw your box out the window.
Yes, sir.
Where's the highlighted language?
Interesting. It's not in the packet.
It's not in the packet, but where it says four lots abutting one street or way, sort of in the middle where the T is, it's every, it's that whole last sentence.
One more time?
Sort of in the middle where it says four lots abutting, yeah, it's that whole last sentence.
Okay.
The whole last sentence, okay.
Yeah, yeah. And again, it really just, it gives the planning board the authority to issue a special permit to say, okay, this lot shouldn't have three front yards, but to draw the line on what makes sense.
Mr. Chairman, I've asked Holly to bring up an example so you all can visualize it. I think eight fin back is a good one, and it's one that the planning board had to deal with not too long ago, but you were able to deal with it through the subdivision, it didn't have to go through the variance process, but so you can see how this would apply.
Holly's going to find it?
Wow.
The picture, a great point.
It actually happens all over the island because of the way people have U-shaves and jogging and hammerheads and all kinds of non-square layouts.
One street way.
Still shows the boat to Woods Hole. Crazy.
Right, so that's an example of a front yard that goes on, you know, more than fifty percent of the lot.
But under the zoning, because it's one, that hole from the bottom up and around is considered the front. So, board members, do you have anything else?
I just want to make sure I understand. So the intent or what the amendment would do would be to say that by special permit, I mean, the board could by special permit just designate one or more, one
One side, or whatever you want.
One side or the other, as opposed to both.
Exactly.
Got it.
Oh, I like it, I mean, this could help neighbor issues as well. This could help a lot of different, gives a lot more flexibility with these
It does, the impact now, right, is it pushes it off.
What would this have done, I mean, you're standing there, Steve, so I'm going to ask you. What would this have done up at your favorite place up there in Chicken Hill? Would this have fixed anything up there with all those little issues that were going on up there?
I'm not sure.
Okay, just curious, because that was the big topic, so I figured I'd ask. If this issue was, could have been solved up there.
I think there are multiple issues up there.
Hmm, I know, well, that's true.
I think, just something I consider too, and maybe it doesn't come up that often, but, you know, if the minimum frontage on the lot should be required, so if it abutted, you know, we'll just say fin back, if that was only twenty feet on fin back as it carried around, and it looks, it looks to be like two roads, if the frontage was required to be fifty to meet that zoning, I would say at least that fifty feet should be proper for the twenty-foot setback. And then the side, even though it would have but to that same road, maybe that would have a little bit of leniency with the, through the planning board with a special permit to get a reduction.
Yeah, I thought about trying to get into those kind of details, and then I thought it made sense to just leave it to the board to use its knowledge, because, you know, presumably you would look at it and say, okay, well, we don't want to give anybody a windfall, but we don't want to have anybody overly burdened either in what makes sense. Well, they've got a hundred feet of frontage, but you only need fifty feet, so cut the line somewhere.
Right.
Anything else from the board, or from staff? Ladies and gentlemen, public hearing, so if anyone would like to comment on this? Seeing no comments, pleasure of the board.
I think, oh, okay, I'll make a motion to close, please, sorry.
Second.
Okay, motion's made, second to close the public hearing. Discussion on the issue? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those Thank you, those opposed, eyes have you unanimously, and pleasure of the board.
And move that we make a positive recommendation.
Okay, do we hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have you unanimously, thank you. Do you guys need five minutes? We're going to have this for three hours, we're down to about the last five articles. Do you need like about five minutes? Alright, so we're going to take control recess for five minutes, okay? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Seven seconds.
That's about right.
Yep.
Well, that's where I got confused, and I should have said something.
Why?
Just because we went from
Which one?
the thirtieth and February eleventh, and one of them was a baby date, and one of them was the day Judith can't be here for, and so but that one went to the day that Judith can't be there, and then all the others went to
The ones to the Atlantic, or so they get more title to stop.
Like, and the one that Judith started that just seems sort of, I should start speaking up, because I think sometimes I, everybody hears something a little differently. Yeah, I sort of kept forgetting to read Marcus's recommendation. I won't make any comment. So which, what did we just vote on that was four to one? And then after that.
Are you talking to Judith? Judith and Fritz here, I don't know, are you talking to me? Oh, oh. Four to one was ground cover generators.
Generators, was that, can you ask Judith if that was her against it, or that was you, okay.
That was me.
And what was your reason, Fritz?
Yes, I know, yeah.
What was your rationale against it?
What?
Why, why did you vote?
Against it?
Yeah.
I'm against anything that I'm against anything that increases the exclusion from ground.
Okay.
It's like this, the last one with the steps.
That one is sort of, that one gets you to me, because well, so if I need to jack up my house
On a new house? I can design a house, I'm not sure, I don't have to build the steps.
And if I jack up my house, and I need to add two with the extra steps, because now it's higher
Yeah, I could listen to that, and he's saying we're going to make the difference. So I'm saying, sorry, everybody, all building a new house.
But no, so if I have to jack up my house, and if my two, my steps go on the setback, isn't that exactly, that's a hardship, because my foundation was crumbling, and now the new code says so that's, I mean, we can't be so adverse to going in.
That's what I'm saying, that's reasonable, when you're in your new house, and you create a zoning issue by lifting the house, you created it. Before, when the pavement was on the ground, we stepped out and it was an issue. So we have to be a little flexible, that, I'm just afraid, and I think
Building new houses?
Yes, you abused the system, and, whoa, whoa, who got that? It's a brand-new house with a plan, I can design it differently, but now you're relying it in the setback. So that's, I just want to be cautious.
But I guess, sort of more my question is, that's a very, that's a very concrete reason to go in and get a variance.
Right.
And that, so it's like, that's what the variance process is about.
I think so.
A hardship was created, not by me, and not a financial hardship, the hardship was created because flood codes and zoning, you know.
I agree, I just, I just want to
Well, just keep in mind, too, in town in town, if you have a two thousand square foot lot, you know, five foot five foot, or a zero foot in the front, I mean, you're getting set your
Yes, but I already think you're in town, which is, which is, creates a
With four marks, with the I did not with the, I think my statistics two thousand square feet. Oh, fifty percent, or forty percent. Except the fifteen hundred square feet, so you're doing more than fifty percent. Pretty big, for you, town, fifty percent is five thousand square feet, forty percent is four thousand square feet. Three, four, twelve thousand square foot, are you kidding me? You don't knock out, in the basement, it's like sixteen thousand square feet, so really You don't knock counting, the basement, it's like 16,000 square feet, so really, 20,000 square feet. But, this is similar, you make that one just a difference.
Well, so now that I was mentioning that, in the size, in the six...
And you are limited to 30, 30 feet, yeah.
And you're two and a half, or...
Right. I, I do have a case report, you know, a couple of GBA, you know, you're waiting, most 22,000 square feet, the entire... We have, we built on the luxury, we had 15,000 square feet, 15%, we did 1,000 square feet, we gave it some patio space and set back through the driveway. So we did, so we did 1,000 square feet, we were looking at a basement, we were looking at a first floor, second floor, third floor, and a third floor, and a bedroom. Getting it, this is an all-in-one. We lived, given to the restrictions of 30 foot or less, which we did, really, because the floor floors are living space.
Now, you're the person, I have to choose who. I mean, it's one thing, when you're blocking out, everybody yells.
Yeah, but you're not, no, we're doing it. Look, if you let it on your own, go see if it doesn't look like it's been left for years.
Yeah, now, have you seen, it's on that here, for instance?
Yes, I got it, yeah.
We can't turn and dry it in the air during the day, and that was, I remember when Lisa divided that lot, and I had so much to write.
We still have a lot of natural light, okay?
Ladies and gentlemen.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to start calling us back to order, please, at this point, thank you. Thank you for giving us a few moments' worth of, uh, pass there. Beautiful. There we go, okay. All right, so, the next thing before us at this point, thank you, is a zoning bylaw amendment to modify the rear lot subdivision provisions to allow any approval required, or approval not required, plan to qualify for this development option.
Okay, so, the rear lot subdivision is, I think, an often misunderstood provision of the bylaw. Um, and I think it's actually a really good one, it's common off-island, and I think bringing it here does some good, because what it does is it allows us to take lots, and without increasing the density at all, eliminate all these little stub roads that we have. Stub roads are not taxable, they create, um, infrastructure where you don't need it, they create setbacks that are sort of un, un, um, uh, not useful, and they eliminate areas that could otherwise be used better for parking and stuff like that. You know, they create useless space, um, just to essentially access one lot, that's gonna be a rear lot, anyway. When the bylaw was originally proposed, it was proposed to apply to both, um, approval required and approval not required. And there was an amendment that was added to say only for approval not required, um, because there was a thought, well, maybe this would create a windfall, because it would allow people who have approval required plans, who are people who couldn't qualify for, um, subdivisions to suddenly get land that's not subdivided, to become subdivided. Um, and I get that, but I think the way you prevent this windfall of creating unsubdivisible land to become subdiv- subdividable, is to say that it only applies where there's an approval required plan, anyway. Because what we're doing is we're telling people, you can't do a rear lot subdivision, but you can come in and get an approval required subdivision, so we're forcing people to have these little stub roads in that situation. In other words, you're denying yourself the tool to decide, should this be a rear lot subdivision, or an approval required subdivision, and saying, we are only allowed to allow, we're only allowed in this situation to have an approval required subdivision, which creates a stub road for one lot, I mean, for one, um, yeah, for one lot, which is exactly the situation we're trying to avoid, um, to begin with. So, this change would not create any more lots, or any more density, it would allow more land to be taxable, more land to be used for parking and other purposes, um, not likely used for development, because the land that would be used would be for, essentially, the accessway. And because it's by special permit, you have 100% control over putting conditions in place, including limiting ground cover, including limiting setbacks, including whatever conditions you deem appropriate for, um, the situation at hand. So there's no windfall, it's just that the ability for you to look at a lot and say, okay, we don't need a stupid little untaxable, unusable road for one lot, this could just be a, a driveway. And that's what this would allow you to do here. Again, no new subdivision, only better use of land at your discretion, with your conditions. So, that's the suggestion.
Okay, board members?
And, and I would say, this is something that I've had two clients who have approval required plans to do subdivisions, one's on Duke's Road, and one's on Hooper Farm Road, and both of them are resisting doing it, because the half-circle turnarounds that they'd have to add to those roads would be so ridiculous, it's exactly what we are trying to avoid. Uh, you know, imagine, uh, you go down Hooper Farm Road, or you go down, uh, Duke's Road, and there's this circle that looks like your desk here, you know, that's installed simply to create a subdivision. It, it makes no sense. Thanks.
Great, so board members, any questions?
I'd like to just defer to staff on this, on this part, this is a staff thing right now.
Right, and I was kinda just about getting ready.
Cause I'm still trying to figure out how, why would you need a rear lot subdivision if you get an A and R? I'm trying, I'm sorry, that's why...
Instead, so right now, you can only do a rear lot as an A and R, and what this says is you can do a rear lot...
No, it's the other way around, you can only do a rear lot if you can prove that you can do an AR.
If you could do an AR with no, um...
I know, can you, I know, it's supposed to be a 40-foot.
Right, so if you can do it with no waivers, so, if, so, i- if you can get waivers, then you have to actually install the road and, and create these little stubs. So, what you're doing is you're not allowing yourself the discretion to say, okay, for this one little two-lot subdivision, why are we, we would force someone to put a rod in, a, a stub rod in. Um, you have not allowed yourself, so, there are lots of subdivisions that have been created that would like to eliminate their little stub roads, and there are lots of subdivisions that will get created using these stub roads, and you have no current ability to say, it makes no sense to have a stub road here. So, but you do have the ability to say, no, we won't approve this, we won't grant those waivers, we won't, we won't, you know, issue the special permit. So again, no additional development, only additional choices for you on what makes sense, on, on the proper way to do the subdivision that you would, you have already or may approve, anyway.
So, let me turn it over to staff, because I think this is critical.
So, I have two scenarios, I just threw you, Ms. Chairman, if I could. So, you're applying this to an A and R, so, an A and R doesn't involve a new road, anyway, so, are you saying that if I come in and get approval for two A and R lots, I can resubmit that for a rear lot subdivision? Is that the intent?
You could, I mean, I don't know why, if you're gonna have the same number of lots, why it would really matter.
No, I, I understand that, it's just that there isn't a new road as part of that.
That's true, but it, it would allow someone to come in essentially with a different shape.
Shape lot.
Lot, that might make more sense, that the planning board might say, okay, that makes sense, plus we have the opportunity to add these conditions, and based on our willingness, based on the fact that those conditions make sense, and this shape makes sense, we're willing to grant it. Or you might say, no.
Right, so that, that actually does give the board more control, as, so when A and R comes in, you sign it, meaning your approval is not required. You all understand that, correct? So, so converting that through a special permit certainly gives you the opportunity to put conditions on. So I, I see that. On the issue of the approval required, the point and the reason that we put that it had to meet all the standards, is that to speculate about, oh, well, maybe there'll be, the board will give waivers, or this, that, or the other, is something that just is not... You know, until you finish the process, and, you know, go past your appeal period, that's all speculative. And so, if, and, if the board has actually approved an AR, and it hasn't been appealed, then that's one thing. But, we didn't want to get into a situation where, oh, the board is likely to approve this, so we'll just go ahead and go to a, a rear lot subdivision, do you see? So, I don't, you know, that, that would require an applicant to go through the full process, you know, because again, and appeals typically are made on what waivers you as the board issue.
Right.
And I, and I would be entirely open to amending the article, or to having the board substitute an article that required the approval not required plan to be approved and not appealed first, and then to come back for this, because it's not, my intent is not to create a windfall, or to avoid the approval required process, or to avoid the appeals, or anything like that. It's just to say, if we're, if we're creating these stub roads, we should also allow the planning board to use its common sense and avoid them in that situation. And I agree with, with Andrew, that, you know, if we do it as a two-step process, to avoid that speculation, and to create that opportunity to debutters, I, that's fine. I'm not looking for a windfall, I'm looking for some common sense.
Give it a few moments' worth of thought, might want to defer this one.
I just, I wanna just, I just wanna ask another question, because Cormac is here, and he's gonna hit the ejecta button any minute, on this.
You don't, now, 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 now.
He definitely needs to, he's gonna be talking about this, but anyway. Andrew, when we came up with this, and it is off-island everywhere, I'm glad you brought that up, because we had that told to us as well. The 20-foot road projects that are AR, that we, that don't have the space, but we reduce the road, which is what we want, okay? We want the small, little, piddly roads, we don't want these big roads that don't need to happen. But we purposely created this bylaw to have to be a 40-foot proof road, can't be a 20. Now, these little squiggly frontage averaging things that we end up with, with these little circles that you're talking about, I, I hate those. I hate those, those are stupid. But, it's legal in an AR, so you can't say that it's not part of this process when those can get created, they're all over the place. We had a case down at Prox Court, we won the case, but it's lost, it's just how it is. But at the same time, will that, will this fix some of that, Andrew, on those weird ones that like, look like we kinda shoehorned something, and it's not a real...
It looks like Pac-Man is attacking all these roads.
I hate those. I'm just asking, cause this is, this is a really interesting conversation, we need to talk about it, because it's a hot topic, the rear lot subdivision.
But, but, since you posed the question, staff, I'd like them to answer.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, part of this comes from our own rules and regulations, so remember, we have this 60-foot turning radius cul-de-sac that, you know, is really, that's straight out of the 70s here, it's not really, you know, that's not a current practice pretty much anywhere, except maybe Iowa or something, it's just not, that, that's really not a good standard, but it is the standard that we've adopted. You have to go through a process to amend it, and, you know, a 40-foot wide road is appropriate for a certain number of lots, but not for one additional.
That's right.
The, the subdivision process, I mean, involves waivers from those standards, again, which are standards that you control through your, through the regulations. So, that's where the waiver requests come from, and what, and this is a conversation I've had with Cormac, and he and I talked about this, is that we don't want speculative subdivisions to get credit that they're going to be subdivided, without going through the process. So, and, you know, maybe there's a way to, you know, address that, but, you know, the subdivision process and the road construction and, and every... That brings, you know, that, that's a pretty intense hearing and, and information that's here before you. And when you grant waivers, again, that's the basis for appeals. So, subdivisions that meet all your rules and regulations that are appealed are very hard to overturn. It's when you start waiving your minimum road widths and your cul-de-sac things at the end, is, that's where the issue comes up.
So Leslie, to follow up?
So I'd just like to add that, when this article was originally proposed, two years ago, three years ago, the language that we drafted said that the, um, that the rear lot subdivision plan had to be based on a proof plan substantially in compliance with the subdivision rules and regs. So as Andrew said, that was a little bit speculative, and sort of skipped over the whole waiver process through the AR, you know, the AR, public hearing, and all of that stuff. So, what Stephen and I talked about in the office with this article, is that, you know, we could wrap, sort of like we do with the cluster and the old MRD, you do the subdivision waivers and the special permit together at the same time, and they're both subject to the appeal period. And it streamlines the process, but doesn't skip over any important steps or public hearings.
Yeah, now, in fact, I think a simple thing might be to do at the end, is just say, where it says submission of a dimensional lotting plan, or an approved approval or required plan, which, which would have your approval on it. To allow you to then apply this standard to, or not, to something that you've already approved as a subdivision.
So board members, anything that you want to ask? Okay, so let me open it to the public at this point. Anyone wishing to comment on this, Mr. Collier?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, Cormac Collier, and then technical and council. Uh, yeah, I was a part of this, uh, when it came, um, before you, about two, three years, and I was very concerned that, um, that the language put forth here was, um, put into the original article. This is a huge bonus, a huge benefit for landowners, to be able to do a rear lot subdivision, and, um, I think everybody at the time felt, felt that really meeting all the dimensional and upland requirements was very important, um, to do so. One side little comment is the upland requirements, I don't know how that fits into the conversation, because obviously that's an environmental issue and a wetlands issue, and, um, anytime somebody wanted to get past that 90%, they would have to go to the zone, uh, ZBA. Just wanted to remind everybody on that. But also, um, look, the process works, um, I think, right now, you guys just approved two at your last meeting. One was, um, next to Reverend Snell's, one was another, one I can't remember, and those were fine, went through, 40-foot layout, great, good to go. Um, I just get worried about the process, but I really have to put my faith in you guys, I guess, in that a plan will be brought to you, and it'll be sort of a junky AR plan, and you'll be like, ah, don't worry about that, we're just gonna end up doing a, doing a rear lot anyways. So, because, you know, and that, that, you have this sort of front guard in terms of what you have right now, is you have to meet them all, and then go forward. Whether, but this is sort of contemplating, excuse me, contemplating and I'm doing them all at once, and you might not give enough deference to really your rules and regulations. But again, that's putting my faith in you guys, that you would, but waivers are subjective, um, certainly, by the makeup of the boards, and, um, I guess, if you do go ahead with this, I'd just put my faith in you, that you'd really stay true to why those rules and regulations are written. I am opposed to it, though, at its core. I think it works now, and, and, and it shouldn't be changed, and I do know a number of lots that can be subdivided if this gets changed, that can't be subdivided right now.
Because of the 40 feet?
Sure.
Okay.
And, and some of the other dimensional requirements.
Okay, anyone else in the, I'll just hold on for a minute. Just see if there's anyone else out there who wants to comment on this. Go ahead there, sir.
Andrew, just, just a question through, through you, Barry, to stand up.
Yeah, no, please.
What we did at 54 Hooper, recently, you know, the, yeah, so, that was the first one that we, uh, maybe it wasn't the first one, but we got, took care of the utilities with an easement, you know, because there was existing utilities. Some of the stuff with the wide road is because of all the things that aren't built yet, that's the, that's the reason for this. And, you know, 40-foot road, you gotta have all these, you know, edges and drainage and electricity, and a lot of these places are sort of already developed. There's just a big sort of piece of dirt in the back that doesn't have frontage, yet. That's, that's really what we're doing, it's infill, Nantucket-looking, like Mike's Way. Every time you look at that and say, what is there a road there for? It's a driveway with frontage.
Yeah.
So, I, I, I'm glad you spoke, Cormac, in a, you know, you, you, now that we've had two or three years to sort of flush this and see what it did, it, it looks a lot better than a big paved road that we were all getting in trouble for making all these paved roads. than a big paved road that we were all getting in trouble for making all these paved roads. And this helps make, not let that happen. It helps it look like Nantucket more traditionally. So my opinion is we need to, I'm not saying we need to continue, but I think we need to get more staff input, Barry, on this, in my opinion, as more as one person. This is, this is something that, Steve, if we were doing this, like, you know, 15 years ago, we wouldn't even be talking about it.
Yeah.
But because of the pushback on growth right now simultaneously, nobody remembers when we were called the paving board and all the things that we were called. I sort of, I remember this stuff every minute of my life. So I see this as what we should have done so long ago, and it would have avoided all that. Remember the rural road alternative, when that was new? Oh, you might not even have been here then. But that's what, this is fixing everything that we got, we're based it for back in the day. So I just think we need to get it right, and make sure that there isn't an adverse impact that gives too much, too much to somebody. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. So listening to the board and the staff, I actually have a recommendation for you to consider, and I, you know, and I think we'll, we'll probably continue this, but what I would do is take out all of the crossouts, so that, and then add in at the end, or an approved approval required plan. So that, in other words, it can only be based on either a plotting plan with no waivers, or a plan that you've already approved and the appeal period has run on. So therefore, there's no additional, there's no additional lots. It just lets the owner come in and say, hey, would you give me an additional special permit to do it a different way? And again, you can say no. I'm, I'm not, again, I'm not trying to add development, I'm just trying to eliminate step roads.
Right.
Just to that point, Ms. Chairman, because I don't want to belabor it.
No, it's okay.
What was I going to say? If you're grandfathering previously approved approval required plans to do this option, I just want to make sure that it's, if it's an as-of-right use, that they can just come in and do that. But then you're saying, no, the road we, we approved for the AR is what we really want. But they're going to come in and say, no, we want to do the rear, rear lot. Are they going to have more rights to do that? Or are you going to have the ability to say, no, we want to stick with the AR plan? Do you see where I'm, do you see where I'm going?
Yes, because you could have a situation where you actually want the road, like the road connects through...
I just want to make sure you guys still have the power to do that. I do reiterate my first, my previous points.
No, I understand, but...
Yeah, it's a, it's a special permit, so you could say that.
And, Ms. Chairman, I mean, I do see some advantage for sometimes an A&R plan, you know, we come, you know, people come in and do that, and we have kind of awful, you know, like two long skinny lots that, you know, require variances and everything else to amend, where I think the special permit could actually benefit there. I'm not sure the way this is, I, I'm not comfortable the way this is drafted at all. So, you know, maybe this is one to continue to our February 11th meeting, and take a look at this a little bit further.
Yeah. Anyone else in the audience wishing to comment? Board members, do you have anything else?
I'd just make the comment that I'm not opposed to it on a procedural basis, if it makes sense. Ultimately, I would be looking at it, the test for me would be, is it going to create potential for additional lots that we would not otherwise be faced with?
Yeah.
That's the test for me.
Yep. Okay.
Could I just add?
Please.
I'm too sure about it, and I probably will not be in favor of it, but I'm happy to wait till the 11th and see what turns up.
Great.
Hey, I'll make a motion to continue to the 11th.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have unanimously. And that's going to bring us to another amendment to modify the secondary residential lot provisions to allow for the sub, for the division of lots exceeding 40,000 square feet in area into two or more lots, provided that at least 50% of the lots are subject to a Nantucket Housing Needs Covenant.
Okay. So this language, you'll notice, is not bylaw language. This is more of a narrative with the idea that we would discuss it, and if it seemed to be worth moving forward, we could adopt some bylaw language that would be more restrictive. This is drafted to allow slightly more than I think would actually happen. So as you know, right now, under the covenant program, people can take their cottage and cut it off and create a second lot that can be sold into separate ownership. But it essentially allows for no additional development, right? You end up with the same number of structures, but with two owners. The issue that we have, and like my friend Nat Lowell says, we don't have, we can't make any more dirt. But what we have is a lot of wasted dirt, because there are lots of, you know, 80, 90, 100, 120,000 square feet, where people want to create affordable housing. And currently, the option that they have is to create one covenant lot, or do a 40B, right? So I don't know why we wouldn't want to give ourselves the option to say, okay, if you want to create affordable housing at a much lower density, at a higher level of affordable housing, that we could do that now through the special permit process. And so, you know, the example I would give is if you have 120,000 square foot lot, why are we letting you create one affordable lot? Why can't you create two? And then, and then also create two market rate lots? So what you'd end up with is most likely, you know, 40,000, two 20,000 square foot lots, or two 20, or two 30,000 square foot lots for affordable housing, and two, you know, 30,000 or 40,000 or 50,000 square foot lots for market rate. And those would each be limited in the same way that they're currently limited, so that the market rate lots would only have one primary dwelling with no second dwelling, and potentially a tertiary. And the covenant lot would only have the one secondary dwelling on it. So you'd end up with more lots and more dwellings, but you wouldn't have secondary dwellings on the, on the market rate lots. But you, what you also wouldn't have is teeny tiny, you know, massive amounts of lots. Right now, the 40B process allows for people to do, you know, substantial amount of development. And this would allow for a local option, where you're at minimum of 50% or more affordable housing, and you're also limited by Title V and other things like that on bedrooms in, in areas that essentially have lots big enough to do this. I'm not proposing that it would be applicable in small areas, and even though I put 40,000 square feet in here, I would anticipate that when we do the rules, that we would do things like say, okay, really, it has to be on lots of, you know, 60,000 square feet or up before you start cutting it up, and it has to be, and you can do no more than, you know, three or four, or something like that. I'm not, the, the goal here is not to create, you know, massive amounts. It's just to allow people who have very large lots to create a, an additional amount of affordable housing in areas. Frankly, if you look at where this would apply, like Tom Nevers', there's already, you know, density in the area. It could also apply in Pocahontas or Well-Winnett, but less likely.
Board members, any questions?
Yes.
Go.
Steve, I came up with this idea five years ago, I never told anybody but Andrew. But it wasn't quite like this.
Well, then I don't like it.
It's a, this is a really, well, you know what I, when I thought of it? When we did that one covenant in that 160,000 square foot lot, and Tom Nevers in the middle of that green, what's that called over there? What's that name of that road? Green, something, Green Meadow or something?
Yeah.
I'm like, Green Hall, I'm like, do you really want to separate this? That's the biggest primary lot on the island, okay? Now, I don't understand what you said. You said something I don't think is right. You said there's going to be two primaries? No, there'd be only one.
Well...
Under this, you'd end up with two, let's just call them second dwellings right now.
Yeah.
Two second dwellings, a primary lot, and a tertiary can go wherever on the, on the primary. But the two secondaries could either be two covenants, or one secondary dwelling and a covenant, correct? That's what you mean by the 50%?
No, what I mean by 50%...
Okay, I'm just trying to figure that 50 out.
And, you know, and it's, it's drafted wide and could be narrowed, but, but what I, the way it's drafted is essentially the covenant lot would always get the second dwelling, but you'd have a minimum of 50% affordable. So if you have one lot, and you wanted to cut it into three with two affordable and one market rate, you could, because then you're more than 50%. If you wanted to cut it into four, we have two affordable and two market rate, but the market rate would still only have a primary dwelling on each. As long as you're above 50% on your affordable, that's the way it's proposed, then, then you're good. So if you have 120,000 square feet, and you want to create two one-acre lots, I mean, four, you know, one-acre lots, I'm just trying to come up with a way, and the, you know, the math we could do is easy. You know, you could cap it, you could limit it, you could have minimum lot size. I don't want this to turn into some, you know, super overdevelopment. I just think we should give people the ability to have more than one affordable unit, and give them an incentive to do that.
There you go, Mr. Chair.
On large lots.
Stephen, just, I, I like the concept. I'm just leery with the litmus test that we have with the conditions to see how it applies. You might be creating market rate lots where they might not have been able to get market rate lots, obviously. And I'm thinking of maybe even a lug 3, where you don't have the road frontage, but you might have seven acres. So what you're doing is you're bypassing that, and you're getting a covenant correct, and maybe by creating that separate lot, you're getting a market rate lot, which obviously has a lot of value, and, and now you're, you're adding another covenant lot. So you're meeting the goal of the covenant, which I like, but you're also creating lots that would not necessarily be able to be subdivided. And I think there's a couple loopholes like that, and I'm not, I like the concept, and I think we just have to kind of define, refine it and think about it a little bit more.
Yeah. So I, I've thought of that, and I think that in, in that scenario where the lot is big enough that you're creating multiple lots, the lot is already subdivisible anyway, during an AR process. You know, it's just a matter of putting in a road. So this would, you know, it doesn't necessarily change that. Also, it's through a special permit, so the board, sort of regardless of how much we cap it within the rule, the board is always, you are always going to be able to say, okay, you know, four lots and 120 square feet is okay, eight is not, you know, whatever makes sense. But I'm trying to create an opportunity for a local option with a high percentage of affordable housing in a very simple way, using a, using a system that we already have in place.
Steve, I'm, I'm following up on what John said. He's kind of said something that I was saying or trying to say. I don't get, you keep saying subdivide, this isn't a subdivision. This is a fee simple slicing of an existing, let's just say LUG 3 lot.
Yeah.
It's not subdivitable, it's in LUG 3. So how can you subdivide an LUG 3 lot and an LUG 3 zoning district? So I thought, this is how I read your article, which I love this idea. I just want to make sure that we're thinking alike. You're gonna, you're, I see this as four kitchens on a lot that's huge, instead of three. And being able to create two covenants, or one, if you want to have one, you could make a family compound of separate ownership on a lot that you can't even subdivide under this plan, which is a great idea. Like in Tom Nevers', again, we're bringing them up again, but that's because it's, there's massive humongous lots out there that you really kind of, and there's locals that own some of them.
Yeah.
That have all this land, and they can't really use it for their kids.
Right.
And they're certainly not walking down the street buying a lot like we did 40 years ago. So I, that's how I interpreted this, but you keep saying two primaries. Where's the second primary coming from? I don't get that.
Yeah. As an example, the way it's currently proposed, and it could be reduced, but the way it's currently proposed, if you had 120 square, 1,000 square foot lot, like these four acre lots.
Yeah.
You would say, for example, take two 40,000 square foot lots that had primaries, okay, that's 80, and then you've got 40 left, you could do two 20,000 square foot covenants, and you end up with just secondaries on those. That's how it's currently proposed.
That's a 40B without a 40B.
Kind of.
I mean, that's what it is.
Yeah, right.
Because it's not allowed under zoning.
Well...
I mean, I thought we were just modifying the, the secondary residential lot bylaw to allow two, two of them, or two secondary dwellings on these massive football field lots. That's what I thought you were doing.
It's drafted to go either way, because it can be reined in. If you want to say you like this idea, but you only want to allow additional affordable lots, that's one way to do it. If you like this idea, and you want to use it to say, okay, we will have a local version of a 40B that's, that's super, that's, you know, high-density affordable and, and low-density development, much, much lower than you would have under 40B, with 100% control, you could use this to do that.
Yeah, like a workforce housing bylaw adjustment.
All we do is, is complain around here, I'm trying to do something. I'm trying to say, okay, here's a, here's an option. If people want to have a 40B light, we could use it that way. If people want to just have more affordable, we could do it that way. We keep talking about it, we don't do it.
Yeah. Give me a sec, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'd just like to suggest for consideration, along the lines of reining this in a little bit, one would be, just to clarify, that this is for larger lots having more than two lots, instead of, just a technicality in the language when we get to it. The gist of it being that more than two lots, no more than five lots, two-thirds of the lots are subject to the Nantucket Housing Needs Covenant. And this is just for the purposes of discussion. The result of that change would be that there would be, if there were two lots, if there were, if there's two lots under the existing secondary lot option, one is a covenant. The result of the changes that I'm suggesting is that if they went to a three lot, two lots would be covenant. If they went to a four lot, three lots would be covenant. If they went to a five lot, which would be the maximum, subject to the underlying size requirements, four lots would be covenant. You go on a two-thirds basis versus a 50% basis. If you get up, up above six on a, on a very large lot, the numbers don't work anymore. So what that does is basically, by going to a two-thirds, you increase the number of covenants required under this allowance, and by limiting the number of lots, you also make it more palatable. Maybe it's a four lot maximum, I don't know, I'm just suggesting some, reining in some, some variable, adding some variables for discussion.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
So Stephen and I discussed this article before it came in, and it, you know, there wasn't time to draft a specific program. I can tell you that, I mean, overall, I'm nervous about this article.
Making more people...
I, we have, you know, again, our master plan talks about a town and a country area, and the town is where development was promoted, and that's where infill, that's where affordable housing was to go. And, you know, I've heard certainly discussion, oh, it should be dispersed all over. And, you know, and the country area was where it was supposed to be not encouraged, and, you know, the area was supposed to stay rural and, and other things here. I'm worried that a little bit that this is kind of, again, if it's not reined in, and I'm not a fan of overlay districts, even though, where's Tobias? Oh, I didn't say anything about yours. So I don't, I'm, I'm usually wanting to remove an overlay district if we're going to add another one in. But I don't think it, I think maybe the areas would need to be defined. It should not just be, I don't really think it should be applied island-wide if you were going to support it. I think the issue of the 40B, while it's certainly on everybody's mind, I think that we are close to at least getting a safe harbor for either two years or one year. We have, you know, we're on the verge of that right now. 40B can always be, you know, non-confrontational 40Bs can always be considered afterwards. And I know that there's been a specific property that's been discussed on this, and it, and again, there's some barriers to that, right, with the 40B rules and...
Yeah.
And other things. So, you know, I think, I don't think that we have something developed enough. Again, I, I'm not, you know, there's one acre zoning, and then there's the rest of the other zoning. And I, I don't want to start chipping away at that, again, without some real discussion and thought about our country overlay district, town overlay district concepts, so...
And I, I'm not trying to create a opportunity for overdevelopment. I'm trying to create an opportunity for affordable housing that we don't have the opportunity to create, and one of the only ways for it to be created, aside from the one-off situation, is, is 40Bs. Anybody who has got a big lot, they can either create one unit, or they can do a 40B. So it would be great if we could come up with a way, and I'm, you know, I'm not weighted to any concept... not weighted to any concept that I'm not, you know, if this dies, it dies. I don't have a lot that I'm going to go do this with. Trying to put options on the table that we could create affordable housing because we have a need for it. And we have all this land that we don't let people create affordable lots on.
Yeah.
And that's a shame.
Yeah. And, and, you know, I just thought about something. If I said to you, okay, forget the one acre, dump that, because that's what scared me when you saw the 40,000. That's a builder's acre. It's not even an acre.
Yeah.
But here's the thing, right? All the lug two to lug one, oh my God, the planning board is ruining the island again and all that. And so many, there's a lot of two acre zoning right now that we're sort of, it's not going to get changed with the current feelings of people, especially at town meeting. However, there's a lot of it where locals own that have families that can't build anything on this huge lot. But if they could build two covenants and say, Jim and Charlie get to have a house on the land that their parents had forever, but they can't subdivide it, we can't change the zoning, but we don't, maybe we don't have to change zoning. I'm looking at this as a way to not have all this zoning argument. All you're doing is adding a kitchen, one. I thought that's what you wanted to do, Steve. Sorry that I misunderstood the gobbledygook in this article. I thought you were just adding a kitchen.
Yeah.
Okay? Which I'm in favor of. In certain areas, like Andrew's saying, you can't do this in Parkamo. I'm not going to get into that. You know what I mean? We had an argument in here recently with the whole thing with the one covenant. We've done Tom Nevers recently and everybody thought there was a subdivision. There's not. It's just, nothing's happening except for some selling. That's it. So, but this could work in some spots. And it would also deflate all this fear of one acre and more and more and all that.
Yeah.
And have separate ownership. Because that's what we're talking about. That's what we just approved, gave a recommendation for the, for Steve's idea. That's what it's all about. Steve's idea would work with a lug two lot and one family. I mean, I'm just saying, there's a lot of good here. We just got to fix it. It's not ready for prime time at the moment.
And it wasn't drafted that way. It was drafted to start a discussion.
Yeah. And we should talk about it.
Which is why I did not offer.
Not every big lot is owned by a millionaire. How's that sound for a way to close the idea?
Certainly, the big lots are worth money, but not all those people are rich.
That's right.
It's getting late. I'd be happy if you voted to continue this to the next meeting. And I'll meet with the staff and see if they have recommendations on how to limit this so that it seems, you know, palatable and, and productive. And if it doesn't, you know, it's fine too.
Steve, not that I don't want to continue it, because I think you have a lot of good ideas and good merit, you know, going forward with two covenants and maybe incorporate it into a restricted family covenant. But I'm just worried that I really want to get this hammered out and maybe not push it for the next meeting. I'm almost thinking maybe if we're going to have a special meeting in October, that really, we can really discuss this instead of, you know, just trying to hit it for the next, next month, which is only a couple of weeks away.
Well, so that's, that's fine. That's fine if we don't.
Sure. Hold, hold on. Judith, hold on for one sec. Thank you.
Yeah, we don't, I guess I would ask you to continue it to the next meeting. And if we don't get there for this town meeting, then we don't get there for this town meeting. But I, you know, maybe. But, so I'd ask you to continue it to your next meeting with the idea that this is just starting a discussion. And maybe it's this April and maybe it's this October.
Judith, go ahead. Thank you.
I don't think that we could do this work that's needed on this by the next meeting. And I think we should be clear about that. I also think that there needs to be wider consultation with a lot of other folks beyond just the board. So I, I would, don't get to the, I think it should just not proceed at this point.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to add my two cents in here as well, too. I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. This is a good start.
It's all it's intended to be.
But I think between what Mr. Tudella said and what Andrew has said, those, those are some major concerns that come up about how does that, how's this all going to, on 40,000 square foot lots especially, how is this all going to translate out? How many market rate lots start to emerge out of the process? I'm a little worried about how that can start impacting 40,000 square foot and what kind of density would, would be associated coming out of that.
Yeah.
Do I love the idea of creating covenant lots? Yeah. But how do we get there? And I'm inclined to agree with Andrew is, I don't see this as necessarily an islandwide thing. But where it belongs, I think, needs a good, hard look to say, okay, we can identify target areas for this.
Sure.
That to me, and that level of analysis are going to take some time.
Yeah.
Just to kind of work that out. So I really do see this being more of a special town meeting, maybe next year's annual town. I don't know what's going to work out in that process.
Yeah.
I don't want to let it off the radar, but I feel like there's, there's just some real key areas that are going to involve some very intense scrutiny to kind of figure out, how does that really work out? So that would be my inclination. I'm kind of just keeping track. And I see a lot of things starting to ratchet into both the 30th, especially the 11th. And I think that, given the intensity of what you're going to, we're going to have to do for data collection and starting to hammer out what that means, I am more inclined to want to push this out a little further and do it the right way.
Sure. Wait. So in terms of the 40,000 square feet, that is only intended to be for scope purposes with the intent that it would be really applicable to larger lots. But are you saying, Barry, that you'd rather not see it at the April town meeting?
I'm probably saying I don't want to see it at the April town meeting. I, you know, because if you're talking 60,000, 80,000 now, if you're talking islandwide, that's a whole different thing about where it's all going and what does that mean for those areas? That's where I'm saying, I think, I think as a board, as one member of the board, I'd like to pull back and see, again, just look at it one more time and see what it really begins to look like.
Okay.
And how is it going to impact certain areas if you're up in LUG two, LUG three to make that happen? I'm not sure the country overlay district is going to be some of the better areas to do that in. But again, I'd prefer to be able to step back a little bit and take some honest to God time.
Sure. If the board decides that it wants to give a motion to table, that's fine.
Yeah.
But what I'd ask you to do now is just continue it to the February meeting. So give me a chance to talk to the staff and work on it a little bit. And if at the next meeting you say, it needs so much work, we want to wait till October, that's fine. But at least continue it to then now to look at it a little bit.
Okay.
But I'm not.
Okay.
Procedural question.
Yeah. Can, can you hold on for two seconds?
Sure.
Okay. Because we're, we're all sitting here. So Andrew Leslie, I'd really love to hear back from you about timetables here. Because that's really an important thing. I don't, this is not something to be wrong.
Right. And I, I mean, I guess, you know, we have some clear things that we have to do, you know, under, under the deadline for town meeting. And I mean, I appreciate it. And I do want to have an additional conversation and take a look at things.
Sure.
Again, if that starts interfering with your other more pressing issues, it just may be better to, you know, get that after we've sort of got our town meeting work done.
For fall, you say for, it's a fall or whatever.
It appears that there's going to be a, you know, an annual fall special.
Okay. No, I think it's important to hear from you. But go ahead.
Just a procedural question, because I, maybe I don't understand the process. But how do you make this go away until the next special town meeting?
Take no action.
So if the board makes a motion to take no action or to table it, it means the same thing. And then I could either get up at the town meeting and amend that and put this forward or let it go.
Yeah. And we could also put a comment, which we, which we do sometimes with these.
Yeah. Which I think in this particular instance would probably be a really good idea.
I actually like that idea of the comment. Because this isn't dead. Take no action sometimes means dead, but it is.
You have to open it.
It's just.
But if you think it needs more time and more for October, you know, I'm not, I'm not generally in favor of rushing things and if it can be done better.
Yeah.
Steve, this is good. Have Ann, talk to Ann. She's sitting over there. Talk to her about this. This is an interesting, I know you do. Let me say it. This is really good. Something that has to get discussed internally for a lot of different reasons. But like the lots that they just did out by the airport. I said it at the meeting. These are massive lots with three little houses. That's it.
I'm lucky.
You got to do more than that.
All right, gentlemen, can you bring it back to the chair? Because I feel like, because I really also have to get to the audience here as well, too. And I know you're passionate about it.
I am. This is a good idea.
And I appreciate the passion.
This needs a lot of work.
Thank you. So is there anyone in the audience wishing to comment on this? Mr. Collier?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I sort of see the direction the board is going in. But since I'm not going to be in front of you for the next time you discuss this, I'll say a couple of words now. My successor will deal with it. I absolutely want to echo what Andrew had said in regards to the master planning process and really the, the importance of setting up those town and country overlay districts, not just in terms of just some basic planning necessities, but in terms of environmental necessities with protection of open space, protection of water quality, the additional septic systems. It's clearly pointed out in the master plan that you want to encourage growth in the town areas, serviced by sewer, serviced by water, and have appropriate roads and bus routes and everything, all those other amenities. That also goes towards affordable housing. And this is where this conversation is going to start going, is that the growth control contingents and the affordable housing contingents are going to start talking more. But what I don't want is, is sort of some adversarial, not adversarial, some differences of opinions going forward in that all the growth control people say, no ands if or buts on affordable housing. And so what I'm going with, with, with Stevens is the additional of the market rate, that's, I mean, you're blowing zoning, zoning out of the water. So I hope that any sort of incentive of market rate for affordable would not be considered whatsoever. Now, if you're wanting to think about additional affordable housing beyond the covenant, beyond the secondary lot covenant, that's a pretty intense discussion for a lot of people out there that are concerned about the growth on the island, even though affordable housing is a very needed thing. So I am glad you want to step back and think about that. But it certainly isn't affordable housing at no cost. I mean, just go for it. Affordable housing, let's do it wherever we can. There's a lot of other repercussions. And I appreciate you guys wanting to step back and think about that. I had a couple other points, but I'll just, I'll just save them. I think I know where you guys are going. But I think it's really important to think about, about this. The secondary lot covenant works. And you know, I've supported it. I've actually tried to amend it, as Nat alluded to earlier in the meeting, to make it even more important. And I think that some of the changes that hopefully will happen will, will expand its, its, its buy-in as well that are going to happen at this town meeting. It works in Tom Nevers. I do want to say that. I bought a posted stamp lot in Tom Nevers and a local bought a 120,000 lot, lot that I border on. I bought because of that lug three zoning. It was a pre-existing lot that I had. But I bought because of that zoning and that lot of front, that I bought it. Now, they utilized the secondary law covenant, did 80,000 and 40,000. And the 40,000 lot got clear cut and is going to have a house on it. Fine. That's the way the law, law works. It's great. The primary is there, the tertiary is going to be on the 80, and the secondary is on the 40,000. But now you're talking about more and more and more. And I think it just, it's a conversation that really has to happen and, and, and start with the planners. I do appreciate the town process in terms of a citizen bringing this forward. But really, that's an intense, tense thing that has islandwide repercussions for all neighborhoods. And it's a difficult thing to come up and stand up and say, I'm okay with one affordable house, but I might not be okay with two affordable housing. That's a difficult thing to say in this climate. I'm not saying that, but it's just, there's going to be a time where if you're going to be pushing affordable, 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 those growth control people might come out of the wordwork and do damage to the importance of what affordable housing, of the affordable housing that has to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else in the audience wishing to comment on this? Yeah, go ahead, Tobias.
I just wanted to make a brief comment, which is that I appreciate the, the work that Mr. Cohen's done going into this, thinking about it, considering it. But I would just encourage people to think that it's not a crime to live with your parents. Like, I don't know what.
On the same lot.
Like, what's wrong with that? You know? Like, just, just remember that there's, there's a number of, of people across the world. There's actually billions of them. And it's really good for the culture, you know? They live with their grandparents. There's the younger kids. They take care of the babies. They're all in together. There's communal meals. It's like, it's a good thing. So just want to throw that out there.
Iowa Home Plan.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? All right. So what's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to close to the public.
All right. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have unanimously. And the pleasure of the board.
I'd like to make a motion to take no action on this.
Okay.
With a, with a comment from, from us on the wire, right?
Sure.
Right?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll drive the comments.
Because it's going to be on the wire. We just want to make sure it's not like thrown out the window. Okay.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Good addition.
Go ahead. So that motion's made second.
Sorry.
We're into discussion phase.
No, 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 no.
No, we're into discussion. Go ahead.
Before, I wanted to make sure it was second.
I second it. Sorry.
No, it was good. It was good. Yeah. So the comment, so what do we, we're going to?
The comment, comment back to you and then you vote on it.
Yeah. We have two minutes for them to, you know, do something professionally.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have unanimously. Thank you all. Okay. Next one is a bylaw amendment to reduce the minimum separation requirement contained within the definition of marijuana establishment, 2,000 to 500 square feet. Feet, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay. Me again.
My apologies.
No problem. On the, on the last one, I just want to thank you. I think that starting this conversation and approaching it, you know, in the right way, so that we don't have unintended consequences, is, is a good idea. I'm not pushing for, for, you know, bad stuff to happen. But affordable housing needs to get part of the conversation in a way where it actually is put into the zoning code so that we are doing it or not the way. On the minimum separation requirements, I think the planning board recalls that the way this came about was that originally the planning board, or the town did not have its own cannabis rules in place. And there was a placeholder suggested by town council that essentially came from another town that had just adopted some rules. And when you looked at them, you determined that the 2,000 square linear feet was too far in Nantucket and that 500 feet was, was fine. And you had made some other changes to that placeholder that was put in by town council. Those were adopted at town meeting, but there was essentially what I recall an anti-competitive amendment that was offered to go to the 2,000 feet. And oddly enough, at the same exact meeting, the limitation on distance for parks and playgrounds and places where kids are was eliminated, but the anti-competitive one was multiplied by four. And, you know, I think that that is, stands on its own. So right now, there's nothing, there's, there's no distance for the place where kids congregate. The state rule for schools and daycare centers is 500 feet, but the distance for another establishment is 2,000 feet. Because of the way we have zoned these facilities, you essentially have this old South Road corridor going roughly from the Rotary to the Coffin Pit or, you know, or the industrial park down by, behind the airport. So if you have a 2,000 foot rule, you could only essentially ever have two establishments because they draw such big circles. The select board has, where town meeting has adopted a rule that allows the select board to have as few as two licenses, although they could have more if they wanted to. It's not a limitation on two. It's that they can have as few as two. If they ever decided to go to three with this 2,000 foot rule, there would essentially be nowhere it could go because what we're going to end up with is one on Amelia Drive and one in the Coffin Pit. And nowhere else essentially qualifies unless you're out by, you know, where like Miles Race's pit is or something like that. So there's really no planning reason for the 2,000 foot. And I would ask you to go forward with the 500 foot rule, which is what you forward with the 500-foot rule, which is what you had originally recommended. And I would tell you that there's a companion article that I've also submitted that if you don't like this and you want to go with the other one instead, it's probably the next one. It just says that you can grant waivers to these prohibitions by special permit, which would give you the discretion instead of having this, you know, hard and fast bright line that's not necessarily making any sense. Because, like, when you have these distances measured from lot lines, it doesn't take into account if they're on the same street, if they're in the same neighborhood. You know, you could be on, you know, Fairgrounds Road and then 2,000 feet away, and there's no relationship with these places, but they're so far, but because you're drawing this line as the crow flies, you know, they're prohibited. It just doesn't make any sense to apply that kind of distance without having you have the discretion to decide, is this actually too close or not? You know, with the way the select board does alcohol licensing, they don't do it by linear feet measured by lot line. They look to see are there other liquor stores nearby that are actually in this neighborhood? So I'd ask you to either go with the rule for 500 feet, or if you don't feel comfortable with that, to go with the idea that it can be waived by special permit, which would actually make sense based on boots on the ground. Thank you.
All right. So board members, hopefully you're just taking these one at a time. All right. Any questions on this first one that you have before, or any comments you have?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, hold. Yes, Judith.
I would just say, I think this was resolved at the most recent town meeting, and I know, I'm not sure if anybody wants to find about whether it's timely to bring it back again, but it troubles me to be coming back to it after it's been recently addressed like that. That's just a comment.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on the board?
I would agree. You know, especially to give it a favorable, favorable recommendation for something, if we were to do that, that seems to me just to slap in the face of the voters who voted in favor of it the last meeting.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead.
I was just going to say, similarly to Judith, it seems like, you know, one of the issues that comes up is why people don't go to town meeting or take the time to go, or don't show up at the special town meeting. You know, from my experience, it gets very frustrating as a voter to vote for things or against things, and they just keep coming back in different renditions, and you keep voting against them. And it just seems like this is something that the voters at that town meeting voted in, the 2,000 feet, because we had recommended the 500, right? And I think someone even tried to make it 1,500 square.
A thousand.
1,000 or 1,500 feet.
I mean, you're talking about a very small number of people there that evening, but I get the point.
But that's all it takes.
Yeah, but, right.
I'm just saying, just reinforcing.
Here's the issue, though, everyone, and I just want to, this is going to come back by itself.
No, that's fine.
No, no, what I mean, what I mean is, what I mean by that is, we haven't sold any weed yet, okay? We've been talking about it for over two years. Everybody's been in favor of weed, voting in favor, but we voted against the 500 because it got all sensitive about whether it was, I can't remember what it was, recreation, something of the playground or whatever it was that caused that.
That one was eliminated.
Well, I'm just saying, so there's a lot of stuff that's going to flush out with this, and it'll end up being some kind of special permit because of the differences between what's really a school, what's really something that shouldn't have pot near it versus something that really isn't, but it fits the criteria to eliminate it. So I think that it will come back. I do agree with Judith and, you know, everyone else so far, that coming back with the same thing, but at the same time, the same people that voted it down are voting for marijuana. And some people in the back of that audience at that night said, they were getting angry that we hadn't done anything yet to make pot legal to sell, but at the same time, it looks like we're restricting it between the state, selectmen, and us. It looks like we're making it harder, but we're not. It just looks that way. So I'm fine with leaving this at 2,000 because I think it's going to fix itself eventually.
I'm hoping you're going to go to scope issue here.
Well, you know, Mr. Chairman, I don't disagree with some of the comments that were made, but I do think that the 2,000 feet, there's no magical number to that. That is a number that we used from another community, and yes, town meeting has voted on it, but I don't, you know, I'm part of a group now that has, that's reviewing these proposals, and the industrial area, you know, having this major retail location in the industrial area, I don't think that, you know, I think at some point we may need to revisit this in the future, but I don't know that that location makes the most amount of sense, and it's sort of driven now by that separation.
So taken good commercial land away.
Well, I think our overall plan in the industrial area was not to push retail in there. There's all kinds of retail that's not allowed in there. And I think the thought, at least, that I was thinking about when we originally talked about this was, that was more for areas to, you know, where the product would be grown as opposed to the retail. But I do see more marijuana discussions in our future since there's been approvals of cafes and other things that, at the state level, so. But I think on this particular article, I certainly, you know, think it's probably too early.
Hold on, Steve. Thank you. I know you guys are passionate, but come on. Go.
Although I actually agree with the 500 square feet, there have been a couple of points that I agree with from the board. I think when we vote against what the town has voted for, and being, whether it's in October and it's not well-attended, the town has spoken, 2,000 was given, we tried to amend it with 1,000, that didn't pass, I'm comfortable leaving it at 2,000 and leaving it as a citizen article and having you make your case again. But I want to, I don't want the town to make it appear that we're not listening to them and we're changing it and force-feeding it down them. I think it doesn't do, actually, wouldn't even do you a service to do that. I think you'd get more resentment against that.
I appreciate that, and based on the discussion, I get why the planning board would feel that way, and I'd be happy with a motion to table it with a comment saying that, you know, I don't think that that number is a magic number, but that you want to, you know, wait and see how it plays out, or some, you know, version of some comment that you work on with staff. I do think that what is quickly going to happen is that, as the law evolves at the state level, which is already, it's actually already authorized, and they're implementing more regulations, and people are going to want other uses that are allowed in other places that they actually want here, and they're going to discover, oh, we accidentally banned them because we've drawn these two circles of the Coffin Pit and Amelia Drive, and the entire corridor is now banned. We have no other place to do it. So this isn't really about one client or one person or whatever, it's that we have effectively blocked the entire zoning district through this rule. So, but if you want to put it off, that's probably fine.
Go ahead.
I'm just curious how everyone feels about the tabling idea. I didn't think of that. I mean, it's better than negative because it's not, it's not negative, it's just timing and, you know, flushing type of situation. I mean, Steve's right about it, it's just awkward to give a positive.
So, let me ask you a question. If this goes to, let's just say it went to a negative recommendation, there's nothing to preclude this from coming back in some other way, shape, or form as they're entered in the following year or so?
Well, there's, you know, it's subject to repetitive petition if it were to come back in the same exact form. It has to be, I think you all, I sent you some case law on that. You saw that.
Yeah, okay. I just, I want to be a little clear about that because I have to agree with Andrew. He's right. There's more things coming on the table as the Cannabis Control Commission starts to look at all the other uses that were envisioned from the very beginning. I think when we started this process a few years ago, with the first place here, I don't think people envisioned that it would turn to retail before it even opened. I think people saw it as strictly a medical facility, but here it is. These other things are going to be very real in the next year or so, and I think they're going to be issues that will come before this town. You know, craft cooperative, social environment, those types of things. So I think, I'm not sure the best way to deal with it, but I do think we need to be prepared for it. This, to me, is a little premature. Town meeting just acted on this, and I do feel like I'd like to run with this a bit further, but I don't want to slam the door shut either because you're right, things will begin to change. I think if you look at this from where we even are today, I'd love to go back 10 years from now and look back on this and see where it's all boiled itself back to.
The voters at town meeting want these uses and don't necessarily understand that by voting on one thing, precluded everything else.
Yep.
And if that means that we put it off and sort of do it more comprehensively so it's not really a discussion about, you know, one or two things, that's fine. I'm trying to clean up a problem here, not get into an issue of which, you know, operator.
May I make a suggestion? Yeah, Fritz, go ahead.
The repetitive rule doesn't apply if it's the planning board.
Correct.
Correct.
Right.
So if in fact, I would, my preference would be a negative recommendation because I think that's what we, that's what the voting public deserves because it's come up, it's been voted on and come back. Having said that, I'm not opposed, if we look at the issue in the following year and look at the maps and do everything we're supposed to do, and we as a board come up, come to the conclusion that, you know, probably 2,000 feet doesn't work, then I think it's incumbent upon us as a board to come back with something that works. And I'd be perfectly happy, under that set of circumstances, to stand up and explain to people at the town meeting why it is we're bringing something back up that they voted down before. But I don't think, I want to go to the town meeting this time with kind of no action and a comment, which we'd have to come up with, because my comment, my fear is that comment in the end is going to sound like we're in favor of it.
Yeah, and the other thing I proffer to that, too, a lot of these decisions about having other marijuana establishments here, plus the other additional uses that will be envisioned by the Cannabis Control Commission, won't come before us. They're going to have to be dealt with through the board or selectmen initially. They're the ones who are going to have to look at it and make decisions about what all those futures have in store, too. So I think that as they look at these things, they're also going to have to take a serious look at envisioning what this looks like as well, too.
And if circumstances change, and they may, and through the experience with the first one, then it's illegitimate to revisit the issue and look at it and say simply, the circumstances have changed, and we as a board think we ought to make our recommendation and actually, and take responsibility for it, not expect it to come up as a citizen's petition.
Do you have a question? Number one, I wouldn't give it a negative, but that being said, it doesn't mean the board wouldn't. I'm questioning whether, if we did get rid of a negative recommendation and it goes to the town and it's presented as a citizen article and then it gets defeated, then does it go back to the repetition rule if they wanted to bring it up another time, as opposed to the board tabling it for another future time? And giving it a clean slate?
I see your point.
He's saying if it gets called.
Right.
So, you know, so if it's voted down, I mean, it gets a negative vote at town meeting. And so if Steve isn't able to, you know, call it and convince people to vote otherwise, then yes, as a citizen, bringing that article back, you all would have to vote for to, you have a supermajority vote that you have to consider to bring the exact same article back. So otherwise...
As a citizen.
As a citizen.
But we could bring it back.
On your own.
On our own.
On your own sponsorship.
But to the point that Nat had made, things are going to evolve and change. We don't know. I wouldn't want to be held to even coming back to this because maybe the town will realize, hey, maybe we were a little rash in making it 500, or 2,000. Maybe we should have made it 1,000 or 500, and I just don't want to close the door on a future, you know, article coming back, even in the same, but the change of heart from the town.
So a motion to table is essentially a neutral motion that adopts nothing.
And that's where I'm trying to go towards, but I get what you're saying, Fritz, and I...
If you feel like we're not ready, I request that a motion to table, and a table doesn't necessarily bring it back next year. It essentially goes off and dies, but it doesn't have a negative impact.
True. Right. Anyone in the audience wishing to comment on this? No. All right. Hearing no comments from the audience. Pleasure of the board.
Can we have, just a question for staff. Can we have a comment with a negative? I mean, like, what's the difference? You can have a negative and have a comment. Well, no, you can have a comment.
I don't mean to laugh at you.
No, I mean, a comment to say why we're saying negative.
Yeah, of course.
Just like you would to take no action. I mean, the FinCom, is the FinCom going to have something on this, or is this just us? They're going to have something on their ass.
The FinCom usually takes, you know, considers what the planning board has recommended and then takes a motion to either support what the planning board has voted, or in rare instances, they've taken an alternative position.
Correct.
Like, two. So it's always a possibility. I think the one thing we just would want to, you know, I just want to look at the tabled motion to make sure I'm clear on it with town council.
Why don't we hold this till the 30th?
This could go to the 30th.
That doc, that doc, the doc is light.
Do we still have an answer?
No, I agree. Light on that, you know, and that'll give, better to get the answer. Okay. All right, so...
Motion to continue to the 30th.
What would be more appropriate is to continue till the 30th at this point. And do I hear a second to that?
Second.
Motion's made in second and for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it unanimously.
No.
Oh, okay, sorry. Thank you. Duly noted, four to one. Yep.
I'm going to request that you make the same motion on the next article with hopefully no discussion.
Well, it doesn't mean, yeah, but I still have to open it up, though.
Yeah.
So, next thing is the zoning bylaw amendment to add a provision to the definition of marijuana establishment. And if you're so good, I'm going to waive the rest of this in terms of reading it. Board members, any discussion on this issue?
Not now.
Nope. All right. And anyone from the public wishing to comment on this? That would be a no.
A motion to continue to the 30th.
Okay.
Second that.
Motion is made in second, is there discussion on that issue? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Thank you. That's a four to one vote.
Thank you, and my apologies to everyone sitting here all evening and watching at home, although I don't know why anyone would still be watching, but thank you.
You'd be surprised. All right. So, and that's exactly where we're going at this point, and I thank you for your patience. So the next thing is a zoning bylaw amendment to modify the existing standards applying to the residential swimming pools. If you're all fine, I'd like to request that I waive the reading of the rest of this. This is a citizen's petition article, and so... Sir?
Everybody is here for swimming pools?
Yes. Fritz McClure, and just to make it clear, obviously, I'm a member of the planning board, but I brought this up as a citizen's petition, and so what I'm going to say are my personal views and not necessarily my views, or not necessarily the views, obviously, of the board. You should have before you in a package the proposed amendment, and also, I did do a purpose of the changes and an explanation. Is that in the... And also, I did do a purpose of the changes and an explanation. Is that in the, was that in the packages as well? Just to make sure? No? No? It doesn't really make any difference. I mean, I'll, I'll go through it very briefly and I'm hoping I can make this fairly brief and perhaps what I'm going to say might make some of the people that, the, the public comments might abbreviate some of those. Very briefly, there are 800 pools, uh, close to 800 pools that were adopted by the end of last year. There is presently virtually no regulation of swimming pool, residential swimming pools. And I say that because from a zoning perspective, uh, there are, uh, in the VR district, uh, it's by special permit. It is by special permit in the Moorelands Management District, but in all other, I believe in all other districts, it's allowed by right. So, there isn't any zoning control. The Health Department has also not issued any regulations on the use of swimming pool, swimming pool water, or whatever. So, I think I'm correct in saying there's virtually no regulation of residential swimming pools. And there have been a number of issues and a number of people who have come to talk to me about some of those issues. The principal purpose of the article is really are two, and one is density. And I'm concerned about density in small lots, especially 5,000 square foot lots within the area, especially in the R1 district, which surrounds the old historic district. Anecdotally, there are a lot of people who think that there are certain areas close to town that are in the old historic district, and they're not. They're in the R1 district. So, I'll get questions like, why, why can they, how can they build a swimming pool there because it's in the old historic district? And the simple answer is, well, you might, you might have thought it was, but it, but it isn't. So, it's the issue of density, uh, on, especially in the smaller lots. The second issue of concern is what I will refer to as the nuisance. So, yes, everybody, uh, swimming pools, kids use them. But when they're put in proximity with a neighbor, especially on a small lot where there may be a five-foot side lot requirement, that means the pool can be 10 foot, 10 feet from your house. And in that particular set of circumstances, noise, uh, even though there's a noise ordinance, especially if it might be not children, but rentals and adults who are partying late at night, that becomes a nuisance, and I think there has to be some, uh, regard for the people who are living next door potentially to swimming pools that are being built on small lots. So, those are the two main issues that I think that were driving this. The proposed amendment does, really does seven things, and I'm just going to break them down for you because we're going to talk, I'm going to talk about them briefly. Number one, it includes the pool and then ground cover per purposes of coverage ratio, which affects all districts regardless of whether they're small or large. The second thing it does would be includes a five-foot perimeter around the pool in the definition of what the structure is so that the setbacks would apply to the pool and the five-foot perimeter. The, it sets a standard of side and rear yard setbacks of 20 feet in all districts that, uh, anecdotally, um, when the, uh, bylaw was amended a couple of years ago to deal with the concerns of the Matikit residents, the 20-foot setback requirement was put in the bylaw at that time with respect to that particular district. So, what I was proposing is simply expand, taking that 20, 20-foot setback and applying it to all districts. Obviously, uh, that could be, can be an issue in a small lot, and I'll get to that in a minute. The fourth part of it would be, uh, did provide for a special permit for, uh, 20,000 square foot lots, R20 lots, SR20 lots. The, it also can include some, uh, guidance to the zoning board in terms of what they can do or not do when granting a special permit, the things that they, that, making it clear that they can provide restrictions or limitations or other, uh, rules with, or not rules, but other, uh, things that the lot has to, or the owner has to abide by in terms of maybe citing and whatever. That would apply, um, the special permit procedure applies, as I say, now in the VR district and MMD district, but it would apply that to all districts. The six, the, number six, it would prohibit pools in the, uh, MMD, which is Moorelands Management District. To me, that's a no-brainer. There is one pool, as I understand it, in the Moorelands Management District. But personally, I just don't think a swimming pool, uh, should be built in the Moorelands Management District. And finally, prohibits pools, um, as presently drafted, prohibits pools, uh, altogether in lots or districts 10,000 square feet or below, which is basically your R1 district and, and R10 district, basically. So, that's what it does. What I'd like to try to do to, and I know there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of concern. I went to the Finance Committee, uh, public hearing. There were numerous people who spoke opposed to it. I understand a lot of their comments. So, what I would like to do at this point, and I've circulated it to the members of the board, is I would propose, in whatever manage, manner we can do it, to amend the, or change the article. And I'd change it in the following ways. First of all, we exclude the limitation, the inclusion ground cover. Second, we'd exclude the five-foot perimeter provision. Third, we'd exclude the 20-foot setback requirement as it applies to additional, I, I should say, other than what it already applies to. So, I, I would not, by saying we're eliminating the 20-foot setback, I'm not going to, I'm not proposing that we take it away from the Village Residential for Matikit, which has already been decided and voted upon. Third, the special permit for the 20,000 square foot, uh, R20, SR20, I would propose to eliminate that. So, what we're basically, what it would come down to in terms, and I've given the, the board the revised language, it would basically come down to three limitations. First, it would prohibit pools in the Moorelands Management District. Like I say, there's one pool there today. I don't, and that certainly is not going to affect a lot of people. Would prohibit pools in the, I'm sorry, would, um, provide that pools in the R1 district would be granted by special permit only. And finally, which, so it would follow the same procedure in R1, all of R1, that you have for the Village Residential for Matikit, basically the same rules. What we would keep is the sentence or language which says that in the case of a special permit, which now mean, would now mean in addition to Village Residential of the R1 district, it would have some specific language, uh, addressed really to the zoning board because it would be the zoning board that's granting the special permit. That basically says they, makes it clear that they have the right to limit, uh, make additional restrictions or limitations within the R1 district in granting a special permit. So, that could for instance be, they could say five feet is too close to, or five feet on the right side of this property is too close to your neighbor. We think, we want you to have, cite this pool farther away. But it would be at the discretion of the zoning board. It wouldn't be arbitrary. So, that's the end of my proposal, and I would ask, I'm obviously here to ask for the planning board to consider a favorable recommendation, but I'm asking for a favorable recommendation on the language and the, the items that I basically put before you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Board members, any discussion at this point?
Okay. Comments from staff?
Ms. Chairman, I think, you know, one of the, the most important changes that was made was related to the ground cover and that, and Fritz and I had a discussion about that, so I think that, that was something that, again, was, was somewhat inconsistent in, in how the existing bylaw is structured. So, I think that removing that has had a big impact. So, what is left, the board, if the planning board can get behind making a recommendation, you would recommend his amended article here, which is within the scope because it's a subset, again, of the original article that was submitted. So, um, just so the board's clear on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. All right, anything from the boards?
You need a few minutes with this. All right, so let me do this. Yeah, Holly, can you do me a favor though? Do you have like a zoning map on standby for the entire row? So, if we need to go to certain areas, we can do it. Just, just as long as you have it in the wings.
Okay.
Cool. Yeah, go ahead.
Just one other thing, and this is intended to, I'm assuming it's intended to go to SR1 too? Wisconsin?
Yes.
One?
Yeah.
All right.
So, and, and it, I just wanted to be clear that was the intent because the amendments will bring it to SR1 as well.
So, I really should say R1, SR1?
No, it's, it's fine the way it is, but I just wanted to make sure that was the intent, so.
Yeah.
The, the, the column in the chart, for example, is both R1 and SR1.
Okay.
So- I just want to make sure that, that's, that's understood by people and what that means.
I'm answering a question while she's pulling that up. Is it a technical question?
Yeah.
So, as you probably know, when an warrant, citizen's article is filed, it then creates the inability to get building permits based on that language. And I'm wondering through staff if your motion would create any relief for that issue? Or if we're sort of still stuck with it? I don't, I don't think so, but I didn't know if you had any.
I, I don't think so because it's, the original scope is what could still potentially be voted.
Yeah.
Exactly.
That's what I figured, but I didn't know if the motion had any legal standing. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so let me open it up to the audience at this point as people are digesting, so, go ahead, Linda.
This had to have been one of the most irresponsible warrant articles I have ever seen in the 36 years I've been involved with zoning. It created chaos. I think they had over 80 pool applications come in down to the Board of Health that most of them had no intention of ever putting in for a pool at this time. The same craziness happened when we tried to put the building cap in. When they first put it in, it was successful at passing. They had 200 and some odd, I think it was 235 or some ridiculous amount of building coming in. The people had no intention of doing that at that time. That's why it did not pass again the second time. But this was irresponsible because what has happened is it's caused craziness again. And it threw potentially probably 80 to 90% of the pool owners into non-conformity, which is actually diametrically opposed to what Chapter 48 at the state that created zoning intended. You don't ever put in warrant articles that deliberately put all these people with pools into non-conformity. So, what has happened right now, because I had several clients that got stuck with this. I fortunately got two out of HOC that day last week. What it's done is it's stopped all construction between now and April Fool's Day, affittingly on this warrant article, which is the first day of town meeting. So, everybody's stuck. I had a client who has had a pool for a long time. He's having another child. He needed to build another bedroom next to his first floor bedroom, master bedroom. And I barely got him out of there, and he wasn't even doing a pool. But because the pool then was counted for ground cover and we're stuck with that for four months, I had to push and push and push to get him approved just for a stupid 10 by 10 addition. This is chaos, and it's irresponsible for anybody involved with zoning to put this kind of warrant article in here. So, I'm also having a problem. R10 is out of the equation now, correct?
That's correct, as far as I understand and I see. Yes.
Because that was in the original. And R10 happens to be where a tremendous amount of, super majority of the island's year-round population lives in the mid-island. So, they were being excluded from pools while somebody out in Pulpus can have a pool because they got plenty of land. That was targeting. This was a, a backdoor attempt at trying to control growth, and I object to that, and I object to the use of the town warrant for that purpose, attacking all these people. I'm having a problem with the R1 because we're trying, as you know, over the years, it's part of the master plan, to get rid of R1 districts in favor of R5s and a few other of these zones. And taking some commercial out and putting it into R5 where it's appropriate. What's going to happen? R1's going away. So, that should be looked into. The VR already has some of these things. But I'm also having a problem with what was just turned in. Words such as must are generally not found in the zoning bylaw. So, I'm having a problem with the number one. It says the lot must meet or exceed the minimum. What does that mean? What are the findings? Generally speaking, there are two findings in the zoning bylaw relative to special permits. One is if you're pre-existing non-conforming, there's a whole litany of things you got to meet, which don't apply to this at all. The second one is, it's in general, it's in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw. Is that the finding? I see no findings here. I see the special permit shall be subject to, instead of the special permit may be subject to. It's not must, it's may, because the discretion of the zoning board is to come up with, do you need conditions or are you okay the way you are? That's how it works. That's how the zoning board normally decides things. And it says if any necessary to minimize a potential nuisance. Nuisance. Whose opinion is a nuisance? Whose opinion is that the light in the pool is bothering you if the light doesn't scatter beyond the property lines? And we do have a dark skies bylaw here. So, what exactly are the standards? Whose opinion are we talking about? Where is it listed that these things have to get qualified for a special permit based on what? Air? My opinion? Your opinion? Fritz's opinion? The ZBA's opinion? What? That's not how the zoning bylaw works either. It's usually a little bit more descriptive and a little bit more directional than this. So, I'm opposed to what he just put in. I was opposed to the original article and the chaos irresponsibly created. I would ask you to vote against the whole thing.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to comment on this? Mr. Cohen?
So, I, I think that Mr. McClure has addressed a number of the situations that were highly problematic. The additional setbacks, the ground cover issue. I wish we had, weren't in the situation where we have this essentially four-month ban on construction on 800 lots that are affected by it, or actually thousands of lots that are affected by it, but there's, there's no way you can get over that now. In terms of whether or not there's a special permit required in the R1 district, that, you know, I don't know if I really care. You know, I was really concerned with all of the other things. The R1 district maybe, may or may not be a place where a special permit would be needed. I would say that the language about characterizing some, you know, about the special permit, the board restricting things that are considered a nuisance is somewhat unnecessary and redundant. The, the special permit itself allows the board, the zoning board, to put conditions in. You don't have to say it twice. And I, I think we should be really careful about, um, characterizing things as a nuisance. You know, pools don't actually create noise. People create, create noise. You know, pool equipment, maybe. But I think, I think that, that language is both unnecessary and, and a little negative suggested about, about, you know, residential activity. If the, if the zoning board looks at it and says, we don't want it in that location, and we want you to put in screening, and we want you to put in the lighting this way and whatever, that, that sentence isn't necessary for that. So, the, just the creation of the special permit does that all by itself. And I do think Linda makes a good point about the R1- And I do think Lynda makes a good point about the R1 district being something that the board is working on anyway. So if the intent essentially is to make special permits required in a greater area than the ROH or the CDT, you know, the board may want to consider that, but I don't know if going through the entire R1 district or attaching it to just that zoning is the right way to do it. But this is tremendously better than before because the stuff that's been cut was really, really bad. And I applaud Mr. McClure for reining in some of that. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Reed.
Thank you again, Arthur Reed. I, like Mr. Cohen, I'm sure, and all the other lawyers on Nantucket have been receiving a great number of calls from property owners who are our clients regarding the issue of this warrant article and the consequences of it. And I have to say that it has indeed had the unintended consequence of bringing an awful lot of people out of the woodwork to start the process of getting a pool and, in fact, in many cases, getting the pool permit in place before the publication of the first public notice of the hearing on this matter, and many of whom, in fact, had no intention of putting in a pool. But it's G. If we don't get it, if we don't go forward with it now, we may never. And therefore, they're going forward. Some of them may not proceed with it if they realize that the results are not as cataclysmic as they thought it was going to be, but others probably will. But be that as it may, there's no question that the changes that Fritz has made in the article are a vast improvement in terms of the way this will work for property owners in Nantucket. So as I understand it, and again, I haven't seen the language, my understanding would be that, again, except for Morelands Management, where it would be prohibited, VR would have the same provision that it does now on the 20 feet. R1 would in all cases require a special permit and other districts, including R5, would not require a special permit. Just trying to clarify all of that. But do I understand that it would still require that all lots to, in order to be able to have a pool, would have to have at least the minimum lot area for that district? Or is that, or is that only with regard to R1?
Let me go back to Mr. McClure.
That was only, Arthur, as I understand it, that's the existing language that was approved for Village Residential VR. And that hasn't changed, and I did not put that provision in with respect to R1.
Okay.
Or any other district. I simply left that language the way it was.
Right. Okay.
There's no reason to change it. And with respect to the question of R1 versus R5, I was basically looking at the zoning map in terms of what is currently listed as R1 on the zoning map, which is basically an area that curves around the old historic district, maybe close to town. I didn't actually see that many areas which were actually designated as R5. So...
In any event, obviously, this, these changes are very positive, I think, in terms of the reception that the article will have. And I thank Mr. McClure for making them. I would think that we could certainly live with the concept of a special permit in R1. I'm not quite so sure that I'm 100% on board with the absolute prohibition in Morelands We're dealing with very large lots there. The lots that would be affected by it are not much different from lots that have been developed in Log 2 or Log 3. They pre-exist zoning, although there's the whole point of conservation in Morelands Management. The fact is that these lots are already disturbed, to some extent, by the fact that they've been built upon. I don't think there are any significant number of unbuilt, buildable lots in Morelands Management because it all got built out during the freeze periods involving the subdivisions out there. I have some concern about that point. But in general, I think this is a, you know, a positive amendment. And again, I think Mr. McClure should be commended for bringing it in that fashion to the board tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment on it? Steve?
Could you just clarify on the map what, where R1 is?
Yeah. That's kind of why I want to start that process.
The intent was that it was really the 5,000-square-foot lots, so whether, you know, and most of them are, well, staff can explain.
Those are the tan, right.
Back there it's white. Up here it's tan.
So it's...
I believe we still have a lot of R1 zoning still out in Wauwunnet, don't we?
Yes, we do.
And those lots, in many cases, are pretty big.
There's still a subdivision out there recently.
Do you want me to do anything? Or Holly? Do you want to just point that out or like?
Yeah. Could you, Holly?
Orient the board.
Do you have a red pointer?
I do.
Oh, you got it.
Yeah. That way I know it's in good hands.
To help my guys.
All right. All right. Hold on.
So, Ms. Chairman, so you have Easton and Hubbard Avenue. So essentially, you have this area of Brant Point.
Right.
You have the area around Lincoln Circle here. Delaney, Derrymore, all that in there. Gingy Lane. Westchester. Woodbury. This goes down to the New, on the backside of New Lane, down to Mill. There's a cluster here. Near the Mill.
We're talking about requiring a special permit for the, where you're pointing out, right?
Yes. There's this cluster here, Atlantic Williams Bear. There is a group here off of Hooper Farm Road, First, Second Way. And then there is another group here on Vesper Lane. And then if, Holly, could you go?
Okay. Excuse me. Thank, thank you.
Could we go to Wauwunnet, Wisconsin? So...
She's zooming it in. That's wrong.
So there has been LUG1 on the edges, implemented on the edges, but you can see that central area there. And then if we could go to Wisconsin, Holly? So Codfish Park down here, and that's northern and out to, what's her name? Okay. Right. So Sunset Ridge, and then there's a small group there. The, it's worth noting that the area in blue, which is Wisconsin Old Historic, doesn't allow pools now.
Sir Chairman, could I make a comment?
Uh, sure.
So just looking at the area that's proposed, it looks like that there are, there's a lot of volume there that is really outside of the historic district and also has a ton of pools already and is an area where pools are popular. So I wonder if it might make sense, and so when we have an area where you're going to get a pool essentially no matter what, but what you're doing is adding 90 days and $5,000 of cost to someone to go to the zoning board, you know, that's not necessarily good public policy. And we might want to think about, instead of a special permit in the R1 district, putting in additional rules for screening or sound mitigation or whatever. And I'm not proposing any of those. I'm just saying that a special permit might not be the only or best way to do it. And frankly, that is probably also a good idea for the Morelands Management District, where you've got 10-acre lots where you're not bothering anybody, or you've got lots that are already developed. So, you know, looking at the R1 district and looking at the Morelands Management District as an area where pools should be regulated, might be a good idea, but a special permit may not be the best tool. So I, that's my recommendation, that this is a really good start and a, you know, potentially a conversation that should continue.
I mean, I would actually disagree with Mr. Cohen. I'd rather see a special permit process than any kind of specific rules that would be rigid with regard to the protection of the immediate area and the areas where there will be a special permit process or other provisions of R1.
Okay. Great. Anyone else wishing? Hold on. There's people behind you still. Go ahead, Bob. Come to the microphone and identify yourself. Thank you.
Either Andrew or Arthur or Steve. This morphed its way into a much simpler proposal, and I think you responded, but I didn't get it. How easily is it morphed back to its original form at town meeting? That's my concern.
I'm sorry. What the question again was?
How easily is it morphed back toward its original form at town meeting?
I would probably say that, given the original scope of the article, you could open up every district and then start cutting out things from there, even with this language, correct, Andrew?
Well, if the, you know, any article that's submitted, and this is why the regulation stays in place, is, you know, any town meeting member could say, I have an amendment to make on this article and I move the original motion as submitted.
Right.
So that, that's a possibility. So if, if the planning board gives it a positive recommendation, it requires somebody to call that article at the beginning of town meeting to do that.
Okay. So I guess part of my question is that if you give it, the amended version, a positive recommendation, the public is going to show up seeing your blessing as a blessing for it, and then it can morph from there. So I'm just thinking that I didn't hear a lot of support over the past couple of weeks of the board for this article as originally proposed. And that was very reassuring to many people in our community that maybe we want to continue that drift of caution because if you vote in support, I mean, I come to town meeting and I look to your advice. That's kind of my point.
If I may, I think the point on that...
Mr. Reed, can you hang on for a minute? I really appreciate it, but we've got other people who have wanted to have a turn at the microphone, so I saw a few more hands raised. Please.
My name's Frank Daly. It's Frank Daly. I want to follow up with Bob if I could because there's a lot of uncertainty here and it starts with the way that the language is originally written. And there was kind of a canary thrown down the coal mine and that sucker never came back. So wisely, he changed the language very quickly to make it very palpable. And everyone kind of oohed and aahed when we heard this new proposal. But then kind of backdoor is that the original proposal can still come up, right? We're clear on that, that we could go with this new language that sounds great and on the floor of the town meeting, it can all revert back. The public hears you guys say, yes, we like this. It changes. And we're in upheaval again, right? I just want to, I really want to clarify this for my own benefit as well as yours.
And can I address that question? You can address it, and then I have a follow-up comment to it, so please.
The point that I would make is, first of all, for it to pass requires two-thirds vote. If it got to the point, I guess, the way democracy works, and I'm, I'm happy with the changed amendment, but think about it. If you go to the town meeting and two-thirds of the people there decide that it should be the way it was originally, then that's the way it ought to be, from my point of view. You say it would be unfair or whatever, but is it unfair if two-thirds of the people who are there decide they want something different?
Underhanded is more the way I would clarify that.
Why do you say underhanded?
All right. Gentlemen?
I'm sorry. I'm not, I'm not, I don't want to be argumentative. I'm just trying to make a point. It does require two-thirds vote.
I'm sorry. I'm just a person in the trades. I'm just trying to figure this out because my life's been, you know, upturned. And it's not just me on my business side, but also as a landholder here on the island, this proposal has made me question, do I put a pool in or do I have a secondary dwelling that, for my kids?
That's right.
You know, so it's not just trying to make money. It's me making plans, you know, I have four daughters. So I've had to actually think like, okay, how do I plan for their future? So there's a lot of moving pieces here. This language changed everything very, very quickly. And with so much uncertainty, we're looking at the map, we're realizing there's all of these places where the pools already are, they're nonconforming, but wait, no, now we're going to do a special permit. I would really strongly suggest that we put a lot of time and air under this, that you give a negative recommendation, we take at least a year, because look at all the districts we're talking about. How many, do we know how many properties were affected by this moratorium? What I heard was between 800 and 1,000. I don't know. I don't know if any of us know. But maybe we should figure that out. Maybe we should take the time to see, how does this impact the entire island and estate planning and our businesses? And not even to get into like the real estate market, but this touches literally every single person on this island. And with a couple quick turn of words, a little bit of spin to make it go down, I don't think there's enough sugar to put on this poison pill. I think we really got to give it the time, and I strongly suggest that you say no and give a negative recommendation.
Great. Just one thing I will tell you, at least with my peers in the past, was that whenever there was a citizens' warrant article that came forward, and I was probably the most vocal of everyone on that, was I always thought it was important that the sponsor showed up at town meeting, that just because planning board said they gave a positive recommendation to it didn't mean it was totally blessed at times. Sometimes it was brought to town meeting just so the dialogue could take place or as a courtesy to the applicant to allow it to come forward. But did that necessarily mean the planning board was going to carry water for the article? Au contraire. A lot of that had to still fall back, and I felt very strongly about that, that it was up to the citizen who did it to make the pitch for it at this point. And my experience was at times when the citizen didn't show up, these things failed because I think it's important to hear from that person one way or another. So I just want you to take a little bit of stock in that as well, too. But there's another point that you've brought up, and I am going to, I promise I'm going to come back to it, but I would love to hear from the public a little bit more.
Okay.
Steve, hold on for a second. I know you've had a turn. Is there anyone else who wanted to, sir? Hi.
Here, Mr. Husky. I'm a builder, like most of the other people in here. And to reiterate what Mr. Cohen and Mr. Reed said, I think a lot of the amendments that were proposed tonight were kind of the big items that people were concerned about. That said, you know, the articles kind of become muddied as Frank pointed to. And Mr. McClure may be right. There may be some zoning or regulations that the town does need to put in place for pools. However, I don't think, I think many of the ones that were proposed in the original article were wrong, flat out. And I think changing it now very late in the game, it's kind of like it's not properly thought out. And I think that it would probably be best if Mr. McClure did want to have success. success, to go right back to zero and start on the drawing board again, and put some, you know, thought into exactly how the town is broken down. There are so many zoning areas that the town is in the process of trying to change, and has been doing for years. And I think the professionals alluded to this evening, that R1 is actually a zone that the town is trying to eliminate, if I heard correctly. So how can we make a law, it's like your cannabis situation, why would we be jumping in to make zoning regulations when we don't have all the facts of how that zoning area is going to shape out in the next five or 10 years? And so that's all I wanted to say, thank you very much.
Great. Was there anyone else? Hang on, I'm just going to all the people who haven't heard from it all first. Hi, come on down.
Leslie Forbes and I live in Maticet. Maticet is largely encompassed by the VR zone, so you have people who have experienced this as a special permit. You can look to Maticet to see how things go. Let us be the test case. So, April 2017, the zoning changes were put in VR. It was initiated by Maticet residents, the people who live there, who will be living next to the pools for as long as they own their house. This was not initiated by people who are building pools, people who are designing pools, people who are selling real estate with pools. It was the people who are, live next to pools. The process, once it was put in place, ended up being very confusing and difficult for pool designers, for pool of butters, and for the ZBA. There was not enough guidance. You had pool of butters coming in with all kinds of ideas about, they basically didn't want a pool, and so don't do this. I mean, they didn't stick to the knitting, so to speak. You had pool designers who were completely blindsided, they had no idea, they could get the 20,000 square feet and the 20-foot square setback, but they had no idea the types of conditions that the ZBA could be asking for if a butters brought them up under the lighting codes or the noise codes or the site plan review. And you had the ZBA sort of going, what's the guidance here? So I think the permit process will work better, has worked better. We've come down this road already, further, but I think if you put this in place with some more guidelines as to what, I mean, nuisance is a rather generous word, but we do have some town codes for lighting and noise, and the Maticet people were very concerned about pool discharge, it is chemically treated water. Sometimes it gets taken away in a water truck and deposited at the Surfside Waste Water Treatment Plan. Sometimes it just gets let go onto the land around the pool. And neighbors are concerned about their wells. Conservationists are concerned about the wetlands. So there are some things you could, and indeed, there was one pool permitted with some conditions on it about chemically treated water. The Board of Health has been talking about this, but has not taken any action that I know of. So, I mean, think how much better it would be if you could put this special permit in place with some guidance, so that pool designers, before they went to all the effort of designing a pool and presenting it to a client, that they looked at what the types of requirements were going, or types of conditions and town code that applies to pools, it would be great. Currently, this bylaw is completely silent on noise, water pollution, the bylaw itself. So if you could put something in the bylaw itself about, before people come to the special permit process, that they've thought through these things, it would be a lot less difficult. And it really, I mean, I went to all those hearings, and they were painful for all of us. But we did end up with pools being permitted with conditions. The ZBA worked pretty hard on this. So I guess I would say, I would support this bylaw, the amended bylaw amendment for the R1 district with, and I would advise that some additional guidance be put in for, on the amendment, so that pool designers, pool of butters, and the ZBA all are playing from the same deck. Would make life, I mean, let's get this ahead of the problem, instead of waiting until everybody spent all their money and all their time and gotten all their hopes up and presented it, only to have conflict. So that's, and you, in Maticet, we're moving down that road. We really are, and as you can, a special permit can work, I just would ask for something that had additional guidance in it for all three parties. Thank you.
Thank you. Annie, what, sir? Hi.
Good evening, Jonathan Raith. First of all, thank you, the board members, for being here so late tonight, I know it's been a long evening, so. I'm a builder, I've been here about nearly 40 years, and I first would like to second all those tonight have spoken in opposition of this petition. I think that I don't really need to repeat anything that anybody, that all those others before me said, but one thing that, you know, I'm, I'm literally right in the crossfires of this exact situation right now. We have a project, great project, was going to break ground in April. We shuffled, as Linda said, I think it's created mayhem across the board in many of the departments in town, and now the client, the client really doesn't know which way to go, because previous, they had by right to put the pool in. And now it's up to, okay, we filed, we got the pool, we got the pool permit, but now we can't do the guesthouse. And this isn't a gigantic project, this is a nicely scaled project, log two, very private, the pool, nothing from the pool will affect any neighbors. Secondly, I think that we're talking about trying to put limitations or restrictions on a pool, and people can still have pools by repositioning or sizing the buildings or whatever have you, you still end up with a pool to some degree, quite possibly. So it doesn't eliminate the pool. Let me just grab my notes, I'm sorry. Let's see. The other thing I think would be, you know, I don't know all the, how all these regulations work, but when someone's so entrenched in a project at this, at this stage like we were, and next thing you know, this petition gets dropped into place, there's really like, it'd be great if there was a grace period for something like this for people, that they could react to it, as opposed to the way so many people did react to it. They stormed the building department, they stormed the health department, and, you know, some people got through, some others didn't. And I guess in closing, this is probably, this is a stretch, but, you know, pool, not everybody puts, everybody puts a pool in because they want to go, you know, have a pool party. Some people put it in because it's beautiful to look at. Some people, you know, they don't put in a pool, but maybe they put in a huge playground for their kids as they're growing up, or a large sandbox. So I don't really, I think, I just look at the pool as an accessory to a property that probably in a lot of cases doesn't cause a lot of noise, it's just a beautiful thing to have on your property by right. And I think it should remain that way. I would ask that the planning board vote negatively on this, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who hasn't spoken at this point? Hang on. Mr. Callahan? Go ahead.
I won't reiterate what everyone else is saying, but I'd ask you to vote negatively on this, too. I feel like I'm at the HDC and somebody went in, they wanted three skylights on the front of their house, and they said, "Oh, I'll ask for one tonight on the revision." And here we go. I took out all this, but now I'm going to pinpoint that one, which was R1 zoning. I own a house in the R1 zoning, I have a pool, now I'm going to be in non-compliance. To me, and my pool doesn't bother anybody. And it just makes no sense that we've come down to this. Obviously, the article, I believe, was ill-conceived, and because it's changed so radically. Perhaps if the applicant had done a little more research before submitting the article, we wouldn't be where we are today. And I would urge you to vote no, I think it's a big infringement on property rights. And I look at Cliff Road and the R1 zoning, that's a disaster to include that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hold on. All right, so I got a bunch of you now who have all had an, who've all been up, so I'm going to ask you to start now, limiting your comments briefly.
Very briefly, Mr. Chairman, thinking back to the two times we've amended, regulated pools, there was a substantial amount of community research done in both occasions. When the ROH ban was put into place, the planning board did a survey of everyone in R1 to find out if that was what was wanted in that community. The Maticet special permit for VR was citizen-initiated, but remarkably popular in that area. I think before we say, "Let's ban it in," or "require a special permit for R1," or "ban it in MMD," that the planning board could put this off until the fall town meeting, the annual special, and give the courtesy of finding out what the people in those neighborhoods want. And if R1 or MMD comes back and says, "Yes, we want to ban, yes, we want a special permit," whatever, it'll give us a little time to look at how to regulate it there or whether to regulate it there. So I think that model has worked well twice, and I recommend it here.
Steve Rothke, and the luxury of going right after Stephen Cohen, who just basically made the point I wanted to make, which was that I think that we should talk to people in R1 before we start making decisions for people in R1. I don't like this article, I didn't ever like it, I still don't like it tonight, I don't like the way we got to this point about talking about R1 instead of the original article, but I'm, it shows progress, so I'm happy for where we've gotten to, but I don't think that it's appropriate to pare this down to R1 and pick on that district without talking to the people that live there, the taxpayers, the people that actually vote for our elected officials. So I would encourage the board, I would ask the board to make a negative recommendation for this article, and to put it out for the same kind of study that we did for the ROH and SOHD districts when we banned pools there. Thank you.
Hold on for a sec.
Yes, I simply want to help clarify for the benefit of some of the people who are here tonight, how this point, how this all works. There's nothing that the planning board can do, and nothing that the sponsor of the article, Mr. McClure, can do to keep the article from coming before town meeting in its original form. The, any action that's within the scope of the original article can be taken at town meeting. It's in the warrant. The warrant, the term warrant is derived from the word warn. The warrant warns the inhabitants who can go to town meeting that some action may take in, may be taken, whether it's on zoning or anything else. Be fully warned that this is before the town, and it might be voted, whether you like it or not. And therefore, if you don't like it, you better show up at town meeting. And I would strongly urge the people who are concerned about this, whatever their concern is, one way or the other, to show up at town meeting, because an awful lot of decisions that are of great importance to a lot of people can be made by a relatively small portion of the electorate, who happens to show up at town meeting any particular night. So, and as far, I agree with Leslie Forbes' point that in dealing with a special permit, it's very much advisable to have some standards for the special permit authority to, granting authority to be able to go by. There weren't actually any standards, I don't believe, in this article as submitted, and as such, I think it might be outside the scope of the article to add any in now, which might be a good reason to bring the matter back later, rather than at this town meeting, with language in there that would provide for the, for the standards, so that it wouldn't be just a matter of whether it's in general harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw. But in any event, that's the way it works, and nothing can change the fact that it can come before town meeting in its original form and come and make sure that your voice is heard.
All right, I got two more people, I just want to say, Mr. Reed, true words were never said.
I feel like I'm in a bait and switch, bad movie. I grew up on Lincoln Circle and Cliff Road. And there are probably two people who live on Brandt Point year-round that I can think of offhand. I'm concerned that a majority of the R1 districts, which are pretty much north of Maine, up on Cliff Road, Lincoln Circle, Brandt Point, have no voice here. They can't vote here, they rely on us, the contractors, their agents, whatever representative they have here, to watch out for their interests. They can't vote at town meeting. These are the people that are directly affected by this change, and then the targeting in the revamped one. I don't think, I don't know if it's possible, Andrew, that you can make a negative recommendation on the original as well as the revamp? Or is it just the original? I think that's what you're hearing here, we wanted both of them to have negatives.
Go ahead.
So the, depending on what the board does, they're going to consider the original article. So the board's choice is either to basically support an amendment and recommend that positively, or to recommend no action.
On both of them, or just?
No, no, there's no both of them. There's the original article, and there's the proposed amendment that's been brought forward for discussion. So the board, the board's choice is to either say, "We will recommend some sort of modified version," it doesn't have to be exactly this, but some sort of modified version that's consistent with the, with what Fritz has brought forward, or to offer, well, you can always offer a positive motion for what was originally submitted, or you can offer a negative motion. And then at town meeting, there's, I mean, Fritz can bring forward his own amendment, I mean, or there's all kinds of other in-betweens.
So what I'm asking for then, I guess, is that you make a negative recommendation on the original article, and he can do whatever he wants with that. But the problem, there's a lot of problems with that, which we'll all go after on town meeting floor as well. But there's nothing to stop him from coming back with the original, either, or somebody else in his group coming back with the original, as everybody has said they're very worried about. But if that's going to be what's on town meeting floor, that he's going to put up there, if you make a negative on the original, then that has to be fixed, because there's a lot of technical problems. And again, I agreed with the VR in Maticet, was, I was involved with originating that idea, because I thought it was a great idea, especially in old Maticet. And it's worked out fairly well, once the ZBA got used to being the special permit granting authority, which I didn't want, I wanted the planning board, who has more skill with that. But the, it's worked out there, it's a very small amount of land involved on Nantucket in the VR, I think it's one of the smaller overall zoning districts, but R1 is large. I don't want to see a positive recommendation on the original, and we'll try to kill that if it can't be fixed before it gets to town meeting floor.
Thank you. Mr. Little, briefly, please. Thank you, sir.
To Mr. McClure's two-thirds majority vote.
You're going to have to almost eat the microphone a little bit, yeah. There you go. It's okay.
To Mr. McClure's two-thirds majority vote. I'm asking for a negative recommendation. I think we can all admit that at some point during our town meeting, I think we can all admit that at some point during our town meeting careers, we have been there confused on articles. I have been. And when I don't know whether I want to weasel my hand up and vote this way or that way, where do I look? I look to you guys. I look for your advice, because you've studied it. So I'm really asking you to just remind yourselves that all the time and effort you put into what you do as staff, but as you guys who do this out of the kindness of community spirit until probably 11 o'clock at night, that we look up to you. We believe in you. And by the way, thank you very, very much for all of you doing what you do.
Thank you. Thank you. Sir?
Thank you. I try to make this brief. I don't usually speak. But my name's Brian Diggle. I'm of Two Catherine Lane, but I also own a house in Scotch, which is affected by this. But it's not really about that. My concern with, or my agreeance with all the opposition here is that I was actually really disappointed during the last town meeting we had, because you guys brought forth an article that would change the zoning in the 40B on South Shore Road that everybody's been in opposition to. But they didn't understand during town meeting that by changing the zoning, you could actually give the developer another option to make the 13 estates, or whatever it was, and not the 100 houses that are going to be down there. Nobody got that, except for me, because I was the only, I was the only yay. So this needs to be crystal clear when it comes to the floor, because people aren't going to get it. And I see Mr. Lowell laughing, and I, yeah.
I don't even know you. I want to talk to you.
I mean, but, but to be able to read between the lines, people can't do that. So I think it's very important, I recommend you table this. Let it get rewritten. Let the research happen. You know, let more information get involved with this, because until we move to a different form of government, we're going to be relying on people that don't understand. They're voting on things they don't understand. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to turn to my board members, but I want to point.
I'm going to be brief.
All right. And then I really do, I really want to get to the heart of something here.
Okay. I was adamantly opposed to everything this stood for. Ground cover, et cetera. This is a, pretty much a watered-down, pared-down version to R1 with a special permit to have some controls. That being said, what I'm really concerned about is how it affected everybody in putting a restriction until April 1st with town meeting. And my question is, if we give it a negative recommendation, and it still comes forward, everything still stays the same, there's still restrictions, everybody that's in limbo still stays in limbo. I guess my basic question would be, if it's tabled until maybe a future meeting, a special town meeting in April, I mean, October, does it lift the restriction? So would it be advantageous to table it, as opposed to?
Go ahead.
So whether you table it, take no action, or give it a negative recommendation, all of those have the same result. Once town meeting is over, it's not in effect anymore, unless it's approved. But if it's not approved, then as of?
No, my question is, if it was tabled, would the restriction, if it didn't, if it was tabled and withdrawn, or would the restrictions be lifted prior to the April 1st?
No, the restrictions stay in place until the vote of town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's okay. Yeah, because the actual article, not the amendment, the actual article is what his people are looking at. Yes, please.
I'll go out there, and then I can speak two or three times.
No, 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 no. All right. I'm just patiently waiting.
No, I, hey, look, we're all here out of the goodness of our hearts. It's getting late, and I don't want to be here any later than we have to be. But I would like, in fairness to the application, I'd like to get some clarifications. You know, I think it's important that we be crystal clear. The elimination, through you, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, please.
Just that. The elimination of the ground cover language eliminates any potential for nonconformities, Which is to say, there's no increase or decrease. There's no change, there's no restriction.
Right. It doesn't suddenly bring that into consideration.
So nonconforming and nonconforming is off the table. If this article were to be brought forth and approved at town meeting, as it's been proposed this evening, without a ground cover linkage, there's no change to conformities. It's just, what this, in essence, what this does is it expands the special permit review under the ZBA to the R1 district.
Right.
So just to be clear, I'm not saying for or against, I just want to be clear. And then the other thing I just wanted to understand was, if the article, if it were amended, or as Fritz McClure has presented it, or as it may be amended if we're done by a planning board motion, there's still no prohibition on the planning board making a statement to clarify its position, so as to not suggest we've taken the whole, the larger article, and we endorse it, but we just want a pared-down version. Instead, the planning board could be saying, "This is a, this is a reset to expand, to include the R1 zone under a special permit process to have a pool." So it could be a clarifying statement, so that at town meeting, there's an understanding that we're not, the planning board is not endorsing a pared-down version of the original article. This is a complete reset to say, "Look, the original article had things about ground cover and a bunch of different things." That's all I'm trying to get to.
I see what you're saying, Ms. Chairman. Sorry.
Now, please.
So the, if the board, the board's choice is to recommend this, this, a modified article, if that's what you want to do. But if you, if you vote no, it's not going to come up until somebody brings it up.
I got you. Okay.
So what would happen is, let's say theoretically you vote no action on this article. It would, somebody who supports this article, as they're calling the articles at town meeting, would say, "Pool article, I want to discuss it." And if that were Mr. McClure, or somebody else that thought this modification was a good idea, could make this as an amendment. And then the town meeting would vote on the amendment. But it takes that extra action to, because again, if the, if the board gives a positive motion and nobody calls it, then it's simply voted in the block.
Right. Thank you. Yep. No, just want to make sure I understand.
That's important.
Yeah. Thank you.
So I just briefly wanted to say, I've heard a lot of negative things tonight about this amendment, most of them based on money. But I'm sort of in favor of this. I have been doing pool maintenance for 12 years on a fairly large pool, and essentially they're chemical baths. And I honestly think if everybody thought about what's in that water, they wouldn't be sitting in it for an hour. But they don't, because they're pretty to look at. But so, and the, so when a lot of the water is released, it is released indiscriminately just with a pump out onto the yard. And I think that has some negative ramifications to the environment, so that's what I had to say.
Thank you. I'll wait. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll just, let's not pile on Fritz. He's got to go to stuff and shop, too. Thank you all for coming. I want to just bring up a couple things. The survey of the ROH was a good point.
Yeah.
I think the guy up there, wherever he went, brought that up. That was good. I'd forgotten about that. That was an intense survey that was done. And there's probably more R1 lots than there is ROH. And regardless of whether we're changing to R5, if we just magically changed all those R1 lots to R5, I'm sure that we'd still be talking about it in the same context anyway. So that was a good point, and I think that in those taxpayers, paying, you know, 87% of our bills, and they're not voting. So we got to always keep that in the back of your mind. You know, the thing with the pools, you know, I was thinking, I've been trying to compare this to other stuff we tried to get rid of after it already got here. Air conditioners. We were really working hard to kind of say, "What a stupid thing an air conditioner is." And, you know, "What do I have to listen to this air conditioner?" Pool heaters make no more noise than the pool. Okay? Air conditioners make more noise than a pool. Okay? There's ways to heat pools without noise, just so you know, we won't get into that at this meeting. But we had a lot of discussion, I think, Leslie, you were involved with the gallonage issue of the SROH. What is it, 1,100?
15.
Is it 15? Okay. So I walked onto Eight Fair Street a few months ago. Haven't been there since it was redone. It's got a 1,500-gallon pool. It's absolutely beautiful. The property is the most, I've never seen anything like this, how this place is set up. The architecture, the way this is being done, the, when I started working in the gas, there was 10 pools on Nantucket. I can name every one of them. Now there's over 800. The horse is out of the barn. This is really hard to pull back. I think that there may be room for more regulation, like Matikit. And Matikit was done, not just out of the blue, by the way. We changed zoning out there because water got brought to Matikit. So don't get all, you know, wishy-washy about Matikit. Matikit, we did a ton of things to change out there, to make it more restricted. The height issue, that's where the 5th district came from. The VR is half acre with 10% ground cover and a height restriction. So it's, there was a lot of work involved to do that. It wasn't about pools. The pools was the last thing, actually. And the MMD issue, I mean, I, MMD, we get a permit out there once every year and a half, and it's like an embarrassing conversation every time, because the lots are gigantic. They're asking for this, like, blessing for nothing, because it's really an over-restricted zoning district that isn't even, as far as I know, state-approved. And it's, it doesn't even count. I mean, if they want to put a pool out there in the MMD, I mean, it's like in the middle of nowhere, okay? It's crazy. 0.5% ground cover. So I think that I would agree about holding this, you know, voting negatively on the, on the entire thing, or whatever, you know, was said earlier. It's going to get brought up at town meeting, it's going to get called. This article is not going to just go away with the negative recommendation. I can tell you, guys, that, so don't think that that's going to happen. This isn't the school for 46 million that no one calls. The fire station for 20 that no one calls. It's just, we're a funny community. We call the dumbest things, but we let the 46 million stuff go like it's free, which it kind of is in some ways, if you look at the tax rate. So you just have to trust that the town meeting process will take care of it. There'll be a lot more homework down the road for the R1 switching to R5, and this isn't going to go away. There's going to be something more to regulate pools in some fashion. They won't be as easy in the small districts, but I think that we need to say no right now.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Just observations. I wish we could table this. I understand that the sentiment is going to be to vote against it. I think there's merit in looking into pools. I think there's seeing cramming of many amenities onto smaller lots, and those lots might be more suitable for affordable housing, for other kinds of uses. I am concerned about the discharge, what it had come. Hearing the touchdown, initially, some people spoke and said, "Well, it doesn't matter, because they simply let the water run off into the, here, ditch, or whatever it is, and into the wetlands." And I think that's really a problem. So I would be very interested in trying to look into this more fully, but I understand the comments, and I think that this will not proceed at town meeting.
Okay, thank you. You all set?
Yep.
Quick, quickly, briefly, please. Hi.
I would, hello, again. I would just caution the board about assuming that everybody loves and wants pools. There are, there are people out there, even in Brandt Point and on Cliff Road, who don't want to be in a butter-to-a-pool. They don't happen to be here tonight, sadly. But there are people, I'm sure Fritz has heard from plenty of them, who do not want to be in a butter-to-a-pool. They're a little silent tonight.
First thing I'm going to say is, thank you for your patience for being here tonight. Thank you for your passion that you brought forward. It's nice to sit at one of these meetings and have public testimony and comment. I, for one, appreciate it. It's good. It's healthy dialogue. I do want to say one thing. Mr. Reed made a very poignant and passionate plea for you to show up at town meeting. If you walk out of this auditorium tonight, or if you're watching this on TV, pay close attention to what he said, and take those words to heart. It is so important. You are part of that whole process. We all have busy lives, but I'm going to tell you right now, walking away from it is even more devastating. It's important to show and vocalize your concerns. It's the only way you're going to get that information out to people. Andrew, when did we have our first meeting on this? This was, this is when we were even starting to think about adopting things, was it around September or so, I believe? Was it around October, then? All right, just for sake of purposes, all right, we'll benchmark October. So this, a set of ideas and thoughts about what the planning board would start to look at were pitched before us at this point, and this subject came up. I will tell you right then and there that we've been through this with pools before and other things. And one of the comments that I delivered was that we need to study this, because this impacts people. Okay? I've heard a lot of things that were bandied around tonight, and the problem that I'm having is, is a conjecture or fact. Is everyone discharging to the groundwater supply? We don't know that for a fact, but you hear that. Okay? Do people want pools? Do they not want pools? Again, subject to conjecture. You hear individual thoughts, but you don't hear the bigger collective thought of what goes on. You're looking for guidance for this thing. Okay? And I agree, guidance, guidance would probably be a good thing for, no matter which board tackles this. But the moment you said that, you kind of triggered a thought in the back of my head. Guidance, guidance from whom? This is not something I see in the short term coming from this planning board. Talk about guidance, I see border health getting involved with the whole quality issues of water supply. I see pool designers having to be involved in that process. Conservation people involved in that process. ZBA has to be involved in that process. Probably going to have to get the police involved to come up with some type of common sense about what is noise, what is a nuisance. You're going to have to go back to some of the things that we've dealt with through the planning board, like light pollution and the dark skies concept. There's a lot of pieces to this puzzle. They're not simple pieces. And if you really want to do due diligence here, I think you need to get all those parties involved, and have them start to at least work out some of the processes that, in the end, will make for a much better article about things. But the biggest thing that I believe that this board needs to send forward as a message is that this has got to be is that this has got to be studied. Before you start impacting people, get a sense of who those people are, and let's not conjecture for them. Let's find out what their thought is. When it was on its broader scope, I knew this would be, that would be a tough nut to crack, but it's still a nut worth cracking at this point. The fact that you showed up tonight shows me that somewhat. So, if nothing else, I think one of the things that, when we get to comment as a board, that's one of the things I would love to see in there, is that before any of this comes back, it needs to be studied, and it needs to also involve appropriate groups to make that study functional. So, reach out to the people who it's going to affect, and then find out. My God, when we do an area plan, we do that as well, too. We reach out to the neighbors in that area. You know what has really dawned on me when we do that? Makes for a pretty damn successful area plan, because you know what? You tried to talk to as many people as you could out there who it affects. So, I don't think this is the time and place for it right now. Will it come up at town meeting? I think Mr. Reed hit the nail on the head. Oh, by certain. But as one member of this board, I'm inclined to give this a negative recommendation at the moment. I will say to you, I would love to see some notations made that pushes this thing into a study, maybe identifies some of the groups that'll need to be involved in the process. And I can't speak for the rest of my board members, but I also want to bring up the point, too, that if you're not going to vote in the positive, I don't know. I'll hold that thought for a minute. I will hold that thought, because I'll bring it up as an amendment. All right. So, thank you for taking a few minutes to listen to me. I appreciate it, and the hour is late. So, thank you. All right. I'm sure I've heard from the public. Was there any last-minute burning concepts here? Great, thank you. So, board members, what do you want to do?
Make a motion to close public hearing.
All right. Do I hear a second to it?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to close the public hearing. Are you going to participate in this, or? Okay, yeah, please. Then come on down. I'm so sorry. I didn't mean to exclude you.
You what? I figured it out.
Yeah, no, thank you. I appreciate it. Okay, so, motion is made, seconded to close the public hearing. Discussion on the issue? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes, have you now, Miss Lee, and the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to give it a negative recommendation.
Do I hear a second to that?
I will second it.
All right. For discussion. If we're going to do that, I think, I, for one person, I think it's important for the public to denote that not only did we look at the entire article, we looked at this as well. Okay? And maybe I'm wrong, but I think the board is saying no to both the amendment and the article. So, I think that kind of notation in there will be good, so that people understand the length that we went through with this. I could be wrong.
That's what we were asking.
Yeah, I think that, you know, that's what I would say to you, though, is that, again, between the study and the other things I've talked about, I think that needs to at least be brought forward. Okay. Thank you. Any additional comment? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
No.
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, duly noted. So, that's a three-to-one vote with one abstention. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I think we've got like one or two quick things to do, and, boy, do I have to say thank you again. Thank you.
I see a food truck at the...
No, right outside. Les, guys, can you play time out for a few seconds? Andrew, Leslie, anything else? I know we're back here on the 30th. Yeah?
The 30th is going to be in the conference room.
Okay.
It is?
At 5:00.
Okay, well, there won't be a lot of people there.
Just a few articles.
All right.
Yeah, a few articles.
You're not going to add anything.
Can't.
Les, it's just the ones that we need to hear again, right?
Do you want to go over which ones those are again?
Yes, if you don't mind.
Please.
Okay, so, it was the rezoning on Appleton Road.
Lady, excuse me.
Don't yell at them.
No, no, just, can you do me a favor? Keep it down to shade. Thank you.
The 30th.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, on the 30th, at 5:00, in the Two Fairgrounds Conference Room. The zoning map amendment for 43 and 47 Appleton Road.
Yep.
The by-law amendment for the residential development options, which is the qualified purchaser, qualified renter article. Then, not anything until we get over to the two marijuana-related articles. That's it.
Yep.
That's it.
That's it.
Okay.
And then, everything else will be on the agenda for the 11th.
Great.
Okay.
Perfect. Anything else for the board?
Mr. Chairman, pardon. I just wanted to ask really quickly. I put forward a article to appropriate $30 million for affordable housing, and I just wanted to ask if the planning board wanted to discuss it in any capacity. Not this evening, but at another time.
Do me a favor, start the conversation with Andrew and Leslie. Since they're the master schedules for us. Okay? Thank you for bringing that up, though.
I wanted to go through town meeting with not even called, you know?
That's the Howard Dickler. That's the Howard Dickler.
All right. Thanks, guys. Thank you very, very, very much for being here tonight. Okay? Motion to adjourn. Do I hear?
Second.
Second. Beautiful. Thank you all.
Thank you very much for calling.
Ah, now she's gone.